A second good evening to the audience. It's always good to see so many people here and interested in giving their comments to the planning commissioners, which we all take very seriously. So, this evening, I'm going to call to order the town of Los Gatos Planning Commission's special meeting of Wednesday, September 30th. And Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Seauk?
Here.
Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Birch?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here. And I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Badami in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As you know, the town of Los Gatos strongly encourages its citizens to participate in our democratic process, which is the cornerstone of our nation. In that regard, we give you three opportunities to speak to us this evening or share your comments with us. This is a continued public hearing, however, we will begin as a special planning commission meeting, so we do have certain processes we follow. If there is any member of the audience that wishes to speak this evening on an item that is not on the agenda, they can fill out a speaker card, and they will speak during what's called verbal communications, and they will have up to three minutes to share their comments with us. Secondly, if you wish to speak this evening on the continued item, then you should also fill out a card and pass it up to the staff, and we will add it to the pile. The third way is, and I see that some members of the public did take advantage of this, you can submit email or written comments at any time before a meeting to the staff of the planning commission. Everything is put into a packet for us, and even if it's close to the time of the meeting, it's given to us, and we do review it before the meeting. So, so that we understand this evening. I do not have any cards for what's called the verbal communication portion, so I'm going to assume that everyone that is here is here for the one agendized item. We have no minutes this evening, correct? And do we have any written communications?
We have the desk item that's before you on the dais.
All right. And all of the commissioners have had an opportunity to read the desk item? Thank you. We have no requested continuances? We have no subcommittee reports? Is that correct, commissioners? All right. And we have no verbal communications? We have no matters on our consent calendar. So now, we're going to open the public portion of the public hearing, and we're going to continue our hearing from last week, which is... Now, I have to do this in a very formal way, audience. Conditional use permit U-12-002 and environmental impact report EIR-13-001 requesting approval to modify a conditional use permit to increase school enrollment and modify operations of an existing private school, which is Hillbrook on property located at 300 Marchmont Drive. Before I begin with the speaker cards, I just want to talk about last meeting and the fact that we did not complete all of the speaker cards for that evening. They have been, they were preserved in the order in which we received them. We did have a request this evening that, in particular, the first speaker that was due to speak has been delayed picking up a child from a sporting event, so her card has been slipped back a few speakers to make sure that she's here when we do call her name. We've also had a special request that some of the young children have an opportunity to speak earlier, so they can get home to do their homework, because I understand there will be no homework passed tonight like I'd hoped for last time. So, so we're going to let some of the children go first, and then if anyone else has a special need this evening, please note it on your card. We do the best to accommodate those folks. I do want you to know that we are here for the duration tonight, and that means that you might have to send someone home for your jammies, because we have, how many?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight cards. Do the math, three to four minutes per speaker. What that means is, if there, if you want to speak, but what you have to say, you know, has already been said, please feel free not to take the full three minutes, but you're welcome to come to the podium and just say, you know, "I agree with X," or even "I disagree with Y." You can express your opinion and perhaps not use the entire three minutes, so that we can get through the speaker cards this evening. Once we are through the speaker cards, the applicant does have an opportunity to make a response of three minutes. Then I close the public portion of the public hearing, and we begin, the commissioners begin their questions and their deliberations. So that is the process that we follow, and I just want everyone to know that. Second request I have is that if you have a cellphone, could you please either put it on silent or turn it off, so that we don't have different people reaching around and searching for their cellphones as they ring? And then my last request is that we show respect to each other and to our speakers, and we don't all agree, but you know, many of us, most of us actually, are going to see each other again, whether it's at Little League, school events, at the park, shopping. We are all neighbors here. We are a community, and we expect the best from our community. So that's one reason why I want to reemphasize tonight, that even if you disagree with a speaker, a respect is an easy thing to give, especially in a lovely community like Los Gatos. So with that, I'm going to hear, call my first speaker, Jan Moore, and is it Michaela Moore? Are they here?
They're coming.
They're coming. Okay. They're in the back. Right behind them will be Oliver Wang, and behind Oliver Wang will be Jeffrey Edsall. So if we can just have three speakers line up, and if you just want to go right, if you want to go behind there and just stand in that aisle, that's great. And that's how I will be calling the speakers tonight anyways. I'm going to be calling speakers two and three at a time, so that you're ready to speak. So let's see. If you'll pull that microphone down toward one of you, there we go, and speak right into it, and then identify yourself, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ian Moore. I live on Hilo Road, and I'm a fifth grader at Blossom Hill School. Every day, I bike, walk, or scooter to and from school with my mom, brother, and sister. I see lots of friends who live on neighboring streets around Hilo Road on the way to and from school. Do you know that Hilo Road and Englewood Avenue are the only two streets that connect my friends who live in the neighborhoods from Kennedy Road to Shannon Road with Blossom Hill School? If our street becomes unsafe because of too much traffic, they will not have a safe route to school, and neither will I. Unfortunately, my friend who lives in the Ann Arbor neighborhood cannot walk, bike, or scooter to school because his parents already find Shannon Road too unsafe. I'm here tonight to simply ask that you help reduce traffic on our streets and keep them safe, so that we may continue to get to school safely by walking, biking, or scootering.
Thank you. And then you have someone who's going to speak with you, so why don't you just trade places? There you go. And if you can pull that down just a little bit more even, there we go.
Hi, my name is Michaela Moore. I'm a fourth grader at Blossom Hill School. I'm also a student volunteer with my school's Safe Routes to School program. Every Monday, my brothers and I wake up extra early to help run our Motorless Mondays program. I help enter students into a raffle who walk, bike, or scooter to school. The program is so much fun. Please keep our streets safe from lots of traffic, so kids can continue to walk, bike, and scooter to school and be a part of this fun program. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?[615.16][615.16](Applause) All right. So, I understand why you did that?[625.32][625.32](Laughter) Please don't do it again, okay? All right. Because we have to run the meeting without that kind of audience participation. So I appreciate that. So I have, I actually have a question for either one of you, and when did you start the Motorless Monday?
Last year.
Last year, the whole school started it?
No, we started to do it last year.
You started to do it?
Yeah.
And do you find that a lot of kids participate in it?
Yeah, quite a few.
And would you say most of your classmates, some of your classmates? Just give me a guess.
Some of my classmates.
Some of them. Okay. All right. Thank you both. Thank you. So you can have a seat now. We'll, we'll hear from the next speaker. And are you Oliver? And are you up here with someone else as well? And come up to the microphone and just tell me who you're with.
This is my brother Adam.
Okay. And is Adam going to speak as well?
No.
No? He's just going to come up here? Okay. He's your support?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. So let's hear from you, Oliver.
Hi, my name is Oliver Wang. I live on Marchmont Drive, and I'm here to reject Hillbrook from extending. I have a few reasons why. First reason, every day, I longboard to Fisher Middle School with my friends. I feel that someday, I will get run over by a car, because I'm shorter and drivers don't see kids as well. Also, there are many cars. Most of them either speed, don't yield to pedestrians, or don't stop at the stop signs. Second reason, Hillbrook ruins the life of us kids. We can never play baseball after school, because our ball might get hit into the street. On Marchmont, there are many blind corners, so we won't be able to see the car coming. We might be hit by a car. We can't bike, skateboard, or play tag in our streets with our neighbors, even during the summer, weekends, and evenings, because of the amount of Hillbrook after-school activities. So on behalf of all the kids of Marchmont, Topping, Hilo, and Englewood, and all the other neighbors, please reject Hillbrook's plan to extend enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver. Any questions? Well, I have a question for you. So you go to Fisher?
Yeah.
And what grade are you in?
Sixth.
And does Adam go to school?
He goes to Blossom Hill.
And what grade is he in?
Second.
And does he bike to school as well?
He usually walks.
He usually walks to school?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you must be Jeffrey Edsall?
Yes.
All right. You can re-identify yourself and pull the microphone toward you and be close to it.
Yeah, I think I will. Okay. Good evening, Chair Smith and commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Edsall, and I'm an eighth grader at Hillbrook School. And next year, I will be attending Los Gatos High School. I love Hillbrook, and I have been here, been there ever since kindergarten. Hillbrook has taught me how to work with others, solve problems, and most of all, it has made me a great student. I wanted to come here tonight to explain to you what carpooling means to my family and me, and why Hillbrook's proposal to increase its enrollment by 99 kids would be great for the school. Having more kids will allow for many more great experience and opportunities for current and future students. For one, having more kids in the middle school would improve the academic experience. This year, my math classroom can hold over 20 students, but my geometry class has only eight. With more students, there would be more creative ideas on how to solve the problems. Also, I really enjoy the sporting teams that Hillbrook has to offer. I take part in my school's football, basketball, and volleyball teams, as well as being part of the Los Gatos United Soccer Club outside of school. Allowing more students at Hillbrook would allow sports teams to have more players on them, allowing us to be more competitive. Also, as a Hillbrook family, my parents, my older sister, who now is a junior at Los Gatos High School, and myself have done our very best to reduce traffic in the neighborhoods. When I first joined Hillbrook in kindergarten, I immediately started carpooling. My carpool had five to six kids in it every day until I moved to Filmer Street, which is off of Los Gatos Boulevard. While living there, I biked to school every day. Then I moved to the other side of town, near downtown, where I took part in a three-family, six-kid carpool for over a year. Then, when the bussing started, I took that for a year. And then I moved again, hopefully for the last time, to the neighborhood next to Hillbrook. Ever since, I have biked, rain or shine, and I intend to do so until I graduate. As you can see, carpooling and eliminating traffic means a lot to my family. We care about keeping our community a special place for everyone. I thank you for your attention, and I hope that you will support Hillbrook School. It's a really special place, and I feel so lucky to have the chance to be there for nine years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all of you did a great job. Thank you very much. And now I'm going to call our next speaker. And I want to mention something, too, for the speakers. So the green light goes on when you begin. When the light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds to complete. Even if you're not done, I will stop you from speaking. If you have written remarks that you're reading from, you haven't finished, you can submit them to the staff, and they will be included as part of the record. So now, we're going to call Jake Mosley. Behind Mr. Mosley will be Claire and Julia Kennedy, and then it will be Barry Bakken. And Ms. Savage will help you with that.
Great. Good evening, commissioners.
Sir, just pull that microphone right up to you. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jake Mosley, and I live on Robin Way with my two, my wife and my two young boys, Tanner and Brooks. As you know, LG Cats has made its own recommendations for cup conditions. Our penalty condition says that Hillbrook, that if Hillbrook violates its trip caps for a third successive time, the penalty should include a reduction in enrollment. This enrollment reduction would be 10 students and would take place in the following school year. The logic behind this is that if Hillbrook cannot control its traffic, then it has too many students, and the remedy is to reduce the number of students. If you were to include reducing the enrollment as a penalty, you would not be alone. Other towns and cities have included exactly that in requirements for private schools. Here are a few examples. Example one, the Buckley School is a private K through 12 school with 830 students in Sherman Oaks, California. The school's cup mandates carpooling and bussing and requires adherence to traffic counts. The report adds that if Buckley School violates the cup, it is to reduce the student enrollment for the following school year in an amount equal to the number of AM and PM school trips exceeded during the previous year. Example two, Menlo School is a middle and high school in Atherton with 795 students. In its cup issued by Atherton in July 2012, the penalty for noncompliance with traffic caps is reduction in enrollment by 40 students. Example three is the Harker School on Union in San Jose. We do not yet have the cup for the Harker School on Union, but its mitigated negative declaration, or MND, also includes enrollment reduction as a possible penalty. According to the MND, if Harker is found to be out of compliance for two consecutive months, the school must increase its attempts to reduce and demonstrate compliance within four months. If this does not happen, then either enrollment must be reduced the following year, or the school needs to mitigate all traffic impacts and conformance with the city transportation policy. We propose that Hillbrook must implement option one, as seen on the slide, which is to increase the TDM activities, such as adding new shuttle routes or stops, making the use of shuttle bus mandatory for the required number of students, and increasing the proportion of three- and four-person carpools. The expectation would be that Hillbrook should be compliant within four months, which would be demonstrated by a new monitoring effort. After six months of noncompliance, then Hillbrook, we would propose that Hillbrook would be required to implement option two or three. Option two is to reduce the enrollment in the next academic year. Enrollment may be increased back to the previously approved levels with the issuance of a planned development permit amendment. Or, option three, to mitigate all traffic impacts and conformance with the city's transportation policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Savage, if I could ask if the speaker would, yes, give that to you, and if during the break, you could make us some copies, so that we have that as part of our packet with his name on it, please? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mosley.
Hi, my name is Claire Kennedy. I've been at Hillbrook since I was in kindergarten, but that seems like a long time ago now.
Hi, my name is Julia Kennedy. I started in kindergarten, too. It wasn't that long ago for me.
We just want you to know that we have always carpoled to school. Also, a few years ago, we've been, we have been carpooling to the bus.
You know what I would like you to do? I'd like you to take that microphone out and just, and then you could just pass it back and forth? There we go. And then she could speak right into it. Thank you.
I take the bus home every afternoon. Sometimes I get confused which bus to take to get on, but I go to the school office and call my mom. She tells me where to go.
And I like taking the shuttle, because I get to spend extra time, time with my friends.
I like taking the shuttle, too, because I can play with my friends. Sometimes I even convince my mom to let me have an extra playdate at the bus stop.
Thank you for listening to us, and please support our school.
Thank you very much. No questions for you? You're fine. Thank you. You can have a seat. And Mr. Bakken? Behind Mr. Bakken will be Teresa Terry Anderson, and then Mark Willey.
Hi, my name is Barry Bakken. I live at 111 Wolin Way in Los Gatos. Before I start, if you don't mind, we have just a very few speakers from our area, but I'd love to have our neighbors stand up and show you that they're here, certainly supporting keeping the gate closed. Thank you. I moved into my home in 1987, my wife and I, Candy. Raised our two boys there. Went through the school system, through high school, and often to college, and doing well. I moved into the neighborhood primarily because Mr. Barnett, who was a high school friend of mine, invited me to a holiday party, which was an event that's probably been going on for 40 years, or nearly that many years. And I fell in love with the neighbors first, and the neighborhood second. And it was a wonderful place for us to raise our children, and, and we would like to see it stay that way. So I'm kind of getting ready to move on a little bit. We have a little house in Aptos that we're going to retire to. So I put my home on the market. And it turns out that in an offer that I received, I received this letter, and I'd like to read a portion of it, if you don't mind. It says, "We think Los Gatos is a good place to make our home base. It is close to the activities we like, not to mention Q chops and restaurants in the town. The Wolin property is in a great location for us, not too close to the hustle and bustle of the town, and not too isolated in the mountains. It struck us as a serene place to come home to." And that's how we saw it when we moved in. Hopefully, we're going to be able to leave it in the same condition. Safety is probably the other area that I'd like to touch on, and safety in the sense of, I live on Wolin Way, and Wolin Way has a hill that comes off of Shannon Road. You may have been over there and see that. And there are times when the traffic backs up on Shannon Road, where those drivers coming down Shannon will take a shortcut, and they'll take a shortcut over my street, drop down a blind hill, and make a right-hand turn onto Ann Arbor, and then try to get back onto Shannon Road. It doesn't happen very often, but when it does, it's scary. So children walking in that area could be in jeopardy. The, the other thing that concerns me is the, is the development that's going on in the Goddard Lippy Dump Road, which is going to bring several more students to Los Gatos, and that's going to increase the traffic on Shannon Road, probably creating additional concerns. So I want to thank everybody very much. I appreciate all the work that you guys do, and please keep the gate closed.
Thank you, Mr. Bakken. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Terry Anderson. I live on Lower Marchmont at 16542 with my husband. We have lived there for the past 24 years. I took part in the Hillbrook site visit on September 17th, and I want to thank the Hillbrook staff for allowing us to tour their campus. They were very gracious. At the last commissioners' meeting, one of the site visitors made a comment on the low level of traffic that day. I want to make sure that you, as commissioners, understand that traffic is usually much, much higher than what you saw that day. Along with a group of neighbors, excuse me, I need to interrupt this. I want you to know that these are...
You know what, Ms. Anderson? Just take that microphone with you as you speak.
I'm sorry.
And then, then we can hear all your comments.
On this graph up here, the first column, the first column are peak period totals for those dates, and then the column on the right are full day counts at the gate at Hillbrook. I just wanted to point that out. As I'm going along, along with a group of neighbors, I have done car counts over the past two years to see how heavy Hillbrook traffic really is. We have, can't be a movie star. We have counted daily car trips at least 20 times throughout those years. In five of our most recent counts, as shown on the graphic, there was traffic of 202 to 259 cars during the 230 to 345 time period, which was the time of your visit. The traffic on that day, the day of the site, was much lower. One wonders why. I do not think you saw anything near 202 vehicles going in and out during your visit. It is difficult to understand a condition where there are currently nearly 1,000 cars in and out of Hillbrook School daily, that there could, or even would be, a reduction in traffic with an increase of 33% enrollment. As a neighbor who sees the current traffic as excessive, we would ask the commission not to approve a plan that would see an increase in traffic volume. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson? Seeing none? The next speaker will be Mark Willey, followed by Steve Bruner, followed by Jeff Lawson. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner and Chair Smith. My name is Mark Willey, and my wife and, and my wife and I, along with my twin five-year-old boys, live on Cardinal Lane. Cardinal Lane is one of the feeder streets for the rush air traffic feeding Hillbrook School. I strongly oppose the Hillbrook request for a modest increase of 99 students, as this corresponds to a whopping 31% increase in their headcount, from 315 students to 414 students. And that's a huge addition to Hillbrook's all very large impact on this neighborhood, this lovely neighborhood. There are many factors to considering when, to consider when assessing Hillbrook's huge expansion application, but I think one of the key factors is how the direct neighbors feel about it. And so one of the things I was quite interested in was the street-by-street analysis of the recent petition against the Hillbrook. And one of my neighbors was kind enough to do an analysis of it. And, does this go this way up or that way up? That way up? Like that? So, so this is a map of the neighborhood. Hillbrook is over here, and you can see Marchmont, you can see Cardinal, you can see Hilo, you can see all the streets here. And as you can see, each of the houses are marked, and if you see an orange cone on the house, that person voted to oppose the Hillbrook expansion. That's an awful lot of orange. So for those of you who are less graphic and a little bit more numbers generated, they also, also did it this way. So this is by street, and on the left-hand side, you can see that the response rate, so the people who either said, "I support it," or "I do, or I do not support it," was incredibly high. You can see it's almost 100% of these streets that are directly affected. These people responded one way or another. And so what you can see there is you have a highly engaged neighborhood, a neighborhood that cares one way or the other. And so what you can see there is you have a highly engaged neighborhood, a neighborhood that cares one way or the other. And what you see on the right-hand side is those who did respond vote massively in opposition to this expansion. So, there's been a few very negative and wholly inaccurate suggestions made that the opposition to Hillbrook's huge expansion request is merely from two or three vocal opponents. Clearly, that is absolutely not the case. I have a whole section on here about some suggestions I'd like to see, but obviously, I'm running out of time. So I'm going to close with a couple of comments, which is, factor of the matter is, we have a business in a residential neighborhood. I'm running out.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you so much.
If you have, if you have further comments and writing, please pass them to the staff. Thank you.
Decline the ninety-nine, please.
Thank you. Mr., oh, I'm, sir, stay right where you are, because we do have a question.
I have a question for you. And would you clarify, when you first got up, you said something about Cardinal Lane was a what?
Feeder Street.
You considered it a feeder street for?
For, for the traffic, the rush hour traffic to and from Hillbrook every day. So a lot of people talk about the Marchmont.
They're coming from which?
Kennedy. So if you put my map back up, what you actually see here is so Hillbrook Street, Hillbrook School is here, up Marchmont is here, Marchmont comes down to Hylo. A lot of people talk about Marchmont and Hylo, and Inglewood over here. What you actually find is, a lot of people use the Cardinal to Stony Brook Cut Through. Very welcome to come and enjoy the rush hour with us. And, and my five-year-old twin boys on their bicycles.
Okay, thank you.
Please, no comments from the audience. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, once again, please, audience, be respectful, no comments. And now we are hearing from, identify yourself for us.
My name is Seth Bruner. They got the card wrong.
Okay, all right.
Hello, Chair Smith and other commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity for me to speak to you this evening. My name is Seth Bruner, and I am an eighth grader at Hillbrook School. I live in Los Gatos, and I ride the bus to school every day. I've been at Hillbrook for ten years since junior kindergarten. My older brother and two sisters also attended Hillbrook and graduated from Los Gatos School. Even my grandfather, who lived on Marchmont Drive, took care of the horses at, at Hillbrook in the nineteen fifties. My family has been a part of the Hillbrook community for twenty-two years. Hillbrook seems like a second family to me. I feel that many more students should come to Hillbrook so that they can have a long history with this school as I have. This school has shaped me into who I am, and believe it or not, I'm actually a nice person. I think that other students should have the opportunity to be able to have the great education that I have received at Hillbrook. I am graduating this year and heading off to high school, so this decision will not impact me, but it'll impact Hillbrook and future generations of Hillbrook students, making, making the school where I have grown up and where I know I will continue to visit and return to in the years ahead. Tonight, we ask the Planning Commission to approve of our new and improved CUP, recommended by town staff. Hillbrook is a school, a great school, a Los Gatos school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the speakers? Seeing none. Thank you. Mr. Lawson? And then is Cindy Vendasius here? Has she arrived? Okay. And then behind her will be Jan Comte-Betty. And if I have mispronounced that, please correct me when you come up to the microphone. All right, Mr. Lawson?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lawson. I'm an attorney with Silicon Valley Law Group, and I represent the Ann Arbor-Wolinway Neighborhood Association. And I submitted a letter regarding the draft EIR, and I'm not going to repeat the points in the letter, but there was a, a small legal issue, which is important for this, this decision, which is, there is a stub in dedication at the end of the Ann Arbor Street. And quite frankly, the intent of that dedication is for future access for another public road. It is not for access to the, to the school. And as a result of that, if that alternative was selected, and I know that that's not the alternative proposed by Hillbrook, if that alternative was selected, it would not be a normal sequoia litigation where the presumptions are in favor of the, of the EIR. It would be a normal civil lawsuit that would have discovery, and it would go back to the intent of that original dedication, where you would look and see the shape of the street, what it was designed for, and so forth. That is probably not something that should be done. And so quite frankly, I just wanted to raise that issue that although the town council disagreed with that interpretation, that's not where the decision would lie. The decision would lie with the court. So we strongly support certifying the EIR with the CUP as proposed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lawson? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you. I'm Cindy Vendasius, and I actually live at the corner of Marchmont and Rosely Court, and I've lived there for sixteen years. I have a sophomore at the high school and a seventh grader at Fisher. But I'm not here to tell you what my kids do or what I do. We have three specific items that are of concern included in the CUP and the EIR. One of them is the nine hundred and sixty count. It's not based on legitimate data. The nine hundred and sixty number came from a town engineer, and he could not reproduce that number in a live meeting with the neighbors. The explanation was that the nine hundred and sixty was extrapolated from an ITE chart that was labeled "use with caution." Because the data came from only two studies, any conclusions from that data are statistically, and should be considered statistically irrelevant. The chart data was based on national averages. We have no knowledge of the schools or zones represented in that data. It would not be legitimate to compare Harper traffic, Harker traffic on Santa Moss Expressway and Campbell Avenue to Hillbrook traffic on Marchmont Drive. The second issue is that the EIR is deficient. The EIR does not include a formal safety audit. Most of the content is about capacity of the streets. Missing from the reports and part of the safety audit, there are no counts for bikes or pedestrians on Marchmont. There are no measurements of sight line around the S curve on Marchmont, no data on lack of sidewalks and, sidewalks and impact on safety. And the tables in the TJKM show that speeding at four or six measurement points, and there is no follow-up in the EIR. Accident report investigations were only looked at two years back, and all this is included in detail, supported to you on March thirteenth of this year. I also have copies for all of you. And then third, the last point, there is a letter that was produced by Nelson Nygaard. We believe it's prejudicial, based on the following conditions. The letter relies on Hillbrook Census, which is a third-party traffic count, to form conclusions, which the neighbors have repeatedly requested access to, but Hillbrook has never disclosed to neighbors or consultants the source of this data. The letter provides data from other schools, such as Blossom Hill, Los Gatos High, and St. Mary's, that are in commercially zoned areas on major arterial or collector streets. It's not legitimate to compare from those zones with the residentially zoned Marchmont area. The letter was submitted to the town on September seventeenth of this year, just a few weeks ago, which was insufficient time for the neighbors or consultant to review and respond. So in summary, failure to disclose relevant data and insufficient time to review critical data is considered prejudicial. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Then we have Jan Comte-Betty, and behind him will be Don Dotson, and then Arya Bararani. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jan Comte-Betty, a Los Gatos resident of, for sixteen years.
Please speak directly.
Our son Remy attended preschool at Green Hills for two years and is now in his fourth year at Hillbrook. I believe that all of us agree that providing the best possible education is the most important aspect of raising our children. I believe we also agree that we make mistakes, including Hillbrook. Has Hillbrook always been the best possible neighbor? No. However, everyone deserves a second chance, even schools. During the three-plus years that Remy has been going to Hillbrook, peak hour traffic has gradually, gradually decreased year after year. I believe it is fair to say that Hillbrook has learned from past mistakes, is doing better in controlling traffic, and has also made commitments to minimize traffic going forward. We all make choices. One choice is where we buy a home. We live about ten miles from Los Gatos, which makes for a long and busy commute to school, which, although frequently unpleasant, was, in our opinion, important to provide Remy with a good education at Hillbrook. Others decide to live on Los Gatos Boulevard or Highway Nine, and some buy a home near a school. Schools are for our children. And as parents will know, schools have to change to keep up with changes in the world and therefore in education. I must say that I'm particularly disappointed that several of my fellow Los Gatos residents are trying to influence the Planning Commission by innuendo and misinformation. Why would anyone try to withhold a better education from our Los Gatos kids and not allow them to develop in individuals that could lead our nation and the world? To be honest, some of what has been said here makes me sick to my stomach and makes me sometimes wonder how some members of the opposition sleep at night. I hope and trust that the Planning Commission will follow the advice of its staff and approve the modified CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before you leave, I have a question for you. So you clearly must live up where you come down the mountain. And then how do you get your children to Hillbrook? What, what, what do you or your child to Hillbrook?
It's, it's a variety. We, there are two families in the Los Gatos mountain that we commute with. Sometimes we bike from a friend's home or walk from a friend's home. So we try to make a contribution as best as we can.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. And could you pronounce your last name for me again?
Comte-Betty.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Dotson?
Good evening. My name is Don Dotson. I have a voice problem, so please bear with me. Representing Hillbrook on Wednesday, Chuck Hammer has presented two arguments for the proposed CUP, that it would allow Hillbrook to offer its students more choice, and that it would relieve pressure on public school enrollment. The first argument is misplaced. Hillbrook's desires should not be the issue. Community impact should. The second argument is dubious. At least fifty percent of Hillbrook students are not from Los Gatos, and most Hillbrook parents probably prefer a private school. The impact on public school enrollment would be minimal. Mr. Hammer did not address the real issue, the intensification of a non-conforming use of a site zoned for residential use. Mr. Hammer said his wife gave him four pieces of advice. One, listen to the neighbors. Mr. Hammer said Hillbrook held dozens of meetings with neighbors. Remember the map showing all the households opposed to Hillbrook's expansion? Obviously, they didn't like what they heard, nor did Hillbrook listen to their suggestions for reducing traffic. Two, actions speak louder than words. Hillbrook's past actions have shown a disregard for the neighborhood and the current CUP. It has exceeded enrollment caps and allowed third-party use in direct violation of the CUP. It has also redistributed traffic in violation of the spirit of the CUP. Three, do this with no impact. The neighbors have documented the negative impact of non-compliance with the existing CUP. Now, Hillbrook wants to make its current practices the baseline for future growth, proposing a CUP that would significantly increase enrollment programs and traffic. Four, be accountable. Hillbrook has not been accountable in the past. Given its record of non-compliance and the lack of enforcement by town staff, why should residents trust promises? While the recommendations by town staff are significantly better than the CUP Hillbrook wants, they too are flawed. Town staff have repeatedly said, both in their written report and their presentation last week, that they have tried to balance the needs of Hillbrook and the neighborhood. But promoting the success of a non-conforming use is not a goal of the general plan. The plan states this, prohibit uses that may lead to the deterioration of residential neighborhoods or adversely impact the public safety or the residential character of a residential neighborhood. Please follow the general plan and say no to Hillbrook expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Seeing no questions. Thank you, sir. Arya Bararani, and then behind them, him, will be Eva Katja and Juliet Vringen. And if I have mispronounced any of those names, please correct me. And then Patricia Markman. Mr. Bararani?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. I'm trying to display something here. I'm not sure if this is on.
Something on the screen. Ms. Savage is going to help you there.
I got a couple of things that I'm going to display, so I will stand here with the microphone. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Arya Barry-Ronnie. I live on Stony Brook Road with my wife and two boys who go to Blossom Hill, seven years old and nine years old. The character of the neighborhood has changed as retirees and empty nesters move out and more families move in. So I ask you, as you consider your decisions today for this plan, think the next few years, as more and more families move into the immediate area around Hillbrook and more children are added. What I'm here to talk about are after-school programs, specifically home games, because traffic is not limited to just morning drop-offs and afternoon pickups. As you can see here, there's been quite a bit of intensification of home games at Hillbrook. This is a list of the athletic contests from September 2013 to May 2014. And Hillbrook, for a hundred and forty students, grades five through eight, has currently scheduled a hundred and forty-nine athletic events, seventy-seven percent of which are played at home. Compare that to Fisher, which has roughly the same number of home games, about fifty-five percent of their games are played at home. So Hillbrook is very generous with their space, and they host a lot of games at home. Of course, games create traffic and noise. You heard from Long Meadow residents around sporting events and amplified sounds, and it creates traffic for the neighbors, often in hours that traffic is not necessarily being counted. In fact, the EIR that we are contesting is based on a traffic study that never took into consideration any after-hours programs. All of the traffic counts on that EIR were done on days that excluded any events whatsoever. So one of the reasons the neighbors are pushing for the rejection of the EIR being defective is because it doesn't give a full picture. So this is one of the things, and the neighbors are pushing for the full daily count. And as you know, when visitors come, they don't necessarily carpool, they don't necessarily ride buses. So they're going to come in in their cars, and they're going to commute like normal people, right? So here's one picture. For the neighbors, the home game schedule looks like this. This is January 2014. As you can see, Hillbrook has quite a bit of home games, a lot of times two in a day. So what we're asking for here is, you know, there's an intense use of after-hours programs and sporting. And we know for students, sports are important. No one's contesting that. But I want you to take that into consideration as you consider the EIR and the expansion, because the expansion of the children are going to be in these sporting grades, not junior K, not kindergarten, but in these grades. So there's going to be more events. So please, as you consider this, decline the ninety-nine and reject the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of, or at least one question for you. I don't even know if you know the answer to it. But your children go to Blossom Hill?
Yes, they do.
And are the Blossom Hill fields, sporting fields also used for other schools or sporting events?
I don't know if I have the accurate picture. I know that there are league events that happen. It's Blossom, Blossom Hill. Specifically, in the baseball fields, there are little league events that are not Blossom Hill oriented. My kids play there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. The next speakers are Eva Katja and Juliet Vringen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eva Frey, and I live on 268 Marchmont Drive with my sisters Katja and Juliet. We are here tonight to share our thoughts about traffic in our- We are here tonight to share our thoughts about traffic in our neighborhood.
We bike to school almost every day. I go to Blossom Hill. Our house is on the corner where there's a stop sign, so we don't have a problem getting out of our driveway.
The Hillbrook people are very nice. We see some of them walking and biking every day.
This year, there are more walkers than bikers than before. We bike out on the same side of the street where they are walking in. Lots of the people wait at us, and otherwise, we swerve into the street.
Last year, there were many more cars. When there were more cars, the cars had to wait at Hilo. That makes it trickier on the bike, because we want to go right, and sometimes cars block the corner.
The crossing guard leaves when Hillbrook starts. Kids on the way to Fisher with me have to cross alone, right when the parents who are late have come rushing in, and when other parents are leaving to go to work.
If there are lots of people walking to Hillbrook, the walking path at Hilo is full. Then we bike on the road. That is my favorite, because it is very bumpy.
Mama doesn't like it, though, because then we're on the narrow road with cars. There's no crossing guard at the end of Hilo, so it's hard to turn left on Shannon. If we bike on the wrong side of the street to Cherry Blossom, there's a crossing guard to help us.
I stay on the right side of the street and wait to cross Shannon. I always have to wait a long time, especially if I have to project and go early. This year is better, though. People are less impatient, and it's not as scary to bike. When I have to go around people or dogs, there is enough room. Please limit the traffic. Our neighborhood has all the traffic and can handle.
The thing is, when no one is driving to Hillbrook, there are almost no cars on the road. There is such a big difference between school time and non-school time, I don't understand why you would let more cars drive on our road.
I think that the kids should ride in the school buses, because lots of kids fit in a school bus. I was Blossom Hill at school buses.
Thank you.
All right, ladies. Any questions for these speakers? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Did a great job. Okay, we're going to hear from Ms. Markman, and then Elaine Myers, and then Donna Wallerston.
Good evening. Why is there conflict?
Do you want to identify yourself first?
Sure. I'm Patricia Markman. I live at 187 Long Meadow Drive. Why is there conflict in Los Gatos between well-educated residents and an educational facility? The public schools in Los Gatos are outstanding. They produced a Superior Court judge, my son, and a marketing manager, my daughter. And Hillbrook School is outstanding as well, and has its fair share of important people. Hillbrook sits in the midst of a beautiful residential neighborhood. We compromised when we bought our house on Long Meadow Drive, knowing the school was in our backyard. In 1986, it was a small, private school with few after-school events, no weekend events, and a small camp program during the summertime. It was noisy, but tolerable. The school has grown, and now the applicant is asking for an additional 99 students. That is 33% more noise than we currently have. The school should recognize that this new number of 414 is incompatible with its immediate environs. We don't want the impact on our environment to be worse than what it is, but it will be if the commissioners agree to Hillbrook's new CUP. Increased tournaments, summer activities, most of which take place outside, and after-school games will all generate more noise, traffic, and pollution, and will detract from our neighborhood. Proposed two-day weekend tournaments that could run from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. are outrageous. Is the school so inconsiderate as to think that we don't need some peace and quiet on the weekends? If any event takes place on the weekend, it should be limited by a 9 to 3 schedule on only one day. The CUP was violated, and any violations of a new CUP must have substantial penalties and not be determined by the school. Hillbrook should continue its already outstanding programs and be grateful that it can thrive in a beautiful area without further degrading the quality of life in the neighborhood. Please deny the CUP. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Ms. Wallerston, then Imad, and I'm going to spell the last name, T.A.W.F.I.L.I.S., and then Teshia Poe.
My name is Donna Wallerstein. I live at 16557 Marchmont Drive with my husband and three kids. Well, two now. One's in college. I work at Valley Medical Center. My husband is a pediatrician, and I also work in the hospital. We're the only Level 1 Regional Trauma Center in the area, and in the event of a natural or unnatural disaster, that's where a lot of victims would go for treatment and care, particularly pediatric victims. It's unconscionable that we would add another nearly 100 students to the end of a dead-end street. It makes all of our jobs that much harder as first responders and caregivers, healthcare providers. It's a difficult situation and a difficult location under the best of circumstances, let alone when people are traumatized, or frightened, or panicked. And that could very easily happen. I see it every day. So I'm asking you to please make a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I was calling Imad, T.A.W.F.I.L.I.S. Thank you, sir. Please pronounce your last name for me.
Tophelis.
Tophelis. Thank you very much.
And I'm here actually with my dog Sadie, and I live on the corner of Topping and Hilo, which is the congested one-lane area of Hilo. In the mornings, Hilo is right in front of my house, ends up being a parking lot. I can't get out of my parking lot. In the afternoon, same thing. My dog Sadie has actually almost been hit by a car three times. My niece, who's come to visit, almost gets hit by a car, because we can't get outside of our parking lot. So I don't oppose Hillbrook presence, but I do oppose the expansion, because the expansion does bring more traffic. My background, I have a degree in education. I'm an educator, and I believe in education. So I want to support education, and I congratulate Hillbrook for having good school system where students and parents want to take their school there. But to expand it further than it is today in a residential neighborhood doesn't really make any sense to me, because it does increase the traffic, and it does increase the safety of the people in the neighborhood, as well as, I consider, my family. So to me, if I look at the focus on expanding both middle school and as well elementary, there is also a choice where Hillbrook can focus on, rather than expanding both programs, maybe expanding one and finding another suitable place to expand the other, where parents also can, from other locations, can bring their students or their kids to have an education there as well. But that satisfies the growth of their programs, rather than try to have everything in both places in a residential neighborhood that can control the traffic. Right now, adding cars to the neighborhood and adding cars to my neighborhood, where I live right outside and I can't get outside, there is a safety issue. And so I would ask that the expansion be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Tophelis? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. We're going to hear from Teshia Poe, then we're going to hear from Brian Kanapa and Nicole Carbolik.
Good evening, Chair Smith and members of the Planning Commission. Teshia Poe couldn't be here tonight. She was here the last hearing, so I'm going to take her place. My name's Christine Kennedy, and there's a card for me there, and you can pull it, and that's three minutes back tonight. I wanted to step in early tonight to let the Planning Commission know that we heard all of the questions and concerns that were expressed during the last meeting and again this evening. And we thought, as we have tried to do throughout this entire process, what can we do to try and address those concerns? What can we do to be responsive to you guys? So I want to make a couple of proposals to you tonight. One of the things we heard expressed over and over is, we're not really comfortable with averaging alone, right? There was a discussion from Mr. O'Donnell, well, what about the difference between 2,000 and two cars? So we would like to propose affirmatively to you an all-day cap on top of the 960 averaging, not in lieu of, but on top of, of 1,200 cars. Second of all, another issue that we heard talked about quite a bit was this idea that carpooling, shuttling, walking, biking wasn't mandatory, that our parents weren't complying, and we couldn't make them do it. And we thought, well, this is something we can really address for you. First of all, you should know that today, we have 95% of our families participating in the morning, and about 85% in the afternoons. So I'd argue, people are obviously getting the message. This is really important. So, but we want, know you want to see something a little more definitive, a process you can put your arms around. So let me just go through the process that we're going to lay out for you. First, it's a commitment that all the families will be required to sign a provision as part of the enrollment agreement, committing to do it. And it'll say, if you don't do this, you will be asked not to re-enroll the next year. Second of all, any family that's in the beginning of the year, you're going to have to pick. This is what you have to, you're going to do predominantly throughout the year. And third, if you're not complying, you're going to meet with our transportation coordinator first to work with you, and you'll meet with her tonight, and she's going to speak with you. Then you'll meet, if that isn't working, you'll meet with our Director of Institutional Advancement, who is also here to talk to you tonight. And if that doesn't work, you will be brought in to meet with the head of school, and he will explain to you that failure to comply means you will not be offered re-enrollment next year. Make no mistake, we can't make these numbers if our families aren't doing this. 960 is an aggressive number for us. And we have a piece of paper I'll give you that lays out this offer in a little more detail. But before I step down, I am so amazed that we have so many people here tonight who sat through five hours last week, working parents, children. And I'd love if everybody in this room who supports Hillbrook, and everybody outside, to stand up and say Hillbrook on three. One, two, three. Hillbrook. Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Kennedy?
First of all, you're going to submit something to us in writing? I have it right here. Sure. Okay, and that's going to be on behalf of Hillbrook School or on behalf of yourself? On behalf of Hillbrook School. I didn't mention I have been, I'm on the Board of Trustees and have been leading this for, well, not, for a couple of years.
All right. And then the second thing that I want to hear from you is, can you explain to me how you're going to determine compliance? I mean, a car is a car is a car.
So, absolutely. Good question. So, and Nicole Carbolik will be speaking to us a little bit more detail, but, you know, one of the things about our school is, I can tell you, we know every single family. We know who's not doing it. And so if you were there, you know how you come in the front, and you drive around, and you have to pick up your child? So we open the doors. There's people waiting for them. You can't pick up your child anywhere else on campus. So what will happen is, you'll open the door, and you'll see there's Joe Schmo there again and picking up one kid. We can't have that. We won't make the 960s. So what we'll do is, we will be calling Joe and saying, you've got to come in and talk to us.
All right. Are there any other questions? Ms. Seac?
Ms. Kennedy, I appreciate, well, I always appreciate anyone who comes forward with ideas and suggestions. Was this in any way articulated or shared with the neighborhood? Or was this something that is just being proposed?
We just put it together, so we were, we know that these are questions you asked at the end of last week. So we were talking to town staff and trying to see what we could come up with that would really make sense.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Is that it?
Any other questions? That's it?
Lucky me. Thank you.
Good night.
Behind Ms. Kennedy is Brian Kanapa, in case I have not spoken that correctly, Nicole Carbolik, and then behind her will be Steve Benjamin. Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is actually Patrick Sigmund. I'm here on behalf of my colleague, Brian Kanapa. He was here at the previous meeting, but when the continuance happened, he was unable to come tonight because of a previously scheduled, actually a different Planning Commission hearing. So my name is Patrick Sigmund. I am a principal with Nelson Nygaard Transportation Consulting. We are the school's transportation planners. And just briefly, I want to say that the transportation program that Hillbrook has put together and is also proposing works on a three-legged stool approach.
If I could just ask you to maybe pull that microphone closer to you? There we go.
Sure. So first, the school has put in place effective transportation demand management programs. We've seen reduction in traffic compared to what was in existence prior to those programs, as we've documented in some of the materials that we've provided. Second, by putting in place the trip caps, the trip limits that are proposed, the 960 on an average daily traffic basis, or a 1,200 maximum, you have in place real limits that are enforceable. It's similar to what's been done at many other schools, at places like Stanford University. In addition, you have in place a sensor system that will be monitored by your own town staff and town transportation engineering consultants, which is a mechanism of enforcement that is neutral and also workable. And finally, what you have is enforceable penalties. So if the limits are exceeded, you have penalties in place, as proposed in the CUP, that make sure that there are real consequences. So taken together, you have a program that works well. Together, you have little left to chance. And what I would say is, I first became familiar with trip limits when I was a transportation planner, beginning at Stanford in 1994. Stanford has had its limit in effect since, I believe, 1989. And over more than a quarter century now, has really been extremely effective in meeting that limit. One thing we learned from the experience of Stanford is that Stanford constantly worked to improve its programs. They worked to make it work with changing train schedules, changing populations. And so one of the things we are asking for here is flexibility in the means to get the school to be within these limits and to stay there, but flexibility in which particular programs are used to do that over the years. And so that's why we've put together this program. Thank you.
Mr. Sigmund, I need to have a card from you, just so that you know, before you leave, you must fill out one of those cards. And so, Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell, you have some questions?
Yes, thank you. Since you studied this, and your firm has studied this, if we were to impose a restriction that, whatever the growth is, and let's take the 99, there could be no increase in traffic. Asking you as an engineer, and having studied this, is that possible? Forget how it would be done. Is that a possible restriction? Because if not, perhaps 99 students is too many.
I would say that there are a couple of things. First, it would depend on what baseline one was to measure from. And because there's been a substantial decrease in the peak-hour traffic from 2000, that, you know, that has demonstrated that the school, through voluntary efforts, has already been able to reduce traffic. How far it would be possible to go, it's hard to know until you try it. What I would say is that the 960 limit is something that we've looked at, the school has looked at. It's something that is certainly a It's something that is certainly achievable. It is aggressive, we think, because it's below the average we've seen at other private schools, and also because there is such a high carpooling and shuttle use rate already. So, taken all together, I think that the limits we've proposed are doable, and indeed the school is managing them already. But absolutely no traffic, I think that's something that would be difficult, and that I would certainly have to speak with the school before seeing if they would be willing to consider that.
When I look at your numbers, and I think these are your numbers, I'm looking at the staff, our staff's report. When you talk about AM peak and PM peak, and you're talking averages here, you have the 2014 at 315, pardon, 2010 at 315 students, as 146, and then you say extrapolated, if you go to 414, it only goes up by four, four more trips, goes up to 150. And so with the PM, it goes from 149 to 150. Those are relatively minor numbers. So it would appear that your max and your 960 partly derive from, obviously, non-peak times. Is that correct?
The, they are derived from, well, the proposed 960 limit is a daily limit, and in that, we proposed in response to neighborhood concerns that-
It's an average though, not a max.
The 960 would be averaging, and that's because generally, people want to look at, well, what's the impact like on a typical day? Then we've heard some concern also, that people are saying, well, we don't want to have some days that are 2,000, and then others be two trips. So that's why we proposed the 1,200 limit in addition, as a maximum. So it seems like that gives you both measures, for people who are concerned about both. And I have to say, I did not have the opportunity to review the staff report that just became available today. I was in transit on coming down here.
You're in the same position I am, but I called your attention to page three, and I had assumed, and perhaps incorrectly, that those were numbers that you also would adopt. So if you just take a glance at it, and it's okay if you don't know, we had the same problem.
Right, right. So I, to be honest, my best answer right now is, I don't know, because I just haven't had a chance to-
All right, well, thank you very much.
I think also, Commissioner O'Donnell, if I could just say, I think staff probably could address some specific questions, but right now, we're just taking the comments from the public.
Well, let me just say this-
Sure, go ahead.
-for a reason of that. It has been alleged during the course of this evening and the prior evening, that our staff essentially was in agreement with their engineers. And if that were the case, then these numbers would represent both parties' views. And we don't know that yet, because he's just glanced at it, and so eventually, we'll find out.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you, Mr. Sigmund, and make sure you fill out a speaker card, all right? Thank you. So then we have Nicole Carbolak, and then behind her will be Steve, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Sorry, I didn't see you. Mr. Sigmund, you want to step forward again?
Well, procedurally first, though, through the chair, I do have several questions of him. Would you prefer we wait? Would he be considered part of the application questions?
I believe so, and I mean, that was what I was thinking as you, as he stood up to speak, was that he is, would be considered part of the applicant's reply, and also available for us to ask questions when we get to that part.
So you'll be here until the very end?
Absolutely. Fortunately, I'm a bit of a night owl, so I'll be here till the end.
Okay, then I'll wait.
I might suggest you stop out, step out and get some coffee at some point. I have. All right. So, Ms. Carbolak, if I've mispronounced it, I'm sorry. And then behind her, though, will be Steve Benjamin, and then Mr. Lozawiki, just so that you're all set to go, and I have stepped forward. Okay, you're going to have something for our screen, and Ms. Savage is maybe going to help you with that.
Hi, my name is Nicole Carbolak. I'm the Director of After-School Summer and Transportation Programs at Hillbrook School. I'm also a member of a third-grade parent at Hillbrook, and a Los Gatos resident. I've been a member of the Hillbrook community for the past eight years. I wanted to share some details with you about our successful transportation demand management plan that we have instituted as a school, as well as talk about our continual efforts to refine the programs to ensure that it is working effectively, and responding to the needs of our neighborhood. Our TDM program looks at creating alternative ways for our students to get to and from school, which includes biking, walking, carpooling, and shuttling. Using recommendations from Nelson Nygaard, we have implemented a number of new programs in the last few years, which have allowed us to decrease our peak periods and all-day traffic totals. A cornerstone of our program is our bus or shuttle. We have between 110 and 120 students arriving by bus each morning, and 65 to 75 students leaving the bus in the afternoon. In our late shuttle, we have 30 students leaving in the afternoon. The most successful part of these shuttles have been the creation of the free kiss-and-ride stops within two miles of the school. Popular stops include the free shuttle at Courtside on Winchester Avenue, as well as the free shuttle on Holt's, at Holt's Restaurant by Highway 9. These two stops alone account for 50 to 60 students each day. By having parents drop their students off at these two stops, we are removing a significant numbers of cars from crossing Highway 17, at either Highway 9 or at Lark, which would otherwise would already be adding to the busy traffic congestion on Los Gatos Boulevard. We continue to pilot new shuttles to try to keep increased ridership. I know it's working, I see it every day in the field. For example, last spring, we've added a smaller shuttle that runs every 20 minutes between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock, to try to encourage participation by students who are in after-school enrichment classes and sports. Responding to our neighbors' concerns about the right-size busing, we are using small shuttles, and these shuttles only run if students are on it. In addition to these shuttles, we are active members of the Safe Routes to School with other Los Gatos public schools. We have a growing number of walkers and bikers on a regular basis. Our Marching Mondays can bring as many as 40 to 50 walkers on campus. In my role, I work with families to support and carpool, and encourage with partnership with families to online carpool partners. Last spring, I joined Head of School Mark Silver and Christine Kennedy to one of our, visit one of our neighbors, with concerns she had about special events, and this is where we park our families off at, off-site at the Calvary. Following our meeting, we took her suggestions, and immediately piloted a new program for these type of events. In the end, I feel like we're doing everything we can to be responsive to our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. I have actually a question for you, and one of them would be the after-school programs where, other than Hillbrook students, are involved in it. Do you coordinate that as well?
I do. Only Hillbrook students are involved in our activity, enrichment classes.
So, my question to you would be, if you were to have an event after school, and students from other schools were going to attend it, is there a way to also have the children and their parents and grandparents, because we all show up at these events, actually be bussed up as well?
So what we're doing is, when we, like, let's say there's a sport event going on right now, currently, and so what we're happening, what we're doing is, we also tell our neighborhood schools, who we're playing that day, saying, "We have a CUP, we want to make sure that we're mindful to our neighbors." So we tell them to carpool in together, or we also tell them to use their shuttle if it's available for them. And that's what they're doing. Like, Maryhill was at school last week, and they were busting in their families in to CR, to play the event.
Well, my question to you is, they were bussing in, but my question to you is, would Hillbrook put a bus down at whatever, I don't know, Blossom Hill Park?
Sure.
And say to the neighboring school or schools, "This is where you need to be, to come up to our school, because you cannot drive up that road?"
Yeah, I mean, of course I would have to run it by the board and everybody, but yeah, we're always like, open to new ideas. I'm like, if it's a way to alleviate traffic, we're on board. We're doing everything we can.
All right.
I'm like, I'm out there every day in the morning, with putting these kids on the bus. You know, you don't see them because they're really little. My third grader rides it every day. I mean, I see it, we're there on the bus.
All right, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner O'Donnell, and then Commissioner Seack?
There was prior testimony that 77% of your games are played at home, and that seems too generous a parsing of the games. Do you know why such a high percentage is played in this rather difficult location?
Okay, so that's a really good question. I can't speak to that, I would have to call Mark Silver up to answer that question.
Well, we will hear from him, I'm sure, but thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm just letting you know.
That's okay, we'll hold that question. We're going to make a list of the questions anyways, for him. Then Commissioner Seack?
Actually, that was one of my questions, but the second one, you mentioned you participated in the meeting with neighborhood, with your neighbors-
Yeah.
-on the after-school activities.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
And you mentioned that there were some specific items that they had suggested, and you created new pilot programs to address those. Could you talk about what the specific issues were, and what you then did to try and to remedy the situation?
Yeah, yeah. So what was happening is, sometimes we have like a, our Gold Rush Day, or we'll have like a production for the Spring Concert. And so, one of the neighbors, Christine Kennedy and Mr. Silver and I, we all went down to one of the neighbor's houses, and she was concerned about the buses coming up, the big 63-passenger buses coming up, or 68-passengers, coming up the hill. And so what she had suggested, could we possibly have the stop at Calvary, which we've been doing, but also do carpooling? So, myself, and members of my staff, we all went over to the Calvary, we arranged it. Two days later, we did it. It was very successful. So, we're open to suggestions.
And can you remind me what the definition of carpooling is to the Hillbrook community?
So if you are three, if you have three or more children in your family, you can carpool, or two different families. So I can try my child, and maybe one of the other children with my family, and that's considered a carpool. But most of our carpools have between four and five kids in the car.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Commissioner, tell us for.
Right, can you tell me, so tell me about the shuttles, the physical shuttles. Are they, what are the sizes of them?
Okay.
And for which activities? It sounds like you have-
Okay, so what we have is, we have two main, excuse me. We have two main, big shuttles that run down San Jose, and one also at Saratoga. Those two shuttles are 68 passengers. And then we have a Los Altos bus, that's the one that's running from Los Altos to the Courtside stop, and that one has 42 passengers. In the afternoon, we use that same shuttle that was running in the morning, to do the 305 shuttle, and the late shuttles. So it's a smaller-sized bus.
Okay, because what, now, are you talking about after-school, or after-school activities?
After-school. So I mean, like, in the afternoons.
Because I was there on the 16th, I didn't see smaller buses.
We did use it. It was right there at the front of the carpool lanes. We had about 20 kids-
Was there one there?
Yeah, it was a little shuttle, I'm not sure if you've seen it.
But there was a larger one as well.
Yeah, and the reason why that shuttle came into place is because our families are saying, "We want a carpool, but we need to get my child to ballet, or she needs to get to a Taekwondo class in downtown in Los Gatos." So I heard what the parents were telling me, and we piloted this 305 shuttle, and our parents are using it every day. They should be commended for the efforts and participation we're doing every single day. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Now we're going to hear from Steve Benjamin, and Mr. Lozawiki, and then Helen Bell.
Hi. My name's Steve Benjamin. I have been a parent at Hillbrook since 1996. My kids graduated in 2002. In 2004, I was a trustee from 2000 to 2014, and I was Board Chair for seven of those years. I was smart enough to turn it over to Chuck in time for this. But I'm still here. So I was there in 2001, when we came before the Planning Commission to rebuild our campus. At that time, our all-day traffic was over 1,400 cars, in and out, with peak traffic over 200 cars. That was clearly a problem. Cars were backed down, were down Marchmont, blocked neighbors' driveways, and the Planning Commission and the Town Council made it very clear in our CUP that traffic needed to be controlled, and we were given a, the town determined that we had to manage our traffic to a peak of 165 cars in the morning and in the afternoon. We put in a carpool program at that time, so that we could manage to our counts, and typically, we're in the 145 to 155 range. The morning and afternoon peaks have been monitored by the town for over a decade. We have never been found to be over the limit. Here's the data. Can I just put this right here? And this is just from the EIR, so this is data you've seen. And, so you can see that we've never been over the 165 at any time that it was measured. And you can also see that in the 2012 time period, the numbers dropped significantly, and I added in my own hand what the numbers were for 2013. They weren't on the graph in the EIR. But you can see that we've maintained those lower numbers, and that's by doing our, voluntarily doing our pilot programs to manage our traffic. Because we wanted to prove to ourselves that we could live up to tight restrictions, and not increase the traffic in the neighborhood by adding these kids. And so we've done it. Some neighbors claim that we're violating the CUP. On March 18th of 2013, there was a special meeting to review our CUP, and the Town Council did not find that we were in violation, nor did the planning staff. Our goal is to add 99 students and not impact the neighborhood. Our plan achieves that. The EIR says that there are no significant impacts, and professional planning staff who have reviewed our plans and operations-
Mr. Benjamin, I'm going to interrupt you now, because you must finish, okay? Or you're complete.
I'm good.
So I have a question for you. I have a philosophical question. Since you were involved since the very beginning, or at least the 1990s, then the 2000, why is the perception, at least, which you say the reality is not what it is, but why is the perception that there is so much traffic? Why, what happened here? And again, it's a philosophical question, but I think it's an important one, because we, I see your chart, and I've seen the other charts as well, so I'm just trying to understand-
And I emphasize, this data doesn't come from us.
No, I understand.
So, I don't really know the answer to that, other than to say that, overall, I think it's fair to say that the town has grown, and so there may be more traffic throughout the town as a result of that. Certainly, there's more traffic on the major arteries, and so that impacts how people feel. The only thing we can control is the traffic coming in and out of Hillbrook School, and we've demonstrated that we can control it. We've demonstrated that we have, in fact, lived to our current CUP in terms of traffic numbers. And in the last two years with our pilot program, we've demonstrated that we can lower the numbers with the 315 students that we have, and that by going to 414, we can still live within the numbers that were deemed by the town as being the appropriate numbers. As to why the neighbors feel that way, well, I would be hazarding a guess, and I might get myself into a lot of trouble.
And I understand. I just wanted to pose the question.
I think they're, I think if they, if they could have their druthers, there wouldn't be a school at the end of the hill.
Well, we are, thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions? Seeing none? Oh, Mr. Benjamin, I do have one other question. Did you attend any of the meetings with the neighbors when you were a trustee?
Yes, I did.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lozawiki, Helen Bell, and then Elaine Myers. Is Ed Lozawiki here? Anyone coming forward from the back? I know the back is very crowded. Nope? All right, then Helen Bell, and- All right, then Helen Bell, and behind Helen Bell, Elaine Myers.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Helen Bell, and I have two children at Hillbrook. I'm here tonight to say a few words about Hillbrook's continued efforts to mitigate traffic at peak hours, and how we as a community are engaging with the school's traffic policy. There are fewer cars traveling to and from Hillbrook today than they have been at any point in the past 15 years. The actual numbers for all-day traffic counts collected by independent, third-party professionals, and held as part of the public record are as follows. The town carried out two traffic counts in 2000 and 2001. And then, there were 1,300 to 1,400 cars a day traveling to Hillbrook. And if we fast-forward to 2011, the town carried out another study, finding that the car count had dropped to an average of 900 a day. This shows that traffic decreased by 1/3 over this 10-year period. Now, to look at the data more closely, if I can put this chart up. The graph shows average traffic volumes. And as you can see, we have time along the bottom, with morning to the left and afternoon to the right, number of vehicle exits from the campus vertically on the Y-axis. Two data sets are shown, the 2000 data in blue and the 2011 data in red. Immediately clear are two peaks corresponding to the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup, as you would expect. And what is also clear is how significantly lower the traffic volumes are in 2011, as shown by that red line. Not only at peak times, but also throughout the day. Since 2011, Hillbrook has not stood still. We want to be good neighbors. These reductions are due to our collective efforts, taking the shuttle bus, carpooling together, walking and biking to school. These efforts are not simply showpieces, but rather are tangible and permanent changes to how Hillbrook interacts with the neighborhood, and are a direct result of the success of Hillbrook's transportation system. And why is that? Well, in part, because the buses are great. We love the buses as parents. We've heard that some shuttles are nearly empty or for display only. And there was a suggestion that I and other parents here in white shirts tonight, as well as our community at home, are participating as some temporary facade. But actually, these buses are used every day, and they're a huge convenience for parents. I've got one other picture to show you here. This is a photograph taken of the children at the Lark and Winchester stop at Courtside that Nicole Kabeluk mentioned a moment ago. And this is the regular group of children, 18 on average, that take this bus every day. And to underscore what has been said previously, during the afternoons between the 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock period, the school now offers shuttle buses to ferry the kids down the hill to pick up at the Sheer Hadash and Holtz parking lots.
I have to stop you. I have a question for you. I see that you're a resident of Campbell. Where do you take your children? How do you, how do they get to school?
They get on at the Courtside shuttle.
So you come down 17, or you come down Winchester?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Bell? Seeing none, thank you very much. Elaine Myers. And then after Ms. Myers were Heather Delciello, Eileen Werner, and then Gordon Yamadi.
Ready?
We're ready, Ms. Myers.
I live next door to the Hillbrook School on the outgoing side, fortunately. But I have lived there with the original owners of the home. And I'm frequently over, or keeping track of the bad drivers. Although, one of the bad drivers is the San Jose Mercury news driver. I put up a barricade across the front of my yard. Anyway, I'm here mostly to answer your questions, if you have some. It is very difficult to live up by Hillbrook, especially when they want to add 100 more students at a time. Do you have questions for me?
So just to be sure, to clear, you live next door to the school?
Yes, I do, on the outgoing side.
And you've put up a barrier?
I've just put up a temporary barrier every night. Boards, boards, and even Hillbrook has loaned me some orange, that was parking lot.
The cones, mhm, all right, okay.
But we've been, we were there 60 years, and it's really very difficult to breathe.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Now, we have a couple of questions, don't leave yet. Commissioner Sayak?
What, what is the purpose of the barrier? Are you getting people pulling into your driveway? What, why do you feel the need for a barrier there?
It's the San Jose Mercury dealer, for one thing. But we had our mailbox at the street and originally. And since the mail carrier, not the mail carrier, but the newspaper carrier would knock it down every night, so we were given permission to put it back to the, oh, about three feet where the cement landing is. Appreciate that. But, and they keep wanting to increase all the time, and it's very difficult to breathe.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Now, one more question here. Commissioner Birch?
Since you have been a neighbor of Hillbrook for so long, aside from the traffic, let's take that off the court table. Do you feel, though, that Hillbrook has, aside from that, been a good neighbor?
The yard man is terrific. I don't know the rest of them, because many of the teachers, I think they speed out too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Meyer. Now we're going to hear from Heather Delciello, Eileen Werner, behind her, and Joe Sordi Sr. I'm sure I didn't spell, pronounce your last name correctly.
No, you did a great job.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm, I live at 209 Marchmont, and I'm here tonight to speak about the Hillbrook expansion. During the summer of 2011, Hillbrook outraged the neighborhood by renting its campus to a camp that enrolled more than 900 children. Traffic with parents picking up and dropping off at any time throughout the day and evening completely disrupted everyone's summer. After that, the town arranged for mediation to focus entirely on how to resolve issues related to Hillbrook's summer use of the campus. The mediator helped neighbors in Hillbrook make a list of nine summer options to address the situation. Hillbrook was told to consider the options and come back with suggestions. Hillbrook rejected all nine options without offering any new suggestions. And this didn't make the neighbors very happy. Past CUPs have not said anything about summers. And since summers were quiet, with Hillbrook running small camps with under 100 children, no one had complained. And up until the summer of 2011, the summers gave neighbors a welcome respite from noise, pollution, and unsafe traffic. Because of the mediation, Hillbrook should know that neighbors want a clear idea of what the school plans for summers. Yet Hillbrook's proposals leave everything wide open. There is no information about times of use, kinds of programming, pickup and drop-off times, traffic mitigation, or hours of operation. The TDM has no mention of summers. Hillbrook does say that it wants 414 campers, which would more than quadruple previous enrollment levels. Despite the fact that any conditions about summer use at Hillbrook would be completely new, the EIR did not even look at summer usage. It has no data on summer traffic levels and no information about past usage. Not only does the EIR fail to study summer use, it also contains false information. For example, the report says that Hillbrook's proposal of a 480 daily traffic average would give neighbors, quote, "real relief from traffic," end quote, occurring during the school year and would limit summer enrollment. This will not give residents real relief. This amount of summer traffic is more than double what neighbors are used to. Before 2009, daily summer traffic never exceeded 200 daily trips. And there is no guarantee that the traffic limit will limit summer enrollment. A true guarantee would be actually creating a summer enrollment limit like the 100 limit proposed by LG Katz. Because you don't have any information to help you make informed decisions about summer use at Hillbrook, and because the TDM doesn't even mention summers, I urge you to not approve the EIR and to wait to make decisions about the CUP until you have the information you need. This should include historical information about summer use, plans for traffic mitigation, and would, we hope, help you recognize the need to stop the kind of intensification of use that Hillbrook seems to have in mind. I would just like to point out one strange thing about Hillbrook's summer proposal. With a summer enrollment of 414, Hillbrook says that it can limit daily traffic to 480. This is roughly what we are asking for in the school year. So why would Hillbrook, that would have 414 enrollees and a daily traffic of 480 in the summer, if it can't also have this in the school year? A bit perplexing. Thank you very much for your time.
You are more than welcome. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much. Eileen Werner. I had called previously Gordon Yamadi, but I don't see anyone stepping up. Is he, oh, sorry, okay.
Members of the Planning Commission, Gordon Yamadi on Robin Way. Good evening, and thank you for the difficult, time-consuming, and challenging, but very important work that you do to make Los Gatos a very special place to live. The issue before you is extremely controversial because it's painfully emotional. Hillbrook and Marchmont, and the Marchmont neighborhood are so polarized that I'm even sure that they can agree on what the issues are. I can tell you one issue that is not the problem. It's not about providing or denying students access to high-quality education. We all want Hillbrook to succeed as a preeminent educational institution, but not at the expense and degradation of the surrounding residential neighborhood by unreasonable levels of traffic. So how do you make sense of all this public input and determine what is fair for the neighborhood and Hillbrook? You can start by looking at what's at the root of these deeply polarized views, the tremendous distrust that exists between the school and the Marchmont neighborhood. If a solution is to be found, we need to rebuild that trust. Here's what I suggest. Trust depends on transparency. There needs to be continuous monitoring of Hillbrook traffic now and in the future by an independent third party that is fully disclosed to the public, preferably in real time, so that everyone has the same data on how much traffic really exists at all times. How do we find a daily traffic limit that works for both the neighborhood and Hillbrook? In recent weeks, neighbors have reported that traffic volume has actually improved. Hillbrook is on its best behavior right now. If we can measure traffic now, we have a starting point for what works. The proposed CUP traffic limits contain so many exceptions and ambiguities that there really are no limits. If you want to build trust, keep the traffic limit criteria simple. A daily traffic cap with clearly defined exceptions for school, open houses, graduation, and the like. Limits based on averages can be easily gamed. Open other points of entry to the school to alleviate the traffic entering and exiting on Marchmont. The town attorney has confirmed that there are no legal impediments to opening access via Ann Arbor. Do you find it oddly coincidental that the Ann Arbor residents support the enrollment increase and that Hillbrook won't consider the Ann Arbor option? Do these actions reflect the values that we in Los Gatos have in building a great community? To rebuild trust, Hillbrook needs to demonstrate for at least a full school year that it can live within agreed-upon traffic and noise limits before any enrollment increase can take effect. And we need to make sure that penalties for violating the daily traffic limits really incentivize compliance, as opposed to merely serving as a budgeted expense item for the school. If you can keep these points in mind, I think there's a real chance for resolving this problem in a way where both Hillbrook and the surrounding neighborhood can thrive and coexist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamadi. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Eileen Werner. Ms. Werner here. Apparently not. Mr. Sordi Sr. Behind him will be Tom Driscoll, and behind him will be Gretchen Moore.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sordi. My wife Sheila and I live at 212 Marchmont Drive, where we've resided for 37 years. I'm going to omit the preamble to my prepared talk today to respond to some of the changes to the proposed conditions that Chuck Chambers and Christine have spoken to on Wednesday, and again today. Chuck Chambers, and again tonight, Christine said that the school would require, we would require parents to make a mandatory commitment to carpooling or busing. There's no such condition proposed. Are we doing this on the fly? Chuck said there would be parental penalties. Christine, again, emphasized tonight and amplified on that. But there's no such condition, no such condition proposed. Condition, Christine said they proposed a 1,200 full-day limit, which is a good idea, but that does not solve the manner in which averages are computed. Right now, the means of computing averages would make the limits completely meaningless and easily circumvented. I can't go into all those details, how that can be. Mr. Benjamin said that we have never, they have never exceeded the 165 limit, and that's not true. They have. He said that they're not now violating the CUP, and they weren't back in March. That's true. But that is not, has not been the problem that the neighbors have been complaining about. It's what they've done in the past. They have violated the CUP on continuing basis in a number of different ways. I can't go into all of those today. Mr. Benjamin, I hate to hear such an inflammatory remark. He said that the neighbors want to close the school. That is a lie. It's just not true. I mean, maybe there's somebody that said that one time. I don't know. But I can tell you, the neighbors do not want to close the school. We all think the school is a great school. We want it to remain. I have some other proposals here. The proposed summer traffic limit is 480 for 14, 414 enrollment. The regular school year limit is 960 for a 414 enrollment. So why can't it be 480 for a regular school year as well? I mean, it makes no sense. Neighbors would be ecstatic if you could have the limit at 480 for the full year. I have a whole bunch of other comments here on the conditions, which I will allow to go into record.
Thank you, Mr. Sordi. And I also want to acknowledge that we do have your written information that you've submitted in the past as well, so I know that it was extensive. So if you have anything more this evening that you have written out, go ahead and submit it. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we have received everything from you as well.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, and then, any questions for, Mr. Sordi, don't go anyplace. Commissioner Sayak?
Mr. Sordi, did you see the proposal that Ms. Kennedy handed to us earlier today where it talks about the parental compliance?
No, I didn't.
Okay. In it, it talks about what they are proposing based on the testimony from last time. And in there was what they would agree to in terms of compliance, in terms of enforcement. I was just curious if you had a chance and if you had any comments, but you haven't seen it?
Well, I'll have a general, I haven't seen it, but I would make a general comment. There are a lot of things wrong with the proposed conditions. There's a lot of vagueness in the way they're stated. The traffic coordinator, the details of how the traffic coordinator would function are not in the conditional use permit. And I would bet they're not in that document either. So, I mean, you know, he said a lot of things tonight that would be great if they were in the proposed conditions already. As I said, are we in the, were we in the mode of creating the proposal? Or are we, you in the mode of voting on what's already there? Thank you.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Sordi, so that you understand, we are considering what's before us. However, it is the job of the commission to either ask for, require modifications, et cetera. So the document before us could be a final document or could not be a final document. And then we make our requirements. And, and so, just so that you understand that, so this is...
Would that be, there be a continuation then?
There would not be a continuation. There would be a, what we decide, and then, and we can add our own modifications to it. And that will come during the deliberations. Whether or not we're going to do it, that's not what I'm stating. I just wanted you to understand that there is a process where we do not have to accept the package full as it is. We can, in fact, require additional modification to it.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. It's almost impossible to get it done in one night.
I would, as I said, bring your jammies and run out for coffee. So, thank you very much. And if I could just make a request of staff as well, Mr. Paulson or Ms. Savage. The, we're going to take a break after Mr. Driscoll. And Hillbrook School did prepare something for us in writing. I would like to have it copied and available for the public to be able to take a copy and take a look at it. able to take a copy and take a look at it during our break. So, Mr. Driscoll, you're going to wrap up the first two hours for us. Okay.
A quick note before I start. I have a desk item that I've given Jennifer.
You have a desk item as well? All right.
Okay. My name is Tom Driscoll. I live on Rosalie Court. I'm here to address some of the issues that were brought up by the Ann Arbor folks last week. The first thing that you heard was, "Marchmont, hey, quit your complaining. You knew what you were getting into when you bought your home." That's true. We did. There's a school up on the hill. There's one way in, there's one way out. We also bought our homes with the understanding and premise that there's an enrollment cap of 315, just like we all bought our homes with the understanding that there's a gate at the end of Ann Arbor. So, why is it okay to change the status quo on the cap, but not okay to change or question the status quo of the gate? Well, even though they've hired a lawyer to threaten you, which we heard just a little while ago, I'm glad to see that your town staff report came to the same conclusion we did. There is no legitimate basis for a lawsuit. Conveniently left out from last week was a 2001 study, which actually recommended opening the gate. Why? Shorter distance, fewer homes and sidewalks. It's pretty straightforward and pretty logical. Interestingly enough, Hillbrook de-scoped the Ann Arbor gate from the 2012 study that was performed by the same company. It was wrong to close that gate in 2001. It's wrong to close it today. Those two wrongs don't make it right. You also heard a very passionate plea from a neighbor last week. She said, "Don't open that gate. It's going to drive my property values down." Well, I think common sense dictates that she's probably right. I agree with it. And it turns out, so does the Journal of American Planning. So, I've taken this quote from a peer-reviewed publication. The cut to the chase is, "For every 100 cars that are decreased, residential property values increase 1 percent." So, how does that apply to us? Well, we all know the one-way in, one-way out. But what if traffic went one-way up Marchmont through the campus and out Ann Arbor? For every car that was removed from, from Marchmont, it would be added to Ann Arbor. So, what would be the impact on property values? So, I went on to Zillow. I just wanted to see how many houses were impacted and what would be the cumulative property values. So, you see the, see the numbers there in the little rectangles above the neighborhoods. So, if you take the 1% and apply it to the cumulative property values and plot that against the traffic count change, you see the red impact on the Ann Arbor neighborhood, the green impact on the Marchmont. And if you add those together, the only logical conclusion you can come to is opening that gate would benefit the town with a net positive impact on property values and an overall improvement in safety. So, some closing thoughts for your deliberation. Regarding that Ann Arbor gate, why are we doing this? Why are we bickering about which tax-paying residents get the short end of the stick? We're doing this for the benefit of a non-tax-paying business. Breakthrough Silicon Valley is a third-party organization. Please treat them as such. You've heard a lot of very passionate pleas about what a great school Hillbrook is. And I'm sure it is a fine school. But that's a distraction from the real issue. This is not about quality of education. It's about protecting the integrity and character of the neighborhood by placing enforceable rules around an overly aggressive business. That's what this is about. So, after all that you've heard about deficiencies in the EIR and the prejudicial Nelson Nygaard letter, please join me.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. May be seated. And so, it is 10 minutes after eight. We are going to take a five-minute break. But in the meantime, the staff is going to come out with a copy of the Hillbrook proposals. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't clear the doors, we're going to have to close the doors. So, if you're not in here, we'll close the doors. Please come in and be seated. May I please have silence in the audience? Okay. We are now going to continue with the public testimony. We're going to hear from Gretchen Moore, Neta Dalchelo, and Steve Barretzoff. Thank you. And you must be Ms. Moore?
I am. I am. Thank you.
All right. Just pull that up towards you. Thank you. And let's make sure that we have everyone seated who's coming in. There is room for, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore, I'm not starting your time yet. For anyone who is out in the lobby, we cannot see that. However, we do have room on benches here. And we invite everyone to come into the chambers if you so desire. There's plenty of room in here. Please be seated. I think some of our students maybe went home to do their homework and have made plenty of room. All right. So, if anyone else is coming in, if you could come in quietly because we do want to listen to Ms. Moore. Thank you. Now, your time's going to begin. So, please identify yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gretchen Moore, and I live on Highlow Road with my husband and three children, and have so since 2007. I'm concerned about the traffic and safety impact of Hillbrook's pending CUP application. As a parent and volunteer with Blossom Hill Elementary School's Safe Routes to School program for the past five years, I'm concerned that more and more traffic in the neighborhood will prevent the hundreds of families from walking, biking, or scooting to and from school, or at a minimum will compromise their safety. Over the past two years, Hillbrook has encouraged its community to walk, bus, and carpool, all done while the CUP application has been pending. However, this administration did little to mitigate traffic in the years prior. It appears the CUP process has been the best way to get Hillbrook to mitigate its traffic. I also have concerns about Hillbrook's kiss-and-ride stop on Shannon Road at Blossom Hill Park. Traffic and safety concerns were raised when the Google bus stop appeared on Shannon Road a few years ago. The stop was eventually moved off the street and out of the neighborhood. Shortly after, the Hillbrook kiss-and-ride stop appeared on the street on Shannon Road at Blossom Hill Park. Just like Google, the bus stops on the road, in the bike lane, in an area zone, no parking, and adds to a backup of cars already building down Shannon Road. And just like Google, it creates traffic, terrible traffic and safety issues. I've observed cars, fed up with waiting for the bus to load and unload students, proceed into oncoming traffic to go around the bus. I've also observed cars enter the park parking lot at high speeds to exit just past the bus to get around the backup. Furthermore, this location at the park has been used for years as an entrance point for Blossom Hill Elementary students to get onto campus. I don't understand why Hillbrook ignores these concerns and hasn't moved this kiss-and-ride stop off the street away from the park into a more appropriate location. The fact is, Hillbrook School is where it is, and that cannot be changed. However, how the school manages its traffic and its impact on the neighborhood can be. I've attended numerous meetings with Hillbrook, and I have to say that I am extremely disappointed, to say the least, with the CUP they present before you tonight. It addresses none of the neighborhood concerns, and the 1,200 daily car cap just proposed is just disrespectful. If you, additionally, if you add the 400 to 500 cars residential traffic to that number, it violates the town's traffic calming policy. Hillbrook is asking a lot of this neighborhood with nothing given in return but potentially a sound wall barrier, a gate opening, a disruptive summer, more traffic, and compromised safety, and a decreased quality of life. Commissioners, I urge you to reject the EIR and deny Hillbrook's CUP application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We're going to have some questions for you. Commissioner Seok?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Two questions. Since you did mention the proposed modifications that Hillbrook provided.
Yes.
So, you touched on number one. What about number two, their compliance efforts, specifically their enforcement? Any thoughts on that?
I find it difficult to check cars on a daily basis or to check the bus. I, this is the first I've heard of it tonight, so I really haven't had a chance to digest that information.
Okay. And then, the second, do you know the process? Who worked with Google to make the Google bus move? Because I do remember that was a big concern.
Yes. I remember they, a news crew appeared and interviewed several parents of Blossom Hill students, as well as Fisher students about the stop. I had called Officer Warpaul about that. He said there's no policy about a bus stop. It can just appear anywhere. I asked him in front of my house. He said, "Yes, if the company finds it convenient that your house to be in a convenient location, it can be right in front of your house."
Okay. Thank you.
I also have a question for you, since you're involved with the Safe Route to School program. Part of the testimony tonight was that the crossing guards leave their post before the Fisher kids start in the morning. Do you know anything about that?
I don't. I cross, sometimes I cross through Blossom Hill Park, so there's no crossing guard at the corner of Shady View and Shannon Road. Other days, I do use the crosswalk at Cherry Blossom Lane and Shannon Road, and there is a crossing guard there. I've left school at 8:30, and she's still there. I don't know how late she stays past that. But there is another crossing guard at the intersection of Shannon and Los Gatos Boulevard for Fisher students, and I'm assuming that person is there for the amount of time required.
Do you think, and this has nothing to do with Hillbrook, so I'm just asking you a question because of your experience, do you think it would be helpful to have more crossing guards around the, the elementary Van Meter, Blossom Hill?
Definitely. I mean, Highlow Road is unique in that when you get to Shannon Road, you have to either turn right to go away from Blossom Hill School or go in through Blossom Hill School through the park. There's no crossing guard at that stop, at that intersection and stop sign. Or you have to go left and walk on Shannon Road against traffic. You're basically walking in the bike lane to meet the other crossing guard.
All right. And then, I have a third question for you, which is your comment about the kiss-and-ride and the bus. And tonight, of course, we heard from a representative from Hillbrook who has handled that program. And then, you also said that you went to neighborhood meetings. So, I'm wondering if you raised that issue at any meeting, or you placed a call to Nicole, I think her first name was, at the school?
Yes. I have raised that issue since it appeared two years ago.
And the response is?
First, it was, "It's not a kiss-and-ride stop. It's just a stop for students who live in the neighborhood to, that find it too far to walk to school, but find it easy to get to that location." Then, I started seeing cars drive to that location. Many of them would drive down Highlow towards Shannon Road, so they would go past Marchmont Drive to drop their kids there to catch the stop. I did inquire of Hillbrook administration about that and was told that it works so well for those folks that lived in the neighborhood. It was a convenient location for them that they decided to expand it into a full-blown kiss-and-ride.
All right. Okay. Well, you answered my questions. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you for your time.
Neta Dalchelo, Steve Barretzoff, and then Pat Parsigian.
Good evening. My name is Neta Dalchelo. I live on Marchmont.
And I need for you to pull that microphone right up to, close to you. Thank you.
My name is Neta Dalchelo, and I live on Marchmont Drive. I bought, my husband and I bought our house about three and a half years ago. And since that time, and just to be clear, I have a daughter that goes to Fisher, and I have another child that goes to Los Gatos High School. Since we have lived on Marchmont and the traffic that comes from Englewood going up past my house every morning, it is very difficult for me to pull out of my, pull out of my driveway to get my kids to school. Most of the time, the cars that are going by or going up the street are speeding. Very rarely does anybody stop to let me get out. The school buses that I've heard some talk about today, and I saw a picture of one with, filled with children, I honestly can tell you that I have never seen one of those school buses filled, even half is full. Most of the school buses that I've seen going up Marchmont are virtually empty. And I see that in the morning, and I see it in the afternoons. I probably should have taken my camera out and taken some pictures for, for the commission, but I see that school bus go by my house, and it is not full, not even close to it. There were some neighbors from Ann Arbor that got up and talked about how they don't want that gate opened. I understand there was an attorney that was hired to threaten the lawsuit if that was the case. I really ask the commission to consider this. Why do they care so much? And the reason is because they don't want to be dealing with the same problems and issues that we are now faced with at Marchmont. It is very unfair to expect one neighborhood to take the brunt of all of this inconvenience. When we bought our house, yes, we knew there was a school on top of the, of the hill. We were fine with it. I think Hillbrook's a great school. I have friends of mine whose kids go to Hillbrook. That's not the issue. The issue is, it is a one-way street, dead end, up and down. To expect one neighborhood to take the brunt of all of this is absolutely unfair. It is not about how many signatures you can get at a farmer's market. I think the commission has seen, the board that had all of the neighbors who are being affected on a daily basis, how everybody is against it. And I really urge the commission to please consider us. It's not about the numbers and how many white shirts and green shirts you're seeing in front of you. It's about who is this impacting? And we really urge you to please consider that this is going to be a significant impact. It already has been, and we're dealing with it. But to increase, the thought of increasing the, the number of students, another 100, would just create utter chaos for the rest of us that live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Ma'am, please come back. Okay. Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, I do. It's an operational question. You said that you, to leave your driveway. Can you explain to us how you, how that happens?
Well-
Garage, obviously, is in front of the house, so do you come out?
I, my garage opens, I have to pull out.
But do you come out front first or, or back?
I back out. And I need to back out, and then I need to get, be able to get onto the street to turn my car to try to, to take my kids to school.
And is your location on the street, I'd like to just understand, I mean, I hear your passion, but I'd like to understand the complexity of what you're dealing with as far as coming out. And is it the time of day that's exact, it coincides with the arrival of the Hillbrook students?
My kids, between the hours of 7:30 to 8:15, 8:20 is when I'm trying to take them to school. I take my daughter to school first. She's at the high school. And then, I come back and I take my younger daughter to Fisher. So, it impacts me twice. Both times, I have to wait for the cars to go by in order to back out onto, onto the street and then turn and try to get, you know, get on Englewood and then try to go to where I need to go. It is very rare that a car will wait and let me pull out of my driveway. If anything, they are whizzing by, and sometimes it takes me a while to just sit there and wait for these cars to go by. On top of that, when I get to Englewood, there's a stop sign on Marchmont and Englewood, the cars are driving by and turning onto Marchmont. A couple of times, they've come really close to hitting my car. The, you know, I understand everybody's trying to get their kids to school. I deal with that, too. We've got kids. They're late sometimes. You're trying to get them to where they need to go. But to expect our neighborhood to take the brunt of all of this and to increase the student size is just going to create even more of a mess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve Barretzoff. Anyone coming from the back? All right. Pat Parsigian. Behind her will be Toni Elarian. I may have mispronounced that. Mike Wood. And then, that's three speakers. Go ahead. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Pat Parsigian, and I have lived on the corner of Ferris Avenue and Kennedy Road for 18 years, ever since I purchased my home in 1996. Ferris is located between Englewood and Los Gatos Boulevard. I would like to see a reduction in the number of students traveling in personal vehicles to and from the Hillbrook School. A reduction to zero, in fact. I propose to you that every child should arrive on a bus that shuttles students to and from a central location that can accommodate such regular traffic. Local students, of course, might prefer to walk or bike to school. My home faces Ferris, but my driveway is on Kennedy. During the school year, if I need to use my car during the peak morning hours, my best option is to back out and move the car onto Ferris across from my home long before the morning traffic jam begins. Traffic on Kennedy backs up well past Ferris and blocks me from exiting my driveway. There is a church on Ferris. I stood before the Planning Commission with my neighbors in 1999 to oppose a modification to their CUP to allow a preschool there. The Planning Commission listened carefully, did their research, and denied the change. The applicant appealed the decision to the town council, and the council approved it. When traffic backs up on Kennedy and the Boulevard, drivers cut through our short street. The town put up signs forbidding those turns during peak hours as a traffic calming measure. Without enforcement, that's all they are, signs. We have all the traffic that you've heard about and more. Preschool traffic during the day and nighttime traffic from groups that meet in the church's space six nights a week. For about one year, my commuter shuttle stop was on Shannon Road between Englewood and Cherry Bloss- Cherry Blossom. Every morning, I walked to the stop via Ferris, Loma, and Englewood. I quickly learned that walking to the 8:25 morning shuttle was dangerous. Parents heading for Hillbrook race along Englewood from speed hump to speed hump. As I'm sure you're aware, there are no sidewalks on Englewood, and the perennial answer to questions about improvements is that it's complicated because some properties are county, some are Los Gatos. For my safety, I changed my routine to catch an earlier shuttle. My neighbors' children, walking and biking to our local schools, don't have that option. Whenever I did walk to the 8:25 shuttle, I would see a school bus that I now understand was headed for Hillbrook. I always wondered about it as it appeared to be largely empty. Let's fill that school bus and reduce the number of Hillbrook students traveling in personal vehicles to zero. Create a transit center in the North Forty to relieve the pressure on our local streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Elarian? Why don't you step forward? And I'll bet you are Steve. No?
No.
No, okay. All right. I want you to step forward anyways, because you're probably Mike.
How did you know that?
Okay, so we, we do not have Toni Elarian or Steve Berthoff, Bearshoff. Okay, so if, are they in the audience? And they just haven't stepped forward? Okay, someone knows them. All right, so those two speaker cards were submitted, but they're not here. So if you see your neighbors coming up from the back, just tell them to wave their hand. Okay, so Mr. Wood, you're up.
Good evening, Chair Smith and members of the commission. My name is Mike Wood. My wife and I are local residents with a first and second grader attending Hillbrook. As business in town continues to improve, the local economy expands, and families continue to be drawn towards Los Gatos, traffic on and around roads like Los Gatos Boulevard have increased. Nearly everyone can agree that traffic is worse than ever in Los Gatos. But this is not because of Hillbrook. In fact, on the contrary, Hillbrook has been part of the solution to reduce traffic, not part of the problem. We are fortunate to live in a place where both our private and public schools attract so many families. In fact, because of this great reputation, our public schools have earned more than 900 new students have been added to Los Gatos Public Schools over the last eight years. This is excluding Lexington. This data is shown in the bottom table of this slide. The top table of this slide shows that enrollment has increased by 32% over the same, the same period at Los Gatos Public Schools, which operate within seven tenths of a mile from Hillbrook. But Hillbrook traffic has never been better, and the data is there to prove it. Independent traffic studies validate that traffic has dropped significantly, but don't just rely on the data. A visit to Marchmont will affirm that traffic is limited and nothing like what opponents claim. In the early 2000s, traffic ran out from the school and into the street in both the morning and afternoon. There were nearly 200 cars during morning and afternoon peak periods. Today, morning peak hours are just over 100 cars, and in the afternoon peak period, there are 100 to 125 cars. There have also been claims by opponents of excessive afternoon traffic, which are untrue. Hillbrook's traffic patterns are no different than any other school. And contrary to claims of neighbors, Hillbrook's traffic patterns have not changed since 2000 with one exception. The amount of traffic has decreased by 30%. One-third of Hillbrook students ride a shuttle bus to Hillbrook, which alone has reduced our traffic coming to and from Hillbrook School every morning and afternoon. As I mentioned in the beginning, even though traffic has increased around Los Gatos, Hillbrook has actually decreased traffic. One place you can see this is on Cardinal Lane, Stony Brook Road, and Hylo. As seen in the traffic study from 2013, Cardinal and Stony Brook has increased slightly from 731 to 791. Only approximately 3% of Hillbrook travels Cardinal Lane and Stony Brook, which represents 25 cars per day. This represents, this represents about 180 to 190.
Mr. Wood, you know I'm going to stop you.
Of course.
But I do have one question for you. Can you give us the attribution for your chart up there?
Absolutely. So this data was collected, data was collected through, by calling the Los Gatos Union School District.
So this is your personal chart?
This is data that was collected by a trustee with the school.
All right. I just needed to know that. Who compiled the information? All right, are there any other questions for Mr. Wood? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Want to call Jennifer Thornton, then behind her, Marcy Sweetland, and then Meg Galley.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. I hope we get out of here reasonably early. My name is Jennifer Hall Thornton. I'm a neighbor, and I support Hillbrook School. I've had my house in the neighborhood for 22 years and have been a resident of this area for almost my entire life. In the years that I've lived in Los Gatos and Saratoga, I've seen the area grow and become much more densely populated. As a result, there's much more traffic, and this traffic isn't limited to my neighborhood. It really infuriates me that there's a small group of people that's attempting to stop a needed and important expansion because of a misguided reliance on dated information and old grievances. They're using a town-wide issue of traffic problems to claim the traffic is related to Hillbrook and is out of control. A few of my fellow neighbors have perpetuated a myth that more than 30% of students equals, will equal 30 more, 30% more cars in the neighborhood. This is patently not true. In fact, Hillbrook has committed, in the terms of the CUP, to an average all-day car count of 960 cars. This is 31% lower than the 2001 all-day car count of 1,400 cars per day. Hillbrook must be one of the only groups in town who's actually committed to decrease traffic significantly over the past decade and will, and is working to continue to keep traffic down. Hillbrook should not pay the price because some people are upset about traffic issues in town. This is an entirely separate issue that should be addressed in a separate forum. I ask the planning commission to approve Hillbrook's new and improved CUP as recommended by the town staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
You mentioned you live in the neighborhood. Can you tell me where?
I live on Englewood Avenue currently, and I, prior to that, lived on Loma Street.
Okay. And did you have children that attended Hillbrook?
I do. I have two children that currently attend Hillbrook. One is in first grade, no, one's in second grade and one's in third grade. It gets very confusing. They keep growing so fast.
Thank you.
And we walk to school every day, rain or shine.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions. Marcy Sweetland, who's going to be followed by Meg Galley, who's going to be followed by Sally Edsel.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Marcy Sweetland, and I've lived in Los Gatos for over 20 years. As a long-term resident, I've had the pleasure of seeing Los Gatos transform into one of the best places in the Bay Area to raise a family. As a result, we have seen attendance in our local school system skyrocket together with our morning commute times. Even though the communities by Dave's, Blossom Hill, Fisher, and St. Mary's may not be as vocal as the Marchmont neighborhood, their traffic problems are far worse than current Marchmont traffic. We have personal experience with this. Our daughter, daughter was initially enrolled at Dave's Avenue, a school which we loved. But Dave's and the neighboring schools do not offer a bus or any form of public-provided transportation. As a result, our morning commute from downtown to Dave's to Kitty Campus at the Calvary Church took roughly 45 minutes to an hour, with much of the time spent in traffic jams in residential areas. Our previous residence in Almond Grove is near St. Mary's, and we have experienced firsthand speeding, texting, and driving, drivers who roll through stop signs, and all other sorts of speeding violations. A speaker who spoke the other night made a statement that guns don't kill people, cars do. But I'd like to make a note that the quality of driving is a huge factor in this. I think there is a gradient scale of quality of driving, and that's the point that I think is missing. Everybody would like their home to be safe and the neighborhood around them to be safe. In our St. Mary's neighborhood, of course, we want it to be safe, but it was not the quality that we would see in St. Mary's compared to Hillbrook. There's no comparison. In addition, by Dave's, we would see people driving very fast. I have friends that lives on Bruce Street and around the Dave's neighborhood. We would see routine speeding. Parking in front of the neighborhoods is an everyday occurrence. This does not happen on Marchmont. Hillbrook offers a bus system, which our kids use every day, and I do mean every day. My daughter was new at first grade last year. I had her, I drove her to school the first morning. She took the bus home that night, and she took it every other day for the rest of the year with two exceptions, one of which when I had to pick her up when she was ill. Hillbrook has been systematically measuring incoming traffic to the school and refining the schedule and routes to make sure that it meets the needs of the family. As Nicole mentioned early, they're constantly looking for ways to improve the system, to help meet the needs of the neighbors, and get the, get the neighborhood engaged. I would also encourage the town council to research Hillbrook's contribution to educational research, assistance they've given to other public school systems, and the quality of their programs. I truly understand that you have a difficult decision at hand here, and you cannot make everyone happy. On one side, you have residents who don't want to change their neighborhood and property values, and I understand this, given that we do own a property downtown near a school. But on the flip side, I see the incredible things that Hillbrook is doing with children at their school.
Thank you. I'm going to have to stop you. Thank you very much. Meg Galley, followed by Sally Edsel, followed by Susan Freeman.
My husband and I moved to Los Gatos nine years ago. We have two children at Hillbrook. One's a kindergartner and the other's a second grader. I'm here tonight to give you a little perspective on traffic from an actual commuter and show you how Hillbrook has really made a difference. We live on Bella Vista Avenue, and some of you may know where that is. It's actually a shortcut that gets you from Los Gatos Boulevard to the back of the high school. It is a major thoroughway for, for parents and students that are rushing to the high school. We actually are committed every morning to walking, biking, and even taking the shuttle, scooting to the shuttle. And so I'm actually biking in this picture. You can see I'm biking on my way to, to school with my daughters. So I really experience the anxiety and obviously some of the traffic that we're having to experience there. But when I get to Marchmont on my little bike route, this was yesterday, this is on Upper Marchmont, it all changes actually when you get to even anywhere on Marchmont. It becomes calm, the drivers are courteous, I'm always waving and saying hi to people. My anxiety actually goes down, it goes away. It's like a big sigh of relief. And I think a lot of this has to do with the measures the school's taken, putting in the traffic guards, to putting the signs out and picking them up every day. But I think the biggest component is actually Hillbrook, the administration, and the parents, and how committed we are to really trying to solve this problem. We, we get it. This is, this is actually, I see Hillbrook, the Hillbrook area as my neighborhood, too. The parents, we are all standing here committed to trying to help to, to reduce traffic. In the three years, this is actually the fourth year that I've been at Hillbrook, we've seen huge transformation in traffic. I can't tell you that the changes in parents are seeing the time benefit and the financial benefit to riding the shuttles, carpooling. Even the kids, believe it or not, the kids are demanding to be able to ride in the, in the buses with their friends or in carpools. So it's really a cultural change that's happened at the school over the last three years. This isn't a short-term phase. This isn't something that's going to go away. So yes, we can put in mandatory measurements, but I have to tell you that it's really the way of the school right now, and it's not going, it's not going to go away. Tonight, Hillbrook's being a leader. We're asking for something unheard of of any of the other schools. We're asking for an increase in enrollment with a committed, commitment to reducing the traffic. By setting up these shuttle routes that they've done around town, they've actually been able to take cars off the road. So I think that if, if, as, as neighbors look at the problems with the traffic in town, I think we should actually consider maybe rolling out some of these shuttle programs in the schools in town. Roll it on beyond what Hillbrook is doing and implement it for the school system. To the planning commission, you have an opportunity tonight to be a leader as well, to show Los Gatos that the environment matters, that our children matter, and our choice in education matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edsel. I'm just going to make one comment, and that is that I admire that you go up that hill on a bike.
I don't quite make it up the hill, but I, believe it or not, my second grader takes immense pride in, in making it up the hill. So. We also do the kiss and ride stop on Kennedy, and my girls love that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So now we're going to hear from Ms. Freeman, and then behind her will be Dan Shaw and Mary Hammers.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sally Edsel. I live in the neighborhood next to Hillbrook School. I have two children, one at Los Gatos High and one at Hillbrook. I wanted to speak tonight because it is very important to me that this panel understands a couple of things about traffic safety around Hillbrook School. My son rides his bike to school every day. Sometimes I join him. Regularly, I walk and run our dog in the neighborhood. For this reason, the conditions on the streets and the way people drive around Hillbrook are critically important to me. If the traffic conditions were not safe, I would not have my son riding to school. I've driven a carpool to Los Gatos High the last two years, and I've seen the traffic to and from there. It's substantial. My family has been at Hillbrook since 2003, and I can assure you that carpooling is a part of the Hillbrook culture. Hillbrook fosters an environment and expectation with our parents that everyone drives slowly and courteously and carpool, be it by shuttle buses, ride sharing, biking, or walking. And we truly do. The residents on streets near other Los Gatos schools would be envious to see the daily traffic pattern to and from Hillbrook. If only they, too, could experience the same traffic mitigation measures and 15 mile-per-hour speed limit as Hillbrook. People who live locally like me enjoy significantly less traffic on their streets because of Hillbrook's efforts. This makes everybody safer and happier. But this isn't just my observation. The data backs it up. The EIR conducted for this proposal found that adding 99 students to Hillbrook will only add a total of 40 round trips on Upper Marchmont, spread over a 10-hour day. Hardly a safety risk and hardly a reason to deny this proposal. A third more students does not equal a third more cars. As you know, traffic safety was evaluated for this project by the town's traffic engineering consultant. They collected traffic data, reviewed the volume of cars, the number of bikers and walkers, the speeds, and the overall traffic conditions. After this exhaustive analysis, the town's consultant found there are no safe, unsafe conditions, none. Existing roadways are performing as they should. Hillbrook drivers stop at stop signs and share the road with bikers and pedestrians. Speeds are found to be under or consistent with the posted limits. The town's traffic engineers studied Hillbrook's proposal and independently concluded there are no unsafe conditions, and this proposal would not cause any additional traffic safety impacts. I want you to know that Hillbrook parents live here, and we care deeply about Los Gatos. 62% of the student, our student population lives in Los Gatos, Saratoga, Montezarina. We would never come before you and ask you to vote in favor of something that would endanger or negatively impact this amazing community. We ask the planning commission to approve our new and improved CUP as recommended by town staff. Our proposal is honest, modest, and data-driven. Hillbrook is a school, a fantastic Los Gatos school.
Thank you very much. No questions. Mr. Shaw, are you here?
You've called my name.
Pardon me?
You've called my name. A second. Try that first, Susan Fryman?
Yes, I'm sorry. I did think that you spoke, but, okay, go ahead. I know you didn't. I just saw this card and thought you had.
No worries.
All right.
My name is Susan Fryman. I live.
You know what I'd like you to do? There you go. Come close.
I was outside straining to hear, so I'll do my best.
So you know.
Yes, I do.
Why we need you to speak close.
I live on 17380 High Street for almost 19 years.[1760.95] I live on 17380 High Street for almost 19 years. I'm a Van Meter parent. I have a kindergartner and a second grader going to that 660-student school. We've grown by over 100 kids since my child started just three years ago. We have no more spare space. Our game room has been taken over to make yet another classroom. We're out, full up. So I'm here today because I was here also last week and three weeks ago talking with the Town Not City group because the Los Gatos schools are severely impacted. Hillbrook is our friend in this matter. 100 students to Hillbrook roughly equates to 40-some-odd students that we do not have to shoehorn or squeeze into our schools, whether it's overcrowded classrooms or, God forbid, going back to portables, which nobody here wants to do for our public schools. So that's one reason. Another reason, and why I brought this up, I live at Point B. Sorry, it took Point A because that's where I am. Point E is roughly Pete's and Whole Foods. And before tonight, I was, well, I do, three, four times a day, I'm on that path. I'm on Englewood. I take, when I was doing the two-school shuffle between a preschool at JCC and a kindergartner at Van Meter, I would come the backroads, up Ferris, over, through to Los Gatos Boulevard, all legal turns. I would go Marchmont, around and back on Loma to get to Ferris, just because Los Gatos Boulevard is impassable. I would rather drive an extra mile out of my way than sit 10 minutes stopped waiting for traffic lights to change. So as queen of the backroads, I apologize for all you Englewood people. I drive slow. I'm in a big, slow, creepy minivan that doesn't go very fast anywhere anyway, but I use your roads several times a day. So I apologize for that. And lastly, I just have to say, it saddens me to see how the town has split. I have sat across the street in the rec center with Gretchen and her toddlers, and Meg and her toddlers, all in Music Together classes as one big community. I sincerely hope we can get back to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none. Let's see if I can get us back on track here. Mary Hammers, Michael Mulcahy, and Eric Fox. Oh, is Dan Shaw here? Okay, you're here?
Susan wanted to go back.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
Ladies first, always.
Okay.
Chairman Smith and other members of the Planning Commission, first off, thanks for taking your time to be here last week and this week. I'll confess, I was asked to be part of this 15 years ago, and I passed to be a member of the commission, and I still wonder if that was a really fabulous opportunity that I didn't get to help our community better. So I appreciate all the time you guys put in, both here and I know reading a lot of stuff outside of this timeframe. As a resident 18 years, as a local business owner located in Los Gatos the last 12 years, as a parent of three Hillbrook graduates, and as a former trustee at Hillbrook for eight years, I come before you with some concerns about some of the facts. I read the whole final EIR. I'm in the real estate business. I read them. They put me to sleep often. I read this one, and I found many parts of it that are important. One fiction that seems to be out there is that Hillbrook parents don't actually bus, carpool, walk. The EIR commented that 18 out of the 22 recommendations by Nelson Nygaard's TDM have been implemented by Hillbrook. Most applicants don't implement any conditions of approval prior to their approval. This applicant stepped forward and implemented things. Another fiction is that Hillbrook has violated its CUP. We know that Hillbrook has never been cited, never been in violation, never been brought before the Planning Commission or the town council and cited for any violations of its existing CUP. Regrettably, this exaggeration is being used against Hillbrook to generate a lot of hysteria. Another fiction is Hillbrook was accused of flooding the neighborhood with traffic after 3:45 in the afternoon. I know as a parent that this isn't the case. Families do have to pick up kids after 3:45 because kids participate in after-school activities. All my sons participated in sports and other activities at Hillbrook. Kids do that at all schools. That's what parents do in the afternoon in Los Gatos and other communities. So another fiction is that neighbors claim that the experts have identified daily traffic levels way above normal, and that we have a significantly impaired residential neighborhood. I know for a fact that the town of Los Gatos' traffic calming policy standard is 1,500 cars on a residential street. We're not anywhere near 1,500 cars. Another fiction is that a daily limit of 485 trips is an amount of traffic the IT considers appropriate for Upper Marchmont. I can tell you as a volunteer, it's a fact that I've been a point person with the town with traffic. I've met with Jesse Pugh 12 times over the last five years. I personally did the research on the census data counter that's in the ground. I was there the day it was installed. I pulled the encroachment permit with the Town Public Works Department. I know it's down in there. I saw it go in the hole. I know that there was a traffic problem in 2001. We addressed it. It's gotten better since then.
Sir, I'm going to have to stop you.
Thank you.
So thank you for your comments. Any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Now, I want to, I want to get back on track with the right names, but I also had called Tony Arleon, and no one responded. So this is my third attempt. We'll have to assume that he or she had to leave. And how about Steve Barretshoff? Not here. We're going to assume that he had to leave as well. All right, so now we're going to hear from, is it Ms. Hammers? All right, followed by Michael Mulcahy, followed by Eric Fox.
Thank you very much. My name is Mary Babbitt-Hammers. I have four children, three at Hillbrook and one in high school. I live in the neighborhood around Hillbrook School. My husband and I moved our family to Los Gatos, and my husband moved his business headquarters here to Los Gatos because of Hillbrook School. Having grown up in the public system, I thought being in a private school would mean that somehow we were outsiders, but that really isn't the case in Los Gatos. Through soccer, Little League, and the like, we've made so many friends in the public schools, and we also discovered that a lot of people in Los Gatos go to private schools. In fact, I'd like to show you some numbers that really surprised me. There are five private elementary schools in Los Gatos and three public schools. In 2006, the private schools had 1,750 seats, and the public schools had almost 1,500. But over the last eight years, something interesting has happened. More than 400 students joined the public elementary schools, but look at, the private schools, their enrollments did not change. Why? Because the private schools are limited by outdated enrollment caps. They cannot add students, which forces all of the additional children into the public schools. It unfairly burdens the public schools while effectively choking off the private schools. It's why Hillbrook has to turn away Los Gatos families every year, and Hillbrook is not alone. But this really isn't us versus them. When it comes to education, we are truly all in this together, public and private. Everyone here knows, Los Gatos has terrific public schools, but there needs to be other options too. Great towns have great schools, public, parochial, and independent. Even on Marchmont, several families drive their children to private schools like St. Mary's and St. Andrews because choice matters to all of us. But Los Gatos families today are losing their ability to choose at a time when they need it most. With the Hicks Road development, the North 40 proposal, and other projects, the fact is, more families with kids will be coming to Los Gatos. If old CUPs like Hillbrook's are not updated, the burden for educating those children will fall squarely on the public schools. Given that Hillbrook's proposal has been shown to have no impact, and yet there is this much commotion about it, I am concerned that other private schools will never attempt a CUP update, and our public schools will suffer for it. By holding Hillbrook to an enrollment number set back in 1987, while public schools have added hundreds of children in recent years, the town is missing an important opportunity to provide adequate educational choice to the citizens of Los Gatos. We asked the Planning Commission to approve our CUP as recommended by staff. This proposal is honest, modest, and it is data-driven. Hillbrook is a school. It is a Los Gatos school. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hammers. Before you leave, can you give me attribution for your chart up there?
Absolutely. The numbers from the public school come from the school district, and the numbers from the private schools come from their individual CUPs and often their websites.
And did you compile these numbers yourself?
Yes, with help from my husband.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mulcahy, who's going to be followed by Mr. Fox, who's going to be followed by Ann Skeet.
Good evening. My name is Michael Mulcahy, nine-year Hillbrook trustee. I've worked on many CUPs, and I often see applicants vilified by opponents, assuming it's how to get your attention. Unfortunately, Hillbrook is caught in the perfect storm. A hot economy with soaring housing prices, vacant car dealerships under construction, a regional draw downtown with restaurants, bars, and retail, and overstuffed public schools with no busing, leading to terrible traffic from every in, out, and pass-through of Los Gatos. We're caught in the eye of the town problem, a county-wide issue. We've been at this for four years, steadfast and professional, and we've offered a proactive plan for controlled growth. Your job would be much less painful if all applicants worked at like Hillbrook to pre-medicate or be as open to chip away at fundamental property rights. But Hillbrook has been admonished by antagonists. Our board chair rudely chastised, and our head of school called a liar. Now opponents want to run out the clock to push us to a newly seated city council that they think will be willing to work to shutter our school. By submitting reams of paperwork, dramatic public testimony about screeching children, unsafe parents, and now Hillbrook is not really made of their people. Please don't fear their political stronghold to allow a tilted playing field. Hillbrook itself represents hundreds, if not thousands, of Los Gatos voters. It's been right here for almost 80 years. Despite the static, we've worked hard to find solutions. We added shuttles in the late afternoon to specifically address neighbors' concerns, partnered with safe routes to schools, employed a traffic monitor at Marchmont and Highlow to help all children, not just Hillbrook, then added more shuttles to take families off the road. Our efforts have worked, as reflected in the EIR and staff report. Hillbrook traffic has decreased, and the school has embraced a new normal. But just when the town proves it, those against Hillbrook shift the focus to how and when we use our campus. We've already given up freedoms enjoyed by most schools. We operate under one of the strictest CUPs around. Under the current CUP, after-school enrichment, school plays, tournaments, parent volunteers, and daycare is already limited, essential elements of what it is to be a school. And they want more. Hillbrook is basically empty on weekends. School gates shut nearly every night around 6:00. We're basically limited to our campus Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00, with few exceptions. Staff's all-day count is simple. Now with an all-day count, peak times, and a daily cap, let Hillbrook decide how to operate within the count or be faced with clear, heavy penalties, which we have agreed to do all along and expanded on since our last hearing. We've listened, been accountable, and done right by this process. We ask the Planning Commission to approve our refined CUP tonight as recommended by town staff, including our latest concessions. Our proposal is honest, modest, and driven. Hillbrook is a school, a Los Gatos school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcahy. Any questions for the speakers? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir. Now we're going to call Eric Fox. Behind Mr. Fox will be Ms. Skeet. Behind her will be Vlado Herman, and then Greg Blum. So if you could just get ready. Maybe Ms. Savage could turn that around, or you can turn that around for us. Before you begin, I just want to mention again to anyone who's sitting outside that there are seats here. You're welcome to come forward and take a seat. I'm looking at them closer to the front of the room. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Please begin.
My name is Eric Fox. I'm a Los Gatos resident and a Hillbrook trustee, and I'm here tonight to discuss why an all-day traffic count of 480 exiting cars or 960 daily trips is reasonable and practical. We've pre-mitigated to demonstrate our plan's effectiveness. In 2001, Hillbrook's average daily trip count was 1,400 cars per day or 700 exiting cars. The CUP that was put in place in 2001 called for a maximum of 165 exiting cars during peak periods. Hillbrook has proposed in its new CUP two metrics to constrain traffic. One, reduce the peak period limit to 150 exiting cars, 10% below current levels. Two, limit the average daily trip count to 960, 31% below 2001 levels. 960 reduces traffic and is far below industry-accepted measures for appropriate traffic levels. Per the tire method, traffic below 1,114 cars would have no impact on the neighborhood. Hillbrook's proposal of 960 trips is more than 15% below either tire or the IT standard for private schools. It is significantly below any other school in Los Gatos and is dramatically below the traffic levels from a decade ago. There are four distinct time periods within a normal school day. First, at morning peak, 7:30 to 8:30, students arrive at school. In 2001, the baseline for the EIR, this arrival hour, saw about 120 exiting cars. Since then, through an aggressive TDM plan, the number has dropped to below 90. Continued mitigation will allow the school to keep its peak morning traffic the same as in 2011. Second, the middle of the day, 8:30 to 2:30, is a long stretch of time and unpredictable in terms of usage. This time period allows basics like food to be delivered, but what is critical to our operations are parental visits to campus that every elementary school enjoys, such as parent participation in the classroom or even a doctor's appointment. Over six hours, we currently have about 100 exiting cars, approximately one car every two minutes. We expect with 99 additional students, this will rise to 120 cars over six hours. Parent involvement is critical to our culture and our curriculum, and restricting this activity in any way is harming our school. The third period, the PM peak, is basically identical to the morning peak. Some kids stay on campus for programs, including daycare and academic or athletic activities. These kids are on campus for normal school activities that without which a school is not a school any longer. The final time slot is 3:45 to 6:00. During this period, remaining students and 80 employees leave the campus. We expect 120 cars over two and a quarter hours. Our sum total is 480 exiting cars or 960 total. These figures are not haphazard or random or established with the intention of setting a bar that is artificially high. The restrictions in our car counts are designed to be workable for the school operationally, where we retain our culture and provide appropriate opportunities for students and families. Our proposed daily limit is 15% below industry targets, well below noticeably thresholds, and 31% below 2001 levels.
Thank you, sir.
Three minutes.
You finished right on time. So you're, you're probably going to anticipate this question, but I need to know how that chart was compiled. Who did it? How it was compiled? Where did it come from?
It's a board-developed chart. I think the best, when you direct the questions towards Mark and Chuck, I think they're going to be the best people to answer the detail.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, and, yes, certainly. So Vice Chair Birch has asked for a copy of it, and I know Ms. Savage can take care of that. Ms. Savage, do you mind just writing across the top that it is generated from the board? Any other questions for Mr. Fox? Seeing none? All right, again, there's plenty of room down front for anyone who would like to join us. All right. Ms. Skeet, correct? All right, please begin.
Hi, my name is Ann Skeet, and my children, Emma and John, attend Hillbrook. We have been a part of the school community for nine years and are proud to say that John was the first four-year-old who ever hopped a Hillbrook shuttle to school on his very first day of junior kindergarten, the year they were introduced, after carpooling since Emma started school when she was in kindergarten. The additional support the school has provided for bringing our kids to and from campus has changed our lives as parents in a household where we both work outside the home. It has changed the lives of our kids who now experience their own community on the bus. It has strengthened our connection to parents we live near as we visit at the bus stop, and allowed the school to live its values by teaching our children how to be respectful and part of their neighborhood. All Los Gatos schools are located in neighborhoods, and in that way, Hillbrook is no different. How we are different is in the way we have reduced our car traffic substantially. We have accepted that traffic is an issue we must all deal with, and we have done all that we can to mitigate it. It would be wonderful to see other Los Gatos schools take measures to do the same. I feel this even more strongly after hearing a speaker last week describe the caravan he leads every day from Marchmont to take his child to the high school. That caravan obviously impacts the neighborhoods he drives through, a situation that could be easily alleviated by carpooling. You have heard all the steps Hillbrook has taken to reduce traffic on Marchmont, and certainly as a result, we do have the two years of documented traffic improvement the neighbors have asked to see. I'll be honest, on some days, it feels like a lot of hoops we're jumping through. The days my kids miss the bus, or my third grader calls me to tell me he is afraid to try a new bus route for after-school activities because he fears he will not know where to get off. I explain to him then and tell myself daily that we do our part to keep peace in the neighborhood. We should all do our part. Yet it's evident that we're not yet at a peace point, are we? So I ask myself why that is. Why haven't all these changes made a difference to the group of nearby neighbors who live closest? Of course, the honest answer is, I don't know. I suspect the issue is not really the traffic. I asked one neighbor, a former university provost, faced with town and gown issues himself while leading Santa Clara University's growth period, what he thought the resolution should be. This was after a meeting here in council where it was determined the school was not in violation of the CUP. He told me that night that the school should move. So perhaps some neighbors would really like to see the school simply go away. Perhaps Marchmont neighbors feel unfairly treated as these issues are in their front yards, but do not feel the pain is equally shared by Ann Arbor neighbors. Or perhaps too much trust has been eroded over time for faith to be restored. I would offer that the only way to rebuild trust- I would offer that the only way to rebuild trust is to give it a chance to take hold, agree to reasonable terms and consequences, and follow through. This seems like the best example we could set for our children and one another. Thanks to Hillbrook's extensive efforts. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Thank you. Any questions for our speaker? Seeing none? Vlado Herman, followed by Greg Blum, followed by Mina Nathan.
Good evening, Chair Smith, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. My name is Vlado Herman. I am currently a member of Hillbrook's Board of Trustees, a Hillbrook parent, and a tenured resident of Los Gatos' Almond Grove District. But I am most proud and honored to serve as an assistant coach on the Los Gatos United Orcas. And united, I never took that really seriously. What did that mean? Our team is composed of every six-year-olds from every private school and every public school, and, boy, they play hard and they play well, and none of that stuff matters to them. They just love living in this town.
Don't worry, that is not your time. We are having...
I'm just getting started.
Wait, I was going to say, we're on a little... Oh, we got it now. Okay. So it's not the equipment, it's the operator of the equipment. So...
Time check. That's a little too... I think you should reset that.
Okay. All right.
A few of the neighbors mentioned moving to the area in the early seventies. This was a period that my family and I immigrated from Eastern Europe seeking religious and economic opportunity to reach our full potential. This town is even more beautiful today than it was the first time I saw it forty years ago as a young child. And I am proud and humbled to be able to reside and raise my two children here. We live right in front of Bachman Park and open our neighborhood to hundreds of kids and parents on Halloween. Many kids from Hillbrook, many from the Marchmont area. We love it. We give out candy. I hope they all come back this year. The sounds from the park hit a different pitch than they did ten years ago, but I'm quite sure that it was only due to changes in my personal sensory processing versus any external factor, which probably is very akin to the philosophical question we raised earlier. Under Hillbrook's existing CUP, the only enforcement, the sole enforcement the town has, is an audit which is manually conducted twice a year to determine Hillbrook's compliance with one hundred and sixty-five AM and PM outbound vehicle limits. That's it. If I'm a neighbor, I would want many more sets of controls. Through our modified CUP application, we're proposing four sets of controls to ensure Hillbrook's compliance. These controls are critical to ensure that we minimize traffic within the Hillbrook neighborhood. In fact, there is no other school or business within Los Gatos that would have such a stringent set of controls in place to monitor their CUP. The first control is to limit both average total vehicle trips during the AM/PM and also total daily vehicle trips during school days, in addition to what Christine Kennedy proposed tonight, a daily max limit. We're proposing that the town monitor these limits through data collected from our below concrete sensors, which we installed last year. This raw data will be provided directly to an independent third-party vendor hired by the town, who will independently determine compliance, limiting our ability to manipulate this data in any way. The second control is the implementation of a mandatory TDM program. It is mandatory. I put my kids on the bus every morning. I have a six-year-old and an eight-year-old at the bus that halts. It's a full bus. I encourage all of you to come tomorrow morning with me. I would love to show you inside that bus. From the outside, it is hard to see. It's tinted windows, high seats, six-year-olds, you can barely see them, but they're safely strapped, and there are seat belts in there. I put them on the bus, they want to be on the bus. It's part of the social experience, and we help the town limit traffic. I live by St. Mary's. This is very important to me personally. You've heard last week that Hillbrook will happily pay its way out of noncompliance by way of these penalties. These statements are simply false and irresponsible.
All right, Mr. Herman, you know I have to stop you, okay?
I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I have a fiduciary duty. We would never use penalties. These parents would never accept it.
All right, so...
May off this board.
So now, don't leave...
Thank you. Please approve our modified CUP.
Don't leave the podium. So I just want to go back to the beginning because we had some technical difficulties. So you have two children, and I've just learned that you put them on the bus. Which bus stop do you use?
It's the former Hobie's, currently Holtz Restaurant.
So you go to Holtz. And do you drive them there, walk them there? What do you do?
I've really been trying to get them to walk. It's tough. We're always late in the morning, so I drive from Bachman Park neighborhood right down the street, passing many kids who are walking to the bus.
And then, where is the bus on the Holtz property? Is it in the back or on the side?
It's on the parking lot between Highway Nine and Bachman.
So is it...
It's right by the restaurant that just, Manresa, right behind Manresa.
Okay, so it's on the side, rather than...
It's within the parking lot.
Yes, right. That's what I was trying to determine. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Herman? Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we're going to hear from Greg Blum, and then Roman Dmitrov, Dmitrov, and then Sandy Decker. Mr. Blum, you're going to show us something on the screen?
Yes.
All right.
I'm going to talk first, and then I'll put a screen up here.
Now, wait just a second, because we want to make sure we get our technical, the expertise of Mr. Paulson here. You're all set? All right. Okay.
So hi, my name's Greg Blum. I live at 120 Stony Brook. Been there for three years, but my wife's family has lived in the home for sixty years, so have been going around the home for quite some time. Two children at Blossom Hill School. Wanted to talk a little bit about the location and, you know, why I think there's such a lightning rod here with the residents versus the school. You look at the school, and we know it's only accessed today by one road, which is essentially a court. We took a look at all other schools, and so did staff, and essentially, there is no other school that has that situation anywhere that we could see. We looked at all the private schools in Los Gatos, and in the packet that has just been passed out to you, there's Google Maps of all of them, showing that, as with most schools, they typically have multiple access roads, multiple pedestrian gates, so they can get in through pedestrian gates or in the parking lots, and are typically within one block, maybe two, from major thoroughfare street. Definitely not the case for what we have at Hillbrook. Therefore, because of that, any increase in enrollment at Hillbrook impacts that neighborhood, this neighborhood, much more. There is not the thoroughfares around it to support it. There are, however, I think, some solutions that can be looked at to help the traffic. I'm going to go into that in a minute. Before I do, I wanted to talk quickly about the weekend use. The weekend use has also been an issue for a lot of the neighbors immediately around, and the current staff proposal would allow both Saturday and Sunday use, which today that's not the case. The list includes an open house volleyball tournament, basketball tournament, and then employee access. The neighbors around would basically like to say that we do not want to have things such as tournaments that do bring in a lot of outside traffic, unless there was some very, very... The way tournaments go with all the different times of games, it'd be very difficult to control, and not on Sundays. So to try to end them only on Saturdays and by three PM, and our preference is no sport tournaments whatsoever, so just like open houses and other specific events. There's a lot of reasons that we've given for specific violations that have happened in the CUP. I know this says there hasn't been, but there has been examples that the neighbors have documented, so there is a trust issue there as well. I've documented it. What I wanted to focus on for the last bit here, thirty seconds, is an actual, let me flip this up, an actual solution. And yes, it's at Ann Arbor, but it isn't just Ann Arbor. We're proposing that the town can do some things. What this shows is the red is where there are no sidewalks today going to Hillbrook. The green, which on the screen up here looks kind of black, are where there are sidewalks today. And if you see there, what we could do is at...
So I have to stop you. I'm sorry to say that, but in fairness to everyone, I do need to stop you, Mr. Blum. But you have passed out this, the attachments, and I'm just looking for, I don't see that... Oh, here we go. It's on page one, two, three of your packet. So thank you. So we will take a look at that.
Shows where you could add a crosswalk over by Ann Arbor.
Not going to talk about that. Okay. Please, thank you. And just for everyone, you know, this is just a matter of fairness, that we need to cut off people at three minutes, so we want everyone to have an equal opportunity. So we are now going to hear from Mr. Dmitrov, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
No, you did good.
And then Sandy Decker, and then Joe Connolly.
Good evening, Ms. Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. My name is Roman Dmitrov, and I'm a local resident and a Hillbrook parent.
And pull that microphone right close to you there.
I have a first grader, and he is now the thirteen in Hillbrook, and I have a young girl, and she's going to be in JK next fall. And I went through all my points, and a lot of them have been raised. I just want to focus on maybe two or three of them. We have a relatively new head of school, and he's been doing great things to improve traffic, and I know that a lot of things happened in the past, but I think under Mr. Silva's leadership, things have improved a lot. My kid has taken the bus for the last three years almost every day. I have to confess, for since starting of school this year, in August and September, I've been to school three or four times. First day of school, teacher-parents conference, and dentist's appointment, and I hope that the principal is not going to call me because my kid is doing good and not because to reduce traffic on Marchmont. I'm also a coach, just like Vlado, on a local school, and we actually have played on every single field, including Stratford and Mulberry, and Hillbrook is the only school where we don't play on their field, and we play almost every Friday and Saturday. And the other thing, and I'm proud to say this, probably the only point nobody else has mentioned, is people always complain that we have about forty percent of kids who are not local. And I have to say, we have great teachers. I'm very thankful that we have great teachers at Hillbrook, and a common benefit to teachers is that they can have their kids at a private school. And that's why we have a lot of kids who are not local, because not everyone can afford to live in Los Gatos, and because many great teachers don't live in Los Gatos. So is Hillbrook a business or a school? I don't know. I think it's a school, but I have to say that who benefits the most are the students in Hillbrook, and it's a great school, and I fully support the Hillbrook petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Ms. Decker? Ms. Decker will be followed by Joe Connolly, who will be followed by Lofty Hersey.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Sandy Decker, and I can't believe that the citizens of our town have had to fill these chambers yet again because they are protecting themselves from another fatally flawed EIR. The problem is too painfully obvious to be ignored. In the last eighteen months, we've seen the EIR for Albright end up in court. The EIR for the North Forty rescinded because it failed to address some of the most damaging impacts, and now Hillbrook with an EIR that lacks sufficient enough information to certify. For example, the Hillbrook EIR uses a study called TIRE, which has been talked about tonight, to look at average daily trips. TIRE states that to remain a moderate-range local residential street, it has to be from nine to eight hundred and ninety daily trips. It then comments in very bold letters that any more than eight hundred and ninety average daily trips will significantly impair a residential environment. Then, without noticing the inconsistency, the EIR supports Hillbrook's new condition, which asks for an average of nine hundred and sixty. The EIR is based on only eight days of counts, four in two thousand and eleven and four in two thousand and thirteen. The EIR states that these eight days of data show that the TDM, which is the Traffic Demand Management Plan, which has been dealt with, is working. However, the TDM data tables show the traffic is increasing, not decreasing, and you've seen all of these. They're in those stacks of books, stacks of paper you have. The most damaging omission, I feel, is that the EIR makes no mention of the fact that there is a base of residential traffic in this area before you even add the school impact. The neighborhood around Hillbrook and the community in general are not served by an EIR that draws concrete conclusions based on very flimsy data. I was a council member when the existing CUP went into effect in two thousand and one. The student cap, the traffic restrictions, the compliance measures that were put in place then were to mitigate the exact impacts that you're dealing with now, thirteen years later. We closed Ann Arbor at the time because we believed that the school would honor its promises and impact could be contained without saturating the whole area. It wasn't long before the CUP was violated. Now, Planning Commissioners, you've been asked to approve another ninety-nine students, thirty percent increase and thirty percent increase in impacts, justified by a flawed EIR. Please reject this EIR and create a new CUP that will protect the people of Marchmont area and allow them to enjoy something close to the neighborhood environment we all want and deserve in Los Gatos.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Mr. Connolly? I'm sorry, Ms. Decker. Ms. Talisfor has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am?
So in two thousand and one, the cap was at three fifteen. What was... Do you remember what the enrollment was prior to that? Did you... Were they asking for increased enrollment at that time?
No, that was the CUP. The CUP then became modified over thirteen years, and additions have been made, various... With no... The problem here is that there has never really been adequate monitoring or mitigation of enforcement. And again, you're facing the same thing. There's no mandatory on anything. Tom O'Donnell has said over and over, let's take a real good look at this. You need to look at real caps, then you look at real monitoring, then you look at real enforcement. So you have dealt with an impacted neighborhood with an awful lot of, I think, very vague and unenforceable data. That's why I would like to see you look at some kind of a CUP that starts now and deals with the people that live there to start with. So that's where we were, and I will tell you that that CUP didn't take long before it was violated.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Any further questions? Seeing none? Mr. Connolly, Lofty Hersey, followed by Monica Hersey.
Good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners. Thank you for your service, and particularly your stamina tonight. My name is Joe Connolly. I've been in education for the last thirty-two years, most recently as the middle school head at Hillbrook, and this past July, until this past July, when I became the Director of Institutional Advancement. In my current role, I oversee admissions and enrollment, transportation, after-school and summer programs, marketing and communications, and development. Over the last few years, Hillbrook has had to turn away a number of Los Gatos families simply because the enrollment cap will not allow us to admit them. Our increases in applications from Los Gatos residents continue to rise. Allowing us to increase enrollment will not only benefit the town by helping to alleviate the overcrowding in our public schools, it will also benefit the daily educational experience of middle school students. Project Cornerstone works with the YMCA of Silicon Valley to help build a community where teens can thrive. Fisher Middle School has worked with Project Cornerstone to train teachers and staff on the Search Institute's developmental assets. And according to the Developmental Assets website, "The more developmental assets young people acquire, the better their chances of succeeding in school and becoming happy, healthy, and contributing members to their communities and society." In two thousand and eleven, Fisher Middle School was recognized by Project Cornerstone for the good work they do with the assets. Allowing Hillbrook to increase enrollment in the middle school will give us the ability to have a greater impact on as many as eleven of the forty-one research-based developmental assets. The type of assets we will be able to give our students include increasing our ability to serve others outside of school and outside of the community, giving students a more robust school music program, and a more robust theater program, and a sports program that will have enough athletes to actually compete. It will allow students to be more involved in clubs and other school organizations during the regular school day. We will also be able to provide a more engaging learning environment by having more than seven to eight students in a classroom. In addition to providing a greater impact to the developmental assets, we will also give Hillbrook students the ability to interact socially in ways that are best for adolescents. And Hillbrook's students currently go to school with the same thirty-plus students starting in kindergarten through eighth grade. At most schools, it's common for sixth graders to move into middle school with new students coming from other schools, and when this happens, the positive social dynamics change dramatically. dramatically. It's especially important for middle school students who see themselves as struggling to fit in. We've listened, been accountable, and done right by this process. We ask the planning commission to approve our refined CUP as recommended by town staff, including our latest concessions. Our proposal is honest, modest, and data-driven.
All right. So, Mr. Connolly, we're going to stop you there, and I think we're going to have a few questions for you. I have some myself, but I will defer to my fellow commissioners first. Vice Chair Birch.
Hi. I'd like to talk a little bit about the applications that you get. Can you tell me approximately how many applications you get per year?
I can, yes. I can tell you that last year, are you looking for overall applications or applications from Los Gatos residents?
Both.
Okay. So, last year, our overall applications were 100 and, this is off the top of my head, I didn't write these down. I think 122 Los Gatos residents. We had 34 applicants. We had to turn 10 away. We had 44 express interest. 10 actually didn't apply when they realized that the likelihood of them being able to get in was pretty slim.
And the 10, you're saying, are from the 34, the Los Gatos, and out of 122 total?
122 total last year. 34 from Los Gatos.
Okay. How many overall did you accept last year?
50, I think. I'm sorry. I've got it written down. I can get those numbers.
It's okay. Approximately is just fine. And can I ask one other?
Yes, please.
And then, just one other question for you, is you mentioned that having more students would assist in various activities, and one of them was serving the community. And I'd like to know, now, currently with your enrollment, what do your students do to help serve the community?
Sure. Great question. And grades, first of all, in every grade, each grade has a service project, if you will, that they're involved in. In grades seven and eight particularly, we actually go out into the community approximately every five to six weeks. Nursing homes, Alzheimer's facilities, hospitals, places like that, serving. Obviously, we'll be able to do much more of that. And the interaction between the students is important as well.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
We have Commissioner Erickson, who will be followed by Commissioner Talisfor, who will be followed by Commissioner Sayak.
I have a simple question. So, if I understood correctly, you're responsible for admissions, after-school programs, and summer programs? Is that?
That's correct. Among many other things.
Yeah. I assume part of responsibility, also fundraising, given your title. But, so, I'll have a series of questions when we get to the end of the public portion where the applicant comes back. Some of those will be related to enrollment. Some of those will be related to after-school programs. Some of them will be related to summer programs. So, I don't intend to ask them now, but would ask you to, if you would, it might be helpful for you to be available at that point in time.
Certainly.
Later this evening or early tomorrow morning when we get to it.
Certainly. I'm also quite certain Mr. Silver will be able to answer those questions. But I will be here. Thank you.
So, you're not going anyplace, right? Okay. All right. So, we want to know that. All right. So, then, we were going to hear from Commissioner Talisfor, then Commissioner Sayak.
Right. I'm not sure what questions you were going to put on hold, Commissioner. So, I hope if I maybe ask the ones you wanted to at the end, you can tell me no or yes. Okay.
I'd always defer to you, Commissioner Talisfor, anyway.
So, you are the program's manager, right? And you could answer questions for me and for the commission about the after-school activities, such as, if you could describe them to us a little more. And I'm wondering about the volleyball and the basketball tournament. And with the addition of the students at 99, is there a plan to increase these tournaments or and physical, physical activity, tournaments, you know, maybe lacrosse or soccer or another one that I can't think of?
Sure. So, as I understand it, there are two questions. One is having to do with the tournaments, and the other is having to do with whether or not we have a plan.
If you could give us the details about times, days, months?
Certainly. So, as far as the tournaments are concerned, as you may or may not know, Hillbrook had a history of hosting a volleyball tournament and a basketball tournament that goes back years and years and years. And then, the town council made a decision to take that away when we met in March, I believe that was. And so, we're simply asking for the ability to return the history of those tournaments. We have no intention of increasing...
But the history of those tournaments is, is it one weekend a month? Is it one long weekend?
Yeah. Yes, yes. So, it runs one weekend for the volleyball tournament and one weekend for the basketball tournament. That's it.
Saturday, Sunday?
I believe we're asking for Sundays. The schedule is, you know, we can do a lot of things with the schedule.
Okay. It's just one of those every?
One every year.
Okay. And then, so, how about adding any additional physical tournament activities?
We have no intention of adding any additional tournaments. At this point, we're, have no intention to add any additional support, any additional sports. We'd like to be able to have more students so that we can, for instance, a volleyball team needs a minimum of six students. And, you know, sometimes, one of the reasons, for instance, we have fifth graders playing is so that we can have a fifth and sixth grade team to have enough students to make sure that, you know, there's enough for a team. If you have a softball team, for instance, you need a minimum of nine players.
Can you refresh my memory, too? Is your middle school considered seven, eight, or is it six, seven, eight?
So, for the purposes of the conditional use permit, the middle school is considered six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Thank you. And then, your summer activities, is that's also something that you are in charge of?
So, I am Nicole's, Nicole Garbalik's supervisor, who oversees the summer activities. So, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Commissioner Sayak?
I'll save the majority of my questions for afterwards. But if you could, just in anticipation, Commissioner Burke had asked you about last year's enrollment. Could you actually, over the next course of hours, over the past eight years? Because we are, if one of the issues is increasing enrollment at Los Gatos schools, if you can show me the patterns of what, how, the number of applications you have been getting over the past eight years, and how many of those are Los Gatos, that would be useful.
Yeah. I'd love to be able to give you the ones from Los Gatos. What I discovered in the last couple of days is that by law, we are required to destroy the records of all those applications after a certain period of time. So, we only have last year's. We didn't track them for Los Gatos. In other words, we didn't get to that level.
Okay.
In other words, if somebody applies to us and gives us all that confidential information, we can't, we can't be keeping them in our, you know, indefinitely in our records.
Right. But I'm not asking for, I'm just asking for, in general.
Overall, yes.
You're saying, overall, you do not have those records?
No. Overall, I have overall records. I don't, I don't have specifically where they...
Sure. But you don't have them by community?
Correct.
Okay. Second one, you mentioned that your students participate in community activities. How do you define your community? And how do you have your students define it?
Yeah. It's a good, real good question. Our community is defined in so many different ways. There's the Hillbrook community. There's the Los Gatos community. There's the greater Silicon Valley community, which we're talking about all the time. There's, you know, the state of California, and it even extends to, you know, we, I was fortunate enough to be a part of a group, taking a group of students to China last year to experience what it's like to be a part of a world community. And so, when we're talking about service specifically, we provide service through our sixth graders. They do a book drive where we've actually helped to build two libraries in different African countries. And so, in that case, it would be, it would extend to different parts of the world. So, it really depends on the individual project. Most of our seventh and eighth grade service activities are, in fact, all of our seventh and eighth grade service activities that are through our service, we have, we have a person on campus who's our service coordinator, are local, so that they were then a short driving distance.
All right. So, I have a couple of questions for you, and I'm glad you're here, because one of my questions had to do with volunteers. And just by way of disclosure, I myself am very involved with Project Cornerstone and an ABC Reader for Dave's Avenue School. And sometimes, when the day comes for me to read and I have to sign in as a volunteer, I'm the 34th volunteer at 8:35 in the morning. So, that means that there's 33 other parents or grandparents, in my case, ahead of me. So, I'm thinking about the traffic, and I'm thinking about commitment to Project Cornerstone, and I'm thinking about ABC Readers, and it brings me to parent volunteers. So, I'm wondering if you can share with me on a daily basis how many parent volunteers, on average, you think is optimum, and then how many you have that a school has?
So, if I could start by answering that question by saying that we work very closely with our version of PTA, which is the Hillbrook School Parent Council. And each, each grade has room parents. Those room parents work very closely with the teachers to help determine exactly how many volunteers are needed, you know, for things like reading. And then, there are signup forms and things like that. We deliberately make an attempt to balance the opportunity for parents to come on campus and to not overdo what we're seeing on campus in terms of the number of people coming in. I could, if I, we have a sign-in sheet. I could look at that and give you the answer. Does anybody have a guess?
I think that chart would be quite helpful.
Okay. There's a chart here that'll be helpful of it.
Well, and I asked the question in a, in perhaps a similar way, but not the exact question the day that we were there for the count, because I am, I understand the need and the want for parent volunteers or volunteers, whatever, resources. So, I'm wondering how that adds to your traffic count.
Sure. So, it's, if you look at, if you look at the chart here, the midday, the midday piece accounts for things like parent volunteers, parents having to pick up sick children, parents taking children to orthodontist appointments and things like that. So, we've built in time for that. I can tell you that in, parent volunteers at the middle school is minimal to almost nonexistent. It's primarily in the lower school. And it may be a few, few parents per grade level each day. So, if I were to guess.
So, you know what? We cannot have Mr. Silver come up. So, I'm just telling you, we're going to focus just on you, okay?
Yeah. I'm trying to answer the best I can.
Right. He can make a note, and then, when he, when the applicant gets a chance.
Sure.
So, okay. So, I understand that the 120 includes unusual trips. Am I looking at that correctly? Is it 120 in midday?
So, this is the, the chart that Mr. Fox put up describing the 480, how we get to the 480. And so, yes, the midday is between eight, excuse me, between 8:30 and 2:30, and that's a total of 120.
All right. So, then, my question to you, as the person who looks at applications as well, when we talk about an increase of 99 students, does that mean that next year, 99 students show up? Or does that mean, because you're looking to fill certain grades, which is what I understand, you will fill them until you get to the 92, which could be three years, five years, two years? Am I correct in assuming that this is not 99 tomorrow or the day after or whatever?
Yes, you're correct. I would expect it would take...
And so, for your planning purposes, what do you, what do you envision as the step into the 99?
So...
I'm sure you're doing some budgeting around that issue, so you must have a number.
Yeah. So, candidly, my office hasn't even gotten that far yet. I would expect that we would focus on our two entry points to begin with, which is kindergarten and sixth grade in that first year, and then look for other grades where we happen to be particularly low. So, for instance, first grade, we have a particularly low number of students in first grade right now. We would, if we were fortunate enough to get enough applicants to help fill that first grade, so that, so that we could start moving in that direction, that's what we'd do.
All right. So, we've also given a heads up to Mr. Silver that we probably will come back to that issue. Are there any other questions for Mr. Connolly? Thank you, sir, for the time that you've been up here. And our next speaker is going to be Lofty Hersey, followed by Monica Hersey, followed by Melanie Piziali.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Lofty Hersey. I live in Los Gatos on 185 Long Meadow Drive. So, I'm here today because I want to explain why we moved to Los Gatos. So, we moved to Los Gatos in 2011 because we love the quality of life that it gave us. So, our backyard is a fence against Hillbrook. When we bought our house, we knew exactly what we were getting into, and having kids' noise did not bother us at all. So, I want to bring your attention to the CUP changes and then the effect of noise this might have on our property. So, the existing CUP right now imposes some limits around the number of external folks that can come and events on the weekends, on the evenings, and during the summer. I would like for you to, to look at this CUP as it relates to the noise and the activities around that, for the sake of all the neighbors that are living around us. I think we share all the same concern, and make sure that we have some framework around the number of events and who the attendees can be, the noise level, put some, somehow some monitoring in place so that we can have some sort of accountability around that, and of course, some mitigation that need to be taken if this is not respected. Now, you might say that, hey, you know, we could build a wall. A wall, as you know aesthetically, is not a great thing. There's a study that was done in Canada around the devaluation of a property when you have a wall. And I would encourage you to try to research some study that has been done in the US around the value that you can lose on your property. The study is from 2007, and it says that 6% to 15% of the value of the home can be lost if you have a wall being built. On a $2.5 million home, that's pretty significant. So, there's also an impact, a financial impact that goes above and beyond just the, the traffic that was mentioned and other nuisance potentially. At last, I would like to say that I'm a little confused around the value that this can bring to the Los Gatos residents, not on the educational side, but what are the other things that this will bring to the, to the community? It looks like the surrounding community is pretty consistent in many ways, at least the one that is really next to, to the school and bordering it. And love, as you, you decide on your decision, to be clear around that. That'd be really helpful for the residents living there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don't go away until we're, we're going to ask you some questions. Vice Chair Birch?
I'm sorry. I just missed when you said, in the study that you read, the percentage of devalue of a home with a wall. What was that percentage?
I believe it was 6% to 15%.
6%, thank you.
So, I have a question for you about the noise. And so, does, I know about the homes on Long Meadows. So, do you back up to a playground or the playing fields? I know you have some noise now, but I know your concern is additional events. So, I'm just trying to picture that.
Right. So, I believe I am next to the, the lower grades of the school. There's a playground. There is a noise, and the noise is already above the city limit of 55 decibel. But I believe that we're okay with that, because we, when we bought the house, we knew this was, this was there. The biggest concern is really in the evenings and on the weekends and in the summer. So, moving, having moved from Seattle, we appreciate the nice weather here, and would like to spend more time in the backyard in the evening. And having a bunch of adults speaking, it's not the same as having kids making noises. So, kids can, can be, you know, more like white noise and then some charm to it. But when you have adults laughing and talking, it's different. You can start listening to conversation. It's really distracting, and then preventing, preventing us from being able to relax and enjoying the backyard.
So, just to be sure I understand you. So, the children noise is not your issue. Your issue is that the parents, grandparents, whatever, the adults that would also be attending these events and using those facilities are what you would, in the evenings and weekends, is what you find?
Yes. So, the focus is not so much during the day. It's really on the, the weekends and in the evenings.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any further questions?
Thank you.
None. Thank you. Now, we're going to hear from Monica Hersey.
She's my wife, and I just spoke for her together. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. So, then, Melanie Piziali. And I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Oh, that was perfect, Piziali. First of all, my name's Melanie Piziali, and I live on Topping Way, and I'm happy to... And I'm happy to finally be able to speak for myself as a Topping Way resident. I've been lumped in in some generalizations tonight, so I'm happy to be speaking for myself and my viewpoint. I live on Topping Way with my husband and our two daughters, who both attend Hillbrook School. We moved into our home eight years ago and love our neighborhood. Hillbrook is a similar community. I either walk or bike with my daughters to school each and every morning, and the girls either walk with home or take the shuttle. I see firsthand the traffic that flows through the Hillbrook neighborhood, my neighborhood. And I'm so impressed with what Hillbrook is doing to improve the situation on the roads. Not only are our drivers taking more precautions behind the wheel, there are so many new walkers, bikers, scooter riders who are joining us on the journey, making the roads less crowded and safer for all. Moms and dads are enjoying the walks with their children and friends, and our culture is changing as a result. Hillbrook shuttles get better and more popular every year. Now with the 305 shuttle, I can get my girls to their 330 after-school activities without driving to campus. Hillbrook noticed and discovered other parents were in the same boat, driving even when they didn't want to, in order to make it to after-school activities. I mention this because I think it shows how the shuttle system is continually evolving to meet our needs, how the school and its families are committed to reducing our impact on the neighborhood and environment. We are doing more than any other school, so you can imagine, it doesn't feel good when my neighbors won't even acknowledge our efforts. Hillbrook's proposal has hard data behind it and hard numbers the school must meet. The notion that this somehow isn't good enough or can't be trusted is absurd. I'm not a politician. In fact, you can see, I'm quite nervous standing up here and very uncomfortable. But you know what's worse? Hearing lies about our school and not standing up and speaking the truth. There are no weekend activities at school. We have no P.A. system. Traffic isn't worse than ever, it's even better than ever. This isn't about money, it's about educating children. I'm a caring parent at a school full of caring parents. We are no different than other parents at any other school in town, except that we are working day, every day to take cars off the road. It's very disheartening that no matter what we do, we cannot please our opponents. The negativity and vitriol we've heard about our school, our families, and even our children is unfair and uncalled for. I'm not at war with my neighbors. I don't begrudge them when they drive by me in the streets on their way to school. We're all in this together, and we should be putting children first. My hope is the facts in this case will speak for themselves, that Hillbrook's fair and modest proposal will be approved, and our school can continue our efforts to educate our children while taking care of the neighborhood. And I want to add, I have never been invited to any of these wild evening activities or weekend activities at the school, and I'm very disappointed. I guess I missed the invitation. I've never heard of any, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for our speaker? Seeing none. Okay, folks, we are going to take another break, and we are going to do it for two reasons. One, because our very capable person who handles our sound and the television needs to come in and check the batteries on our microphones because he's concerned that they are running down. So he's going to do that, and so you'll see him here. And then we'll take a seventh inning stretch. So we'll be back here in 10 minutes. Feel free to come in down front. There's plenty of empty seats. All right. Okay, we're going to continue with the public testimony, and we're going to call Paul Reed, Bianca Grutter, and Doug Kernan.
My name's Paul Reed. My family and I have lived at 156 Robin Way for the last 16 years. Our daughter is now a graduate from college, which she went to Blossom, Blossom Hill. I wanted to mention that laws, rules, and conditions are only as good as the enforcement of them. It's unrealistic and unfair to expect the surrounding neighborhoods to enforce the conditions imposed on a business through their conditional use permit. And as we all know, we don't have the authority of enforcement, just the right to point out our grievances through the appropriate channels at City Hall. For whatever reason, be it lack of adequate enforcement staff or a lower priority when compared to the other issues facing our town, Hillbrook School has been allowed to violate their existing CUP almost at will over the last 13 years. This chart, which was compiled by neighbors over these years, highlights some of these violations that Hillbrook has incurred. This is not a fiction. In particular, I'd like to emphasize the intensification of use of their campus. According to Town Code, a CUP holder cannot add activities that are a substantial departure from what was in place when its CUP was approved. Since 2009, Hillbrook has added an ever-increasing amount of activities, including a teacher training program, more than 27 after-school activities, and an increase in the number of home sports games. These are all substantial departures from what was in place when the CUP was approved. In addition, summer programs at the school have dramatically increased. Up until 2010, programs ran for six weeks with roughly 100 campers and counselors and ended at 3:00 P.M. Now, programs run all summer with more than 200 campers, counselors, and programs run into the evening. Town Council has ruled on two violations to the CUP in March of last year and found the school in violation of its CUP. These were holding conferences at the school run by third parties, as well as holding weekend tournaments with other schools. At that time, the town postponed consideration of the intensification of use violations because the CUP hearings were coming up, and it was expected these other violations would be covered then. However, staff report does not address these issues. We request that the Commission deny this application and do not certify the EIR, as these issues are not adequately addressed to protect the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Bianca Grutter.
She's not here.
All right. Doug Kernan. Beyond Mr. Kernan will be Fiona Green, followed by Kristin Johansson.
Good evening. I'm Doug Kernan, and I've lived with my family in Los Gatos for almost 20 years. Our children have attended Green Hills Preschool, as well as both Blossom Hill School and Hillbrook School. Initially, we lived off Upper Shannon Road, and for the last nine years, we've lived on Short Road. Given this, I've got a pretty strong working knowledge of the traffic and safety issues in the Marchmont, Ann Arbor, and surrounding neighborhoods. Living on Short makes us one of the few families who would have a shorter route to school if Ann Arbor were open for pedestrian access to Hillbrook. However, I could not agree more with a neighbor who spoke last Wednesday about how bad an idea this is because of the safety issues related to that option. From Blossom Hill Park to Short Road, there are no crosswalks and very limited sidewalks. Upper Shannon and Short Road, like Englewood, are major cut-through routes, but I knew that when we bought there. Despite the recent addition of speed bumps on Short Road, people continue to drive at high speed on both Shannon and Short, creating a drop-off area at the end of Ann Arbor near this intersection would just be foolish. So why would a group that states in their recruiting documents that safety is a primary concern even suggest opening up Ann Arbor? If safety is the primary issue, why isn't there an effort by these civic-minded individuals to voluntarily add sidewalks and mandate bike lanes throughout the Marchmont neighborhood? Perhaps the fines that they are so sure Hillbrook would incur should be earmarked for just such projects, or maybe to increase the police presence during school commute hours to address the speeders throughout the neighborhoods, which anyone who is honest will admit are not Hillbrook families. To be sure, there are traffic issues in the area, but to pin them on Hillbrook is at best disingenuous and in many cases, just dishonest. Just because you don't like the result of the EIR doesn't make it invalid. But no one likes traffic, so in combination with safety, you have a great red herring if you're trying to build negative sentiment toward Hillbrook. But the real issue has never been about safety or even traffic anywhere other than on a few streets. It has been and remains an issue of the personal priorities of a vocal minority. A few of our green-shirted neighbors were actually upfront about their agenda last Wednesday. They don't want a school within the neighborhood at all, and will continue to do whatever they can to handicap a 75-year-old Los Gatos institution until operational limitations make it non-viable, the proverbial death by a thousand cuts. Then they'll be back here again arguing as to why their property shouldn't be developed at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kernan. Don't leave. I actually have a question for you. So do you now have children in the local schools?
Yes, I have two children currently at Hillbrook.
Both at Hillbrook? One, I think you had a child at Blossom Hill?
I had two children at Blossom Hill. I have three children total. I, at one point, had one child at Hillbrook and two at Blossom Hill. We decided that being able to have family vacations together was fairly important, so we consolidated our efforts.
All right. Well, actually, my, my question is more about the transportation of the children to school. So can you just tell me how you transport your child to school?
Yes, our, so my son who's in high school, I carpool with other families to get him to high school. The children who are at Hillbrook ride the bus, or we often ride bikes, or walk with the marching Mondays group as well.
And when you say the bus, do you mean the bus at Blossom Hill Park? You go down there and, and pick up that bus?
Yes.
All right, that's what I needed to know. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Fiona Green, and then Kristin Johansson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for your service. My name is Fiona Green, and as a trustee for Hillbrook, I have been helping lead this effort to modify our CUP. Our first meeting with the neighbors to share our future hopes for Hillbrook was in May 2011. A neighbor told us then, "We don't care how you improve the school as long as it doesn't affect us." These words became a guidepost during all our discussions. Over the next three and a half years, we exchanged countless emails and organized dozens of meetings with neighbors to listen and make sure we understood what the key traffic concerns were. We decided to pilot programs to test different ways to bring the traffic down quickly, as we recognized there was a trust issue with our neighbors, and felt it wasn't enough to say to you, "Once we get our students, we will begin using buses." We decided to prove that we could do it ahead of submitting our application, something I'm sure you will recognize is not the norm. The proposal you have before you tonight is a direct result of many of these conversations. The neighbors proposed that we bus students in to reduce the number of cars, so we are. The neighbors told us they didn't want our parents parking on Marchmont, so they don't. The neighbors told us that they were concerned about the levels of traffic outside of the peak periods, so we are offering an all-day count. The neighbors told us they want more quiet hours during summer, so we are proposing to halve our summer traffic. We want you to know that we have compromised. We have stretched ourselves. We have produced a proposal that responds to the neighbors. It is important to remember that Hillbrook already operates under an extremely restrictive CUP. Our campuses close nearly every single weekend and evening. Our students and parents are taking extra time out of their days to carpool, shuttle, bike, or ride to school. We are asking that you do not further chip away at our ability to access our campus. This is our home too. We've been at 300 Marchmont Drive for 79 years and hope to be there educating children for another 79 years at least. We have listened, been accountable, and done right by this process. We ask that Planning Commission approve our refined CUP as recommended by Town Staff, including our latest concessions. Our proposal is honest, modest, and data-driven. Hillbrook is a school, a Los Gatos school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Please come back to the microphone. Commissioner Seac.
Ms. Green, what was your most recent discussion with the neighborhood?
So we had.
I need for you to speak into the microphone.
Sorry. So we had a big gathering in either February or March when we asked all the neighborhoods to attend, and it actually took place, May, sorry, and it took place in the library here.
So May of this year. And you said your, at least your participation began in May of 2011?
The school, yeah, the school's participation.
And how often would you say, since 2011, how much communication has there been?
Well, I mean, counting emails, one-on-one meetings.
Let's say meetings, official meetings.
Official meetings, well, over 20, I would say, at least.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we have Kristin Johansson, and then followed by John Shepherdson, followed by Jim Kunniff.
Hi, my name's Kristin Johansson, and first of all, I am not a part of the Hillbrook family. My child does not go to the school. I actually applied to go to the school for this school year, toured the school, and was not offered a spot due to the capacity issue. My son did a shadow day at the school, and he absolutely loved it. His exact words were, "I love this school and I want to come here," which, if you know my child, if you send him anywhere for half a day with people he does not know, that's not a, it's not a common, it's not common. It's very, very surprising. He actually currently now attends a public charter school in the San Jose area. He recently was put into the Gate program. He's very, very smart. His school is a great school. It just doesn't have, you know, what my husband and I would say are the best and most available resources for him. And that's what got us to looking, and we found Hillbrook, and we immediately fell in love with it. So, you know, for us, for me, it's just a matter of just simply having the options and having a choice and a place that, having a better opportunity or a chance to put my son somewhere where I think he would thrive and do really well. And one point I did want to make was that, given the traffic issues and all of that, on my tour, it was made very, very clear to me that there were multiple methods offered and available to people who did bring their children to the school. I was made aware of the busing system, the shuttles, the carpools. You know, I knew and was made aware of the issue with the neighborhood and that there was definitely an effort going on to keep peace with the neighbors, and that was made very clear to me. That's all.
All right, thank you. Don't leave. Just tell me what year your son would have been in.
He would have been in third grade.
A third grader, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Shepherdson, followed by Mr. Kunniff, followed by Nancy Durham.
Good evening, John Shepherdson. I'm not going to talk about the hooping camp I attended over the weekend. I'm not going to be the general plan, and I'm also not going to mime tonight. I, I'm going to take the role of an investigator because I really don't know all the facts of this project, and usually I like to be there. So I have more of questions. One of them is, and it's apparently in your packet, there was an Hillbrook School over-enrollment for 2001-2013 chart. And apparently it was based on affidavits that were filed with the state. And as I see this, and again, I can't verify this, but I see a number of years where they exceeded the 315 CUP limit. And then if you add the, the junior kindergarteners, apparently there was, if you add them, you've got like 10 or 11 of the last 13. apparently there was, if you add them, you've got like 10 or 11 of the last 13 years, there's been violations of the CUP. So, I have that question because I've heard there's been violations and there's not, and I don't know. We all agree that traffic in town is increasing. Would it be unwise to look at the traffic impacts here in a vacuum? Do we run the risk of more town traffic? Has Hillbrook earned our collective trust? I don't know. I'm hearing a lot of different points of view. To Mr. O'Donnell's question, I didn't hear an answer to this. Is there a guarantee there will be no additional traffic from the 99 students? I think that's a very, to me, that's a very important question. Do we have a guarantee? What's the optimal solution that provides the greatest good for the greatest numbers? Since the, again, I'm nervous here, since Ann Arbor residents are supportive of the increase, doesn't empathy and equity suggest that they help carry the load and not put it all on Marchmont? If it's legal to open up Ann Arbor and the school is open to Ann Arbor, and I don't think that they would be objectionable to that, and the Marchmont residents are open to Ann Arbor, then it seems to me that the only group would be the Ann Arbor residents. Additionally, if there's not really going to be, if there's not a problem now, then why would the Ann Arbor residents be against opening up that access? Did, how about green bike lanes to promote biking? I applaud the Hillbrook parents for promoting the walking and the biking. If St. Mary's CUP is 315, why can't Hillbrook do it? And isn't there a natural cap on increasing student enrollment when you build a school whose route is in and out on a lengthy residential street?
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Any questions? Seeing none. Mr. Kunniff, then Ms. Durham, and then Michael Shea.
Good evening. I'm Jim Kunniff, and I live on Marchmont Drive. I have three children, and I want to thank you, the committee, for the time this evening, and we appreciate your stamina in going through this process. My understanding is that the recommended conditions of approval attempt to balance the needs of Hillbrook School with the neighborhood's quality of life. Increasing Hillbrook's conditional use permit will diminish, not enhance, the quality of life in our neighborhood for the following three reasons. Number one, safety, and you've heard a lot about this over the course of the last two meetings we've had. Increasing enrollment by 30% in a residential neighborhood will increase the likelihood of accidents. Hillbrook's solution is a continuation of voluntary, not mandatory, carpooling with ill-defined penalties for noncompliance. In my mind, this is hardly a solution. Our neighborhood has no sidewalks to segregate pedestrians from traffic, and narrow roads with the most problematic being Highlow, which is a one-lane artery onto Marchmont, as well as Upper Marchmont being both a drop-off and pickup area for kids. Safety will become an all-day, everyday problem for the neighborhood, and with the CUP that's under consideration, including summers. Number two, traffic. According to Hillbrook's letter of justification, 54% of Hillbrook students are from outside of Los Gatos. This is only going to compound the already problematic traffic issues we have in Los Gatos and not relieve the congestion in our public schools, which is an alleged benefit of the Hillbrook proposal. Number three, taxes. Hillbrook does not pay taxes to the city, but will be a net user of city services. How does this improve our neighborhood's quality of life, let alone the city of Los Gatos? In summary, safety, traffic, taxes. Hillbrook's plan does an inadequate job of addressing any of these issues, and I would ask you to kindly reject their CUP that's under consideration. Bless you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. We're now going to hear from Nancy Durham.
Dear Planning Commissioners and all persons here to discuss the Hillbrook CUP, my name is Nancy Durham. I live at 100 Wolin Way. That's at the corner of Ann Arbor Drive and Wolin Way. Our home of 40-plus years backs up to Hillbrook School and has a gate on one side. We've always been good neighbors with Hillbrook, and Hillbrook has been a good neighbor for us. I live in this home with my husband, Robert, and we are both retired school educators. We have four grown children, and we chose to raise them in Los Gatos because the community was diverse culturally and economically. We were the first family to purchase and to move into our home at full and leaf, and we have always enjoyed our rather quiet, rural, peaceful neighborhood. We were assured when we purchased our home that there would be no traffic from the school, and this gate has never been opened. We have lived next door to it, and it's never been open for pedestrians or for traffic. All we ask is that Hillbrook expands, that the Hillbrook's expansion does not impact either neighborhood. We've had, we had the same controversy before when Hillbrook wanted to remodel and expand some of their buildings. Some of the wounds haven't healed. We've heard that tonight. Your job is not an easy one. You volunteer your time for us and try to do your best to make good decisions for our town. Please find a solution that will work towards eliminating the problem rather than moving or growing the problems, meaning allowing traffic, either pedestrian or vehicular, in our neighborhood. We need to teach our children by example that we are kind and a thoughtful community, and that we wish each other well. We are a community that's always strived to protect our children and keep them safe. I know you will do your best to solve this solution, and I see that not everybody had to go home and get their jammies. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Michael Shea?
Good evening. My name is Michael Shea. I have lived in Los Gatos since 1994. I have two children at Hillbrook, one in the eighth grade and one in the sixth grade. I am not a trustee. I am not on the board. I am simply a Hillbrook parent. I don't have really any prepared words for you or speech tonight to deliver. I don't have any statistics or numbers. I simply have my observations that have been accumulated over a number of years of walking because we live exactly one mile from Hillbrook, and we walk every day. And I'd like to say rain or shine, but we've been in a drought for a while, so it's primarily shine, although last week we did walk, and I did take some pictures because I believe that pictures are important. There's a sign that hangs in the engineering department at San Jose State, and it says, "One test is worth a thousand expert opinions." I think that pictures can be helpful when people are trying to convey what they see and what the situation really is because I've heard so many things and read so many articles in the paper about how dangerous this neighborhood is. And, you know, one common thing that we have in this room, whether we're wearing green or whether we're wearing blue, is the safety of children. And I would submit to you that none of us would be out there walking these streets or allowing our children to walk these streets if the streets were as dangerous as they've been purported to be. I took these pictures this morning. If we can turn that on. This is a picture, I live on South Kennedy, so I come down South Kennedy. We go left on Penta. We go right on Santa Maria. We cross Kennedy where I just saw Chief Frisbee out last weekend looking at a crosswalk at South Kennedy and, sorry, Santa Maria and, South Santa Maria and Kennedy. This picture is what was described this evening earlier as the feeder, the Hillbrook feeder road. This is Cardinal Lane as it would approach Marchmont. This picture right here, and I'm happy to leave these with you, is the intersection of Marchmont and Cardinal Lane. That's Demont, an employee at Hillbrook who crosses all the children, whether they be from Hillbrook or Blossom Hill or anyplace else. But he's happy to assist in the crossing of there. This picture I took from the top of Marchmont very close to Mrs. Murphy's driveway. And I took this picture because I thought it was not only a great vantage point because it showed such a distance, but it also showed the traffic considerations and the traffic actuality that is there on any given day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Don't go away. We have a question. Vice Chair Burge?
Just a quick one. What time was this taken in the morning?
This was taken at 7:51 a.m. this morning.
Okay.
And these were not, I have the originals. These are not photoshopped. There's three cars in them. There is a, there's the bus that, there was a question about what a bus looked like, the size of it, the number of seats. I think it was by Councilman Talisfor. I'm sure that Nicole, who's here, could tell you exactly how many seats are on that bus. It's right here. It's hard to see with the exposure, but you can see all of the families that are walking up and down Marchmont. You can see a total of three cars going toward the school, one car going away.
Pardon me? Yes, and so if you can just leave those photographs with Ms. Savage, then she'll see that we get a copy as well. Thank you.
And I've dated and stamped everyone at the bottom right.
Fine. Perfect. And she'll mark them as well. Thank you. John Vigliacca?
Good evening. My name is John Vigliacca, and I live at 14583 Clearview Drive in Los Gatos. I'm the father of an eighth-grade student, Jared, who attends Hillbrook. I have a confession to make. Three years ago, I was a carpool violator. The key word is "was" because that's no longer the case. I'm sharing this with you so you can better understand the lengths Hillbrook parents will go to, to support their school and to be respectful of the surrounding Hillbrook neighborhood. I mentioned that I have an eighth grader at Hillbrook. I also have a sixth-grade son who attends Fisher Middle School. My younger son is on the autistic spectrum, and the Los Gatos Public School System provides a tremendous education for him. With that said, if you have ever interacted with a child on the spectrum, you will learn quickly that they like strict routines, and any deviations from these routines can be met with some resistance. For a full year, Alex insisted that we drive our son Jared directly to Hillbrook. In his own nonverbal way, he let us know that he needed to see his brother exit the car on the grounds at Hillbrook. During that same year, I was asked no fewer than 50 times by Hillbrook faculty and parents why my family was not supporting the carpool program. Talk about peer pressure. It took a full year of gentle persuasion, but I'm here to tell you that on the first day of the following school year, we were able, for the first time ever, to drop off our son at the Shannon Bus Stop. For two years, we dropped off our son each morning at this stop. During that time, we asked the Hillbrook administration to consider adding a bus stop closer to our house. It shouldn't come as a surprise that the administration listened and acted. This year, there's a bus stop located near the corner of Winchester and Lark. Now, I heard one of our, one of the neighbors of Hillbrook last Wednesday state right here at this podium that he counted only one child entering the bus at this specific stop. While I would never question his motives, I can only guess that he somehow became distracted while counting. Last Thursday, I counted 14 students entering that bus. Last Friday, I counted 14. Yesterday, 14. Can you guess how many entered today? Yep, 14. By my estimate, that is anywhere from five to 10 fewer cars each morning that no longer enter into the greater Hillbrook neighborhood. I am wearing white today, but I could just as easily have worn green. I am sympathetic to all the neighbors who are worried about traffic and safety. I also, I also live in a neighborhood that sees its fair share of traffic. In my case, I live near the entrance of La Rica Nada Country Club. Anytime I see a car drive by my house well above the speed limit, I become upset. I have worked with the club board of directors to remind its members that they are part of a larger neighborhood. I can assure you that parents and staff of Hillbrook are keenly aware that they, too, are part of a neighborhood. You've heard many anecdotal stories describing traffic figures both last Wednesday and again today. You've just heard one from me regarding the count of 14 students each day. I would suggest that you put less stock in all those stories and that you look at the actual data that has been provided by your staff and third-party agencies. I urge you to analyze only statistically relevant data. You have the numbers you need to make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Right on time. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. So, we have gone through the cards.[1505.83][1505.83](APPLAUSE) Although I will reveal that Mr. Paulson came up to me with a huge stack of cards to hand to me that were all blank.[1519.78][1519.78](LAUGHTER) My grandson would call that being pranked. So, here is the procedure. The procedure is that the applicant is now able to respond, and the way in which we are going to do this this evening, the applicant, whoever speaks on behalf, probably, I don't want to presume, but Mr. Hammer, Mr. Silver, whoever, we are going to ask, they only get three minutes at the microphone. Then we are going to have the opportunity to ask the applicant questions. The applicant is going to need probably other people to step forward with facts or information. Anyone who speaks tonight comes to that microphone has to fill out a yellow card. Maybe they already have, but I'll ask each time. So, I want you to understand that even though the applicant has three minutes, we, as the commission, will be able to ask questions of the applicant as well. So, with that being said, if it's Mr. Hammer, then, sir, step forward, re-identify yourself, and your three minutes are going to start the first time you say your name.
I have a quick clarification. When we open it up, will I have, you'll have Mr. Silver up here with me because he'll have different...
If we ask you questions that only Mr. Silver has the best information, then he can step forward as long as he identifies himself, traffic management, wherever. We don't know, or at least I don't know, the other commissioners do know what direction they're going to take questions. I don't know what direction they're going to take questions. All right?
All right. Thank you. Again, my name is Chuck Hammers. I'm chair of the Board of Hillbrook School. And when I came in here last week and addressed you, I told you about the story of my wife saying, "You have to do right," and I want to go back to that. And her number-one message was, "You need to listen," and we did. Listening to the neighbors directly shaped this proposal. It's what gave us the idea for an all-day traffic count. It's what gave us the penalties. It's what gave us the idea of transparency, not having two counts a year, but having 365 counts a year. And then we also listened to you guys. You know, we heard questions from you, and we responded. We refined our proposal today. We added the cap. We've also added that we're going to put into the enrollment cap, or the enrollment contract, the, following the TDM. The other thing she said was, "Let your actions speak." And I think back to 2011, the first traffic study that came out, and it suggested we put in a cap of 185 on the two peak periods, and that was an increase. That bothered me. But it also said, "Do a TDM," and this really, in the long run, helped us over the years. So, as the numbers started coming down, we changed that proposal to 165 and saying it's going to be no change. Then the TDM worked better, and we changed it to 150. The change we see up there, since I've been going 12 years, is stunning on how few cars there are. The other thing my wife said was, "Don't impact," and yes, we all know the EIR said there's not an impact, but what's that mean to real people? What it means is we're implementing an all-day traffic count, and it's going to ensure no adverse long-term impact. And it's, and it's, we're not going to go back to those 1,400 cars. 960 is going to be there, and we're going to live with it forever. It's going to be a tough number for us, but we think it's important for the neighborhood. And then accountability. We're looking at the mandatory TDM with enrollment penalties, penalties on the school if we go over it, and fully transparent numbers. It's important. Issues like this are really emotional when they involve your home or your school and your kids. When we all step back, I think we're going to all agree that this is, in the end, a win for everybody. It's obviously a win for the Hillbrook kids that are going to get more classes and such. It's a win for the town of Los Gatos if you get more seats. But the neighborhood, this process has made us better. We've lowered the traffic dramatically. They're going to get an all-day count, which they've never had. They're going to get an all-day half-count for summer. And as board chair, I stand here, and I'm confident that this proposal is going to... work—and work for a long, long time, because we're going to have to live with it forever. So I thank you for your time, and we're here to answer questions as long as you want to go.
All right. Well, we're in this for the long term. So we have a number of questions, and I'm wondering which one of my commissioners would like to begin with some questions of the applicant. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have been sort of riveted on—simply on traffic. And it is apparent that you're doing a lot to control traffic, and I'm appreciative of that. On the other hand, I am concerned that your project not impact the neighbors. And that drives me to say that you're asking for a number of students that you have decided you want. I'm not altogether sure that you should get that number, but that depends upon the impact on traffic. So I look at what you're asking for, and even though you seem to be doing a much better job than you have in the past, and even though you're talking about transparency, I guess I believe that when I finally make my decision on this—which will may not be the commission's decision—I'm going to be hard-pressed to vote in favor of more traffic. That is not to say you couldn't have students, more students, but it would—the burden would be on you to say, "We're going to have more students, and we're not going to have more traffic." You don't say that now, and I don't know that you can. But I throw that out now because during the course of the evening when we talk about this, I—I don't think—you'll—this will be the last time you will hear that. Now, I asked your engineer, and he has been brought in sort of at the last minute. We all got stuff at the last minute, and so he was unable to answer that question. And I appreciate why. But perhaps since that question was asked earlier, you have thought more about it. So I'd like to know whether you can do an increase in your student body, whatever the number is—obviously not exceeding what you're asking for—and have no traffic impact so that if we looked at today versus 99 students later, we could say to the neighbors, "Same traffic." Is that possible?
So let me go right into what the proposal actually says. The baseline from 2011 showed 880 cars on an all-day count. What we're proposing is an average of 960. So yes, that is 80 cars additional on an average. It's 40 in and 40 out. That's something that not everybody recognizes. For example, when you drove up to visit the school and left, that counted as two cars for us. So we're really talking about four cars—40 cars coming in and out. Can I put something up? Okay. So this is 40 cars coming in and out, seeing on Upper Marchmont. We only have the one exit there. And what happens once you get to—to the—to the intersection of High-Low? About 5% go down Cardinal. So what we're talking about is, over 10 hours, Cardinal's going to get two additional cars each way. Lower Marchmont's going to get 26 over 10 hours, topping four, and High-Low, eight. I've studied the traffic inside and out, and I've basically got the percentages off of all the traffic studies showing which way the cars go once they hit that intersection. Once you get out even further, the traffic in the whole town is—is—there's no effect. And in fact, if you think about—you know, some of the parents talking about being over at Rinconada—so those 14 kids that are getting on that bus, if they were going to Dave's or Van Meter's or something else, they would be coming down Los Gatos Boulevard with their parents. There's no school over there. So what's not in the traffic study is all the kids that are getting on these buses that are not plugging our—plugging up our streets. So yes, for this little neighborhood, there's 40 cars coming in and out. For the rest of Los Gatos, we are the example for lowering traffic. If all the other schools did this, we would not have traffic problems during the peak periods.
First, you're raising the number. You may—maybe you want to— If you're asking for— Please, if I can get this speaker on. You're asking for an increase. And secondly, you use averages, and very frankly, I will be shocked if we don't set a maximum, because averages, unfortunately, have—what—can have wide swings. And if I'm a neighbor, I don't care nearly as much about averages as I do a maximum. And a maximum, much easier to enforce, and during the course of this evening, I'm sure we'll be discussing enforcement with you. So again, I think you're telling me, "No, I can't do as well as I'm doing now. I'm doing wonderfully well because I'm adding 99 students, and look, I'm only having 60 or 80 more cars." And if that's the best you can do, tell me that, and that—we'll work with that. We may decide not to do it, but I'm asking you, can you do better?
Let me tell you why that's so important to the school. The—the peak periods are you—where you can really mitigate. It's the low-hanging fruit. That's where we've knocked it down tremendously. You guys all visited during a peak, and you saw how low it was. What happens is that midday—the other chart that we had earlier, I think Jennifer had— this midday, what's it made up of? There's some things that we can't do a thing about. The mailman comes every day. The garbage man comes every day. There's all these little services that just happen. But beyond that, it's things like reading to your child. It's—it's—you know, I remember going to my kindergarteners on St. Patrick's Day, and they did a leprechaun trap, and you—all the parents came in to see if your kid had caught a leprechaun or not. And those are kind of the memories that—that make up what a school is. And parents need to participate. And this is really where the memories are made. It's—it's in this midday number. So are you saying, "Could we do it?" Well, if we knock this down to 80, and we told parents, "Don't come in and bring your child donuts on their birthday, and don't read your kindergarteners, and don't do these little things," yes, we could probably do it, but we would not have the same culture that we have right now, and we wouldn't be what every other school is where parents participate.
But let me just say one thing. Let's assume that's really important, and therefore let's have them all come in on St. Patrick's Day. That's easily solved by not increasing by 99. You're asking for 99 new students, and oh, by the way, we want to have all these other things, too. That's going to be your choice. So you're going to have to decide whether you want more students and have another way to deal with this. If you're saying, "We want everything, but we're really good at it," fine, we'll consider that.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I'm just going to stop here, if I could, so that we—we want to give all the commissioners a chance to ask any questions.
Well, the only reason I ask that is I know we're all interested in traffic, and I want them to take their absolutely best shot. So that's all I was trying to do.
I understand. All right. Commissioner Seack.
I'm going to focus on this chart again.
All right.
So I'm going to follow Commissioner O'Donnell's train of thought here. Understanding that we're working with the 480 right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it's debatable whether it's 440 or 480. We could say, "Fine, operationally, you can do what you would like to do to make that number." There is possibly some wiggle room there. If—if you don't want to change your culture of changing the midday, one suggestion that was—that was—we heard during testimony was mandatory busing, and that would change your AM peak time. I mean, are those flexibilities something that you and your board members have discussed so that the traffic does not change and does not cause a negative impact to the neighborhood, and we place that burden of responsibility onto your school to change your operations to make sure there's no detrimental impact? Do you see where I'm going with this?
I do. It would be a very different school if you had mandatory busing, and it would—again, we've kind of attacked the low-hanging fruit where you put the buses. You start—there's a reason busing isn't in all the schools anymore, because it's that final mile problem where it's scattered around, and you really have to go for the—the congregations. And that's what we've done really well at, and we're—we're running at a 94% compliance rate. There's not a lot of meat left on—in the—in the peak periods. We're doing really well there. And what what you're going to do—if you start knocking this number down, you're going to end up with taking those—what I call the memories or the special moments or the Greek play or whatever it is that the parents show up, or the after-school activities and sports. It is what a school is. It's—and that's—that's why it's—we pushed this number as much as we could. We really did. And—and you—you have to put it in perspective. We were—we were at 1,400 cars. So we've knocked 500 off. We're asking for 80 back. And it's—and 80 is not anywhere near in the noticeable range. It isn't. It's 40 cars in and out over 10 hours. It's just minimal, but you look at what kind of joy you can give to 99 more kids. To me, it's—it's—you got to look at this as a town, not as a street.
Commissioner Seack, another question, and then—did I see your hand, Commissioner Erickson, or not quite yet? All right.
Okay, so I don't want to get into a debate, so I'm just going to ask questions.
Sure.
The 99, where did—the—how did you arrive at the incremental increase to 99? Why not 90? Why not 100? Can you just walk me through that?
I can. Mr. Silver's better at operational pieces.
So we showed this chart before, but—
Oh, Mr. Silver, just for the record—
I'm sorry.
You have to give your name again.
Mark Silver, head of school, Los Gatos resident. So as you can see on the chart, what we're showing here are—the blue bars are the current enrollment. The red bar is the delta between current enrollment and what we would have at 414. So that—so what we're looking at is—if you're looking at junior kindergarten, 12 students. This year, we have six. We would typically have 12. Kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, we're looking at two sections of 20. And again, that's a—that's a number that is well-known in educational circles. You know, public schools, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, that was the big conversation in the state of California. We need to get everybody think—everybody down to 20. 20 is a great number for elementary schools. That—that's a number that's always made sense to our school. It's a—it's a target that we try to hit. Then what you're looking at in middle school, and where the main growth, as you can see, is going to happen, is three sections of 18. And so it takes you up to 54. And again, that's a very intentional decision. So one of the conversations we had is, "Well, why not go to 60? Why wouldn't you just add another 20 students going from fifth to sixth grade?" And it didn't make sense to us because part—because two things. One, you know, the way a middle school is structured is—you don't have this—third grade, you have two sections of 20, right? And they basically move in two sections of 20. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, as we've been talking about, have more sections than that. You know, there's multiple sections of math. There's multiple sections of—of language, and so it's—it's slightly less lockstep in that sense. And so the difference between 54 and 60 doesn't necessarily bring you anything. And what it actually might lead to is an increase of so many students in the middle school that it could change the character of the school. And so we were very thoughtful about, "Well, you know, how many more students?" Again, so as—you know, we're looking four, five years out, three, four years out. When you—are lower school is full, and you're making that jump from 40 to 54, 14 new middle schoolers felt like a good size, like a good increase.
All right. Commissioner Seack. Again, Commissioner Erickson, are you ready to go, or you want to pass to someone else?
Well, I'd like to follow up on some of the questions about the enrollment.
Please.
So just for the record, this is Exhibit 2 from your letter of—of September 17th, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Okay. Can you walk me through what this year's enrollment is by grade, slow enough where I can write it?
Hmm, maybe. So I know JK is 6, 31, 24, 30—I don't remember—30—I don't have to listen to me—37 or 38, 40 in third grade, 35 in fourth grade—sorry, 30 in fourth grade, 40 in fifth grade, 36, 33 and 36, I think. And again, so part—I was just saying, part of our challenge, right, is that it doesn't—because it fluctuates all the time, every year, we don't necessarily—there's not a consistent number every year in the grades.
I'm actually interested in what this fall's enrollment is.
It's 315. And I can get you that chart. I don't—I don't—yeah.
Yeah, that's by grade. Because ultimately—so if I understand what your plan is, your capacity plan is, which is what we have to—what we have to drive, not what a—what enrollment might happen to be in a particular year. So if I understand your plan, you would have 12 in junior K, and then 40 in grades K through 5, so—and then 54 in grade 6 through 8. So there's apparently a typo on the bottom of this page, because it says 54 for grade The copy that we have says 50 through 8, 54.
This one is correct. I don't know. There may be a mistake in the one that was turned in.
Well, I don't know. I mean, the one that they gave us says 54. So I was trying to do the math. I was trying to figure out how you got to 414. So let me ask a—so what's the—let me ask this another question. So what's the—in the—in the view of the school, because you chose to have a smaller cohort in junior K, so in the—in the educational plan for the school, why wouldn't you have the simple answer of a—a cohort of 18 or two cohorts of 18? And junior K also?
So in—junior kindergarten is a very targeted program. So it's—it serves—it's basically children who turn 5 in August. It's basically the transitional K that you—that they are talking about in public schools. So children who turn 5 in August through December. There's occasionally a little wiggle room on that. But for the most part, it's a very targeted group of children who are really too old for a traditional preschool or pre-K, but too young for kindergarten. So again, so it's—you're—we—we're not looking to fill—I don't know that we'd ever get a full, you know, cohort of 40 students or 20 students. I mean, it's—it's a pretty small targeted group, and it—and it's a group that served us well. It's—it's an age that we can serve well, and it's served as a great transition into the program. Our junior kindergarteners thrive when they transition to kindergarten, and there's—so it's a long history of that program, so.
I have some other questions that—I want to walk them through the permitted activities chart, but I don't want to—that's going to take a little while to do that and ask a series of questions, so I would defer to other commissioners if they want to ask other questions, because that'll take a little while to walk through the permitted activities chart. But I'm happy to do that now, but—
All right. That's okay. So we're going to let some other commissioners have an opportunity to ask a few questions, and then we'll return to you, Chair Erickson. However, just don't move, okay, because I think that I'm getting some concern that we are going to run over our statutory ending time of 11:30, which means that we need a motion to continue beyond 11:30. Am I correct, Mr. Paulson, or am I just guessing at what I'm hearing here?
You will ultimately need a motion to go past 11:30, should that be the choice of the commission.
And so do I need that motion now, or do I need that motion at 11:29?
11:29 and 30 seconds.
11:29 and 30 seconds. So I'm going to ask Mr. Paulson to—to keep track of that. Thank you. All right. So any other commissioners have questions? All right. Let's do Commissioner Talisfor.
Sorry, excuse me. I'm not sure who could answer this. I don't know if it's a staff question to be answered or Mr. Silver.
Commissioner Talisfor, if it turns out to be the staff, we're going to have to delay that because we're not ready for the staff yet.
Because I don't quite understand what I read, and I'm not sure how this could be accounted for. So within the EIR, it's—is this—and I wrote this down verbatim. It says, "There would be no population growth associated with the school use or resulting from proposed changes to the school's CUP." Period. "Because the additional students accommodated by the proposed increase in enrollment would be drawn from the existing local community. The project would not generate or induce substantial unexpected population growth." So I guess my question is—and probably to the school—is how does the school—I'm assuming that the school knows this, or this—this is information from the school. So how—how—what is that date? What is that sentence and the data based on?
I'm not—
Commissioner Talisfor, maybe I could ask you to identify the— Commissioner Talisfor, maybe I could ask you to identify the document in the page number?
Yeah, I, you know what, and I think it's, it's from the EIR, but I did not write the page down, so I'll probably have to look for it, but have...
Might I also suggest that the term "population" there may mean the population of the town as opposed to the population of the school, and that's a lot more easily understood. There's not going to be any increase in population in Los Gatos because of 99 new students in the school.
But it says that the students accommodated by the proposed increase in enrollment would be drawn from the existing local community, so...
That is why there would be no increase in the town. If it were not drawn from, from the existing population, bingo.
So, what I would like the two commissioners to do at this moment, we're going to ask perhaps a member of the staff to identify where Commissioner Talisfor is getting that information, so we can all be on the same page, so to speak. And in the meantime, can we just defer?
Yeah.
And we'll go on to Vice Chair Birch.
Thanks for sticking this out so late. In reading through the mass of documents and things, obviously, part of the job of all of this is looking at options. And I think as a commission, we are always trying to find a happy ground for everybody. So in doing that, I want to just go through a couple different scenarios. They may not be ones that we all support. I just want to make sure that we've vetted everything out. One item that's come up repeatedly is opening the gate at Ann Arbor. What I would like to know is that option. Having, we've all been on campus, obviously, we know how it's laid out. Let's say that that option was going to be explored. Have you put together what would be a safety plan through the campus, were we now to have traffic going through that?
I actually think it's, it's a disaster if you start running cars right through the middle of a campus with kindergarteners.
I don't disagree, but what I'm asking is, is as a group, knowing that there's all these different options out there, have you gone through collectively and said, "Dear God, if this was to happen, here's the safety plans we would put in place"?
We, we do not. We, this has never been an option that we have entertained, because there's only one bridge across the creek, and that's the main route for the, the kids and getting across the creek also. So to put cars on a, not a very large, wide, um, bridge, along with the kindergarteners, our, our kids don't stay in one spot on campus. There's music in one spot, and it, from a very young age, they move all over the campus. And it just, it, it makes my blood curdle thinking of, of a trafficway coming right through the middle of a campus.
So would you say on campus, knowing that the children move from buildings to buildings, that that, what we're going to call, I'm just calling it a road, because it's obviously not a sidewalk, is considered a main footpath for the travel for the students during the day?
It is a footpath. It was built specifically enough to be able to get a fire truck across it, but it's not much of a road. There...
There's no sidewalks or anything running along any of those spaces?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question? You may ask one other question.
One other question. My other question is, one of the things that was written in here was this reduced enrollment alternative. One of the questions that came up earlier, which was one that I was going to ask about, is, again, I doubt what, if we were to move forward with this, that means you're adding, I would assume, it doesn't mean you're adding 99 students next year. I, from what you just said, Mr. Silver, that you've looked at this as a multi-year plan. I guess, along with that, so let's say that what we did in discussing it is we limited your growth per year for the next number of years, capping at this number. And I don't know what that would be, I'm just throwing ideas out here. With that, then there could be reporting each year on how that's working, one, traffic-wise, classroom-wise. That could be something that could be reported to the town. If that was something that was found as an agreeable compromise, still meeting your ultimate goal, but allowed a bit more transparency as your goal was laid out to the town and to the neighborhood, would that be something you would be agreeable to?
So, so we have consistently said that this would happen from, anywhere from three to five years. So, I, I would never see us going below a three-year ramp-up, so I, I think splitting into thirds would be reasonable.
Okay.
Something along those lines.
And then, in going along with that kind of a thought, could be the, the biannual reporting of, we've added 25 students, we're tracking that, that means we've added X number of trips this year, that could be publicly shared with the neighborhood and town?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Seac, I just want to add a, ask a couple of questions. When, when you're about to have special events, how, how do you notify the neighborhood?
So we have a neighborhood newsletter, which we've tried to get on email, but for the most part, you know, we don't have, we haven't been successful in collecting most neighbors' email addresses, so for the most, you know, we're sending out paper copies. And we send that out several times over the course of the year, in an effort to notify people.
Are you open to a postcard method and of X amount of neighbor streets, whatever, that you would send out a notice to all the neighbors that this was about to happen at Hillbrook?
Sure, I mean...
Okay, so, I just want to make sure, because that's an expense, that's, that's postage. So, the second question I have has to do with the use of the school, and I preface this by having lived for many years in the Almond Grove, right down the street, half a block from St. Mary's. And I know that St. Mary's was very cooperative within our neighborhood. If there was an event, perhaps even a large party in the neighborhood, they were very willing to allow cars to park in their parking lot. And what I haven't heard from Hillbrook this evening is any, any creative ways you've thought of to share the beautiful sight of your school with your immediate community and neighborhoods? So why don't, if you can talk to me about that?
So, we, when we did one big round of neighbor meetings, we split the neighborhoods up, and in every single neighbor meeting, we actually asked that question, what, what could we do to add value to you? And in the past, there has been occasional uses. I think there was a funeral, one time, that we allowed, they asked, could we, could they use the campus? And it was, in a Fourth of July, we've allowed some Fourth of July overflow into our campus. And we're very open to this, but we're also very sensitive that we've heard, our initial proposal, we said, you know, we would be willing to open up our fields, because we know there's such a shortage of fields here. But we very quickly recognized when, in the neighbor meetings, that this is not something that our close-end neighbors would appreciate. They were very vocal about it, and we pulled that part out of our, but, but we're very open to this.
All right, and then I just have a quick third question, and then we'll move on to Commissioner Seac, and that is, do you have any kind of preference for Los Gatos applicants?
So as, you know, Mr. Conley mentioned, you know, last year, we had, I think it was 34, I think I got that number right, Los Gatos applicants and 24 were accepted. So that's a higher percentage than we're accepting of other students. We don't, we haven't explicitly created a Los Gatos preference, but, you know, we certainly are aware of, you know, the, the role that the Los Gatos community plays in our school, and, and so that, that's something that we are always thinking about when we're, I would say, it falls into the other factors we also consider when we're making admissions decisions.
So when you say you're thinking about it, or it's something you always think about, does that mean when you look at an application from a Los Gatos resident, they get an extra two points, or, I mean, I don't know how you do your, your applications?
We're not a big university, so we, we don't have any system, our system's not that complex, you know, it's not nearly that technical. You know, we're, you know, we're sitting around and we're looking at applications, and we're, you know, really what we're asking, of course, the first question with every student, is are they going to be a good match? You know, can we best serve this student? And so that's, you know, starting there. And as you're then, and then as you're looking beyond that, you know, there's siblings, and so we certainly, you know, take into account, I mean, a sibling preference. You know, there are feeder schools, so, you know, schools like Green Hills, which are, you know, which is mostly Los Gatos, I don't know, it's entirely Los Gatos, but mostly Los Gatos, you know, and, and, you know, we certainly look to Green Hills students every year. So, so it's part of those conversations. And again, we're, it's a relative, as Joe said, I mean, it's a relatively small, it's 120, I think you said, 122, you know, applicants total, so, you know, we're able to look pretty carefully, just like with our students who are enrolled, we're able to really understand the applicants and make sure people are the right match.
All right, um, thank you for that answer. I know it's Commissioner Seac, and I know Commissioner Erickson is interested in going back, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Talisfor wants to return to that question or not. And then we have Commissioner Badami, I'm not sure that you have questions. All right, so why don't we, at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to go beyond 11:30, so that when we get into the process of these questions, we've, we've settled that matter. So Commissioner Erickson?
I'd be happy to make that motion with a clarification. Do we have to, do we have to just make the motion to go beyond 11:30? We don't have to, we don't have to declare our intent not to go beyond 4:00 AM, or... So, you just have to go beyond. So I'll move to extend the meeting beyond the typical closing of 11:30 PM.
Do I have a second? Well, if someone will just second it, we can have Mr. O'Donnell's question.
I'll, nobody second.
All right, well, I'm going to second it. All right, so now, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I would like to see a time on it. In other words, we would normally adjourn at 11:30. At some point, we're going to be even more useless than we are right now. And so if we pick a time, it would be helpful.
So let me tell you, I'll tell my fellow commissioners, I, I think they already understand this, but my point this evening is that we are going to complete the public hearing, and in order to complete and close the public hearing, we need to complete with the applicant. And if that takes us 15 minutes or 50 minutes, in order to close the public portion of the public hearing, the applicant has to have their opportunity to present and then to answer the questions. So Commissioner O'Donnell, with that view in mind, we could use an outside time and say that for the next, you know, we won't go beyond two hours. But we do need to complete the questioning, and so perhaps I, we could hear from some other commissioners as well, whether or not we should put a time limit on this. Commissioner Erickson?
If I may, I'd like to revise my motion to say that I would move to extend the meeting to no later than 12:30 AM.
I would second that.
All right, so that motion has been made and seconded, and is there any further discussion? I'm sorry.
You were the second, so you would have to, he amended his motion, not the second.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, I need to be the seconder. So, yes, please, okay, so I will be the seconder. So we're, we have to get this Robert Rules of Order, you know, all settled here. So I am the seconder, and all in favor, say aye. All right, and against? Okay, so we have three commissioners against. All right, the motion passes. We're going to go four to three, we're going to go until 12:30. All right, so Commissioner Seac, you were about to ask some questions, and then followed by Commissioner Badami, Commissioner Talisfor, and then Commissioner Erickson, we're going to complete with you, okay?
Okay. So, one of the things I really want to focus on next is enforcement. Without knowing where my fellow commissioners are going to go, the next component, regardless of what we agree to, is enforcement. And what we've heard over this hearing in the past is there is now a level of mistrust and, no judgment, just that, that's what we've heard. So knowing that, I want to make sure that the, whatever is approved is crystal clear, and that the enforcement piece will become crystal clear. Now, my understanding is there's a, you have a system in place to count actual trip counts that go through your gate. And that will become publicly available on your website in the future, is that correct?
I think it'll be made available to the town, is it... We, we will make it public to whoever you choose, but we're making it public to the, to the town, and then the town will choose. If they say, "Put it on your website," put it, we'll put it on the website if you, that'll be up to you.
I believe in the CUP right now, it says it would be available on your website.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, right now, as it stands, how do you use that data? Because it is the, in existence, you actually have it. There's been testimony that people have requested it, but it hasn't been made available. So how are you using it? And do you actually have trip, actual data that shows on a daily basis how many cars are going through right now? Not averages, but actual maximums?
So, so the trip counter counts every car that comes through, and time stamps it, and speed stamps it. So there's a, roughly a two-year history there of, of data, of exactly when every car came out that gate. What's very helpful over the time is, looking at the data, you say, "Okay, we had a football game, how did this affect, affect our all-day traffic?" So we've been able to learn trends and ways, kind of the more micromanaging of the knocking the number down. It's, it's really what kind of led now this year to, to additional TDM measures of this afternoon bus. It's, it's continuing to knock it down. So it's a tool for us at this point to really figure it out better.
May I can keep going with that?
One more, okay?
Okay. In addition to, who, who has access to the data? And let me give you the context. It's helping you determine your trends, but how does it give me any information to help craft a viable CUP that is fair for everyone, if I don't get access to that data?
So I guess, maybe, are you looking to have the data? Are you, I, I believe the EIR specifically said not to put the data out. I'm not an EIR expert, but the data is there.
Well, can you ask your consultant, is there a reason why, who helped to determine not to put it in there, I guess? Who, was it, is it a judgment call? Is it standard practice? I'd like to know if there's a reason that it shouldn't, it wasn't included.
I think that's a staff question.
So Commissioner Seac, it, I'm going to, we're going to hold that question open, because we need the answer to it, but just in the sake of time, because time is passing, I'm just going to move on to Commissioner Badami.
If your growth plan is 99 in the next three to five years, and let's say five years go by, what is your ideal development capacity? Can we expect another increase after five years?
We, we spent nearly a year really debating how this works and what the ideal number was. This is the ideal number for this school. Once, once you get above these class levels, we don't get the same teaching experience. So it's specifically adding up to what we view as the ideal class levels for each grade. So this is, this is not a, a business decision of, oh, we're going to keep growing this. This is a decision that's educational, to create the greatest experience for our K through 8 kids.
Thank you. We're going to, Commissioner Talisfor, do you want to...
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
I have another question. It's in the conditions. It's on 9C. Do you have the conditions, list of conditions in front of you?
The exception, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So we...
If you could clarify...
Yes, we've always had 10 nighttime events, and it's, it's part of our current CUP. And it's, it's things like, there's a graduation at night, there's a couple plays that happen at night, and they're scattered throughout the year. But those are cars that are coming in outside of the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM piece. And that, that's why the exception piece is in there, because it doesn't fit the model of, of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, because you've got a number of cars coming in on those 10 days. days.
Right. So my, and my other question with that is, are neighbors notified about these exception dates?
They, they are notified, we do a mailing, but, you know, we're also suggesting that going forward, we have a small group of neighbors that we would meet with quarterly, with trustees and staff. And then, once a year, we would also do a full neighbor meeting going forward. So any concerns or, you know, full transparency would be going forward, but it would be mailed before, and we have been doing this, any of those events happen.
So the exceptions are actually known prior to, they might be known in September? So that it could be one mailing, or are these exceptions just happen?
I can actually show you the list, if you want to see the list of exceptions. So I mean, these are things that, you know...
So just to answer the question...
But it's 10 events, and so we know them at the start of the school year.
You know a mess.
Yeah. Like there are 10 very predictable events and they're pretty much the same events every year.
So those would be sent out to neighbors at the beginning, or your small group?
We could send out something for the, what we've done is typically send it out over like a, like a two to three month time span, but we could send out for a full year.
And speaking of that small group, have you organized that yet? Or is that to be done, or is there a timeline on that?
That would be done, it's in our proposal. But, you know, ideally, it's gonna be a couple people from the, kind of the surrounding neighborhoods. It would be a couple trustees and some, you know, the transportation coordinator.
Is that an idea that came from some of your previous meetings, so that the residents in the neighborhood were, would like to participate? Is that something they said they would like to do?
It was something that came up in, in the neighbor meetings and it's, and it's a way that we felt that, you know, we're gonna be here for another 80 years, we want, we don't want this emotion in long-term. And, and we need this solved and fixed, and we felt that this was the best solution. And it, and it did come out of a neighbor meeting, yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Seok, I want to know if, if the applicant is able to answer the question or the traffic engineer for the applicant? And if not, we're going to then hold that question, and Ms. Pravetti's making a note of it, because we're gonna ask it of our own staff and traffic engineer when we reconvene.
Yep.
So you're gonna identify yourself, please.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Rank, I'm land use counsel for Hillbrook from Shepherd-Mullen. So I wanted to respond quickly to Commissioner Seok's question. So, and I'll also appreciate staff answering this when, when you start questioning them. But for the EIR, it was the towns' work with their consultant that came up with the universe of traffic data, since it's their enforcement and it's their, their counting that was, that's been done under the current CUP to track the compliance. So they compiled all the data, and that's what's been analyzed in the EIR. It was updated in 2014 by TJKM. At the same time, Hillbrook put in the sensors that they get the raw data. So we have made the commitment to upload that information to our website, assuming we get approval. But that data is so raw that it can't be just looked at on a daily basis in order to determine compliance. It has to be crunched, it has to be analyzed and basically interpreted by a qualified traffic engineer. So, so that's why we've been resistant to just say, "Here you go, do with it what you will." But rather, really wanted to make sure that we had some control around the predictability associated with what it actually means. So hopefully, that's helpful, but maybe staff can weigh in on the actual data in the EIR. But we do have a memo that we, we're gonna prepare for staff that goes over the standard deviation question that Commissioner Erickson asked, asked, excuse me. So we, we would be willing to share that with you, and it goes over some of the spring data from last year. So maybe that'll be helpful.
Is that prepared now, or you're saying you're going to prepare it?
No, I have it tonight.
All right, so you can pass that on to staff and they'll copy it for us?
I have enough copies.
All right, thank you. And so Commissioner Seok, are you, I can't say satisfied, but we know that, that we, we will delve into this with the staff, and I've asked Ms. Pravetti particularly to make a notation about that and, and be, and have the staff prepared to answer that question thoroughly for us. So Commissioner Erickson, it is, you're up, so they say.
Okay, so I'd like to return with the chair's indulgence to the enrollment question for a moment, because it seems to me that we have a conundrum, as I understand it, from our council. If in fact, we make a decision to not increase the enrollment, then we're limited in what we can do to change any terms of the existing CUP, because you have a vested, your vested interest in that and you, you own the CUP. So that, I'm not saying that we should, but if, but we may need to figure out what a reasonable enrollment number might be to, to, in order to give the, give us, give the town the leverage to address some of the real issues that are presented, been presented to us by the neighbors and so forth. So I want to ask you, run a scenario by you, and I want an answer not based on the finances of the school, but based on your view of the educational programs of the school. So if, if your enrollment plan that would be codified in the CUP were something like this, that the capacity for junior K would be 12, as you proposed, and that the capacity for K through 5 would be two classes of 18 each, not 20, and the capacity for 6 through 8 would be three cohorts of 18, so that your cohorts were all 18, not 20, and then dropping to 18, that gives us a number of 390. From an educational standpoint, what would be the effect of using those numbers which gets you to 390 rather than 414?
So, you know, two sections of...
By reducing, by essentially reducing the class size of K through 5 from 20 each to 18 each. So what's the educational impact of that?
So two sections of 20, again, you know, is, is a well-known number that, you know, that schools aim for. And if you talk to any independent school that I know, that's, that's the number that, that we look at. And we don't go over 20, because we, we don't want to become too big. But, you know, as you start going underneath 20, you start to lose some of that ability to collaborate, to, for group activities. It, you know, it's, it's a, it's a number that makes sense. And so, you know, it's not, it wouldn't be ideal for the school to have, it would also require, I think, you know, we have a lot of demand, and it's, it would also require, it would require us to, you know, make hard decisions in, in lower grades and limit enrollment.
That's not really an educational impact, that's a, that's a market demand, and your response to the market demand. So the only educational impact by reducing those class sizes would be some loss in collaborative learning.
There's a loss in group activities and collaborative learning, which is critical to, you know, 21st century education.
Okay. Let's assume, don't worry about whether the number is 414 or 390, that's the difference between those two scenarios. I assume on Mr., what Mr. Conley said, that you would grow, grow the school by, at the two, generally, at the two entry points. So you, I, I assume that's what your enrollment plan would be. You would, you would take the middle school up from where it is today to, by, by increasing the sixth grade first, and they become, obviously become seventh graders and become eighth graders. So you would do that over a three-year period of time, and you would, you would stabilize your K through 5 at the entry point of kindergarten. And obviously, you lose a student here or there, or you get a new student here or there. So that would be your plan. So if we were to, is that, is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if we were to give you the 15, 16 year to stabilize K through 12, oh, K through 5, sorry. It is, that's, that's why Commissioner O'Donnell didn't want us to go to 4:00 AM. If we gave you 15, 16 to stabilize K through 5, and the increment in middle school started in 16, 17, that would allow you to grow gradually over a four-year period of time to whatever the end number was. And give you the time to begin to experiment with, with, and refine the traffic demand management program and meet whatever goals that we would be codified in there. Is that, or would that be an acceptable approach, or is that outside of the realm of possibility?
So let me, so if we, so looking at our current enrollment model, to help answer that question. So this answer would be, it'd have been, might be different, different years. But, you know, looking at our current enrollment, again, right now, we have a full fifth grade. So to not be able to grow sixth grade looking out next year means that, you know, we won't be able to put anybody else into that class, and it's a, it's a typical year that that comes in, like a typical growth year. So I guess, I mean, if I'm hearing what you're saying, so if you're saying that we would have to keep sixth grade at 40 next year, is that what you were suggesting?
Well, I assume it would, would have to do in the practical order of things. That's why I wanted the actual enrollment from this year, then we can begin to develop a plan.
It's a very real...
Right, yeah. So you can, so you would have to figure out how to, how to refine it a little bit, and have to, you have to deal with the current enrollment, but, so you're initially trying to stabilize, but not intentionally growing.
Yeah, so...
To the full cohort of, of middle school.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't imagine that we would have 54 sixth graders next year. But again, knowing that we have 40 fifth graders right now, we might end up with 45. Right, you know, so I mean, so you might see some gradual growth. I, I also think in terms of, so yes, in general, we're gonna be looking at stabilizing the lower school. Right now, because of the way our enrollment kind of flips back and forth between lower school, middle school, having larger classes and smaller classes, because of 315, you know, we have, you know, for example, first grade, it's very difficult to enroll second graders. It's not, it's not a, a year where you typically get lots of applicants. Maybe after this meeting and the conversations, we'll get more applicants. But, you know, in general, it's not a year where you got a lot of people coming in. And so, yes, I mean, it would be great to be able to stabilize some of that, but I, I think it would be hard for us not to be able to grow the sixth grade at least a little bit.
Okay. Another question. Would you be amenable to including in the CUP an enrollment target of 50% of your students being residents of Los Gatos?
A target? Sure.
Would you be willing to put a requirement in?
Well, so a requirement...
No, I intentionally used, you got the difference in the word, I intentionally used a different noun.
Yes, a requirement is hard, because, you know, any given year, any, you know, 10 years from now, who knows what the, what the number of children in Los Gatos looking to go to a private school are? So, I mean, it's a very, that's a very hard thing to manage to. Again, right now, we're at 45% Los Gatos, 50% if you include Los Gatos minus Soreno, 62% if you include Los Gatos minus Soreno-Saratoga. So we're not far off. So I mean, it's, essentially, it is somewhat of a target now.
So target, not requirement, is the answer to the question. Okay. I'd like to then, if, and Jennifer, do you have a easy copy of the permitted activities that you could put up on the screen, be easier to, for everyone to follow the questions?
Of the existing CUP or the proposed table of activities?
The proposed permitted activities that are in the staff report.
Yes.
So I'm gonna just, so that I give the two of you a heads up, I'm gonna ask a series of questions about it, because if in fact, and I'm not presuming that this will happen, if in fact, the commission were to, were to increase enrollment, then we need to be, then, we need to be sure that, that the permitted, the permitted activities and the other conditions of approval are consistent and responsive to what we've heard in the public hearing. So I want to ask a series of questions as we walk through. And they're gonna be to a level of detail, because I'm trying to understand and trying to help us understand where you, kind of how you would think about certain issues, so that we can, we can begin to formulate ones. So I'm gonna start on line one. The hours for school instruction say 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. My sense is, I, I'm not sure why it says till 6:00 PM, why it doesn't say until when essentially school is out, and after-school doesn't say. So, I mean, are you doing instruction all the way till 6:00 PM?
So the reason we, you know, the reason I believe it's written this way is that it reflects that, for example, after-school enrichment, you know, is instruction. You know, coaching is instruction, so that I think, you know, that it's still part of our program and how we teach.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. If the second line were in the description, were to use the language extracurricular and co-curricular programs, I believe that's actually what's happening and act, what is, what are the types, the broadest kind of thing, then doesn't formal instru, if instruction, I believe instruction in this case is intended to mean classroom instruction, which I think ends at a certain time. And then you start after-school activities?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess study halls happen after school. So I, I mean, I understand, I understand what you're asking, I mean, so, and so, yeah, and the way that the language is taken from the way we talk about it, so after-school activities, after-school sports, extended care, I think is on the next page.
Okay.
But, 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 I mean, that's the way we describe it as a school, and I think that's how that's, language is being used.
Okay. Okay, so let me ask you a question about the third row then. Do you, as part of your educational program, do you have other kind of competitive activities? So for example, other than sports kind of things, do you do debates? Do you do science of the mine competition with other schools? And the reason why I'm asking those questions, I'm not suggesting that you do or suggesting that we should, but I'm trying to be sure, one of the, one of the, one of the concerns I have is in fact, that there's, there's an absence of clarity and comprehension in the existing CUP now. So I want to be sure, as we move forward, if we have a new CUP, that when none of us are around 15 years from now, that someone can read it and understand what it means, and that there will be less controversy about it. So I guess the question is, I would read this and assume that you have no other kind of competitive activities other than sports. And I just want to know for sure that that's the case.
So I would have considered, you know, for example, we have a robotics team, I would have considered that an after-school activity. So your questions, your clarifying point is a good one. And, you know, we've had students who've competed in science competitions, who may be participating in something after school.
The distinction is that the after-school activities are for enrolled Hillbrook students. Again, so you couldn't bring us, you couldn't bring students from St. Mary's to have a robotics contest with you, under these, under these guidelines. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you do, but I'm saying, if you do those things, I want to be sure that you are clear with us that you do those kinds of things. We may not, we may write the CUP that doesn't allow you to do those things, I'm not presuming that, but if that's what you're declaring, I don't want you to come back, I don't want you to do something that's not, that, that's not permitted under the CUP. I don't want to set you up for that, guess what?
I mean, if, if that's how this is being read, I think that language should be added into this, because it, it seems to me, that's that, that's not an unreasonable thing for a K-8 school to do in the afternoon. And so our intention was to have something like that included. If it isn't clear, then it would seem that that language should be added.
So something, so if the after-school sports thing were something about sports and other competitive activities were involved one other school, that would be more accurate description of what's, would be reasonable.
Commissioner Erickson, I'm just gonna interrupt you for just one moment, because Commissioner Seok let me know that she has a follow-up question to you, yours, before you go on with another question. So go ahead.
It's not necessarily a follow-up question, but more procedurally. I appreciate what Chair, Commissioner Erickson's doing, and I'd like to get to that point where we go through this, where we have clarification, but I can't get to that point until I feel we have consensus on how we're approaching the traffic issue still. Because if we haven't determined what the cap is, whether it's a maximum or an average, it's very difficult for me to think of these details when I don't know what traffic parameters we're working under. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm having a difficulty here. Because I assume, for example, after-school sports, that will have an impact on our traffic counts. So are we, as a group, looking at a maximum? Are we looking at an average? What is the number we're looking at? What is the number we're looking at? I'm just having trouble getting to these level of details until we solve the, and maybe I, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm looking at it in a different parameter.
Commissioner Seok, we are not at our deliberation point yet to have a discussion. What we do have before us submitted this evening, though, is a document from Hillbrook which talks about a maximum traffic count. And that doesn't mean that's going to be the ultimate traffic count, but that is the position of the applicant at this time. So I believe that what Commissioner Erickson is trying to derive is, are all of these activities going to fit into whatever maximum traffic count the applicant is indicating they're going to abide by? That doesn't mean that's what we're going to agree to, it's just the position. Now, Commissioner Erickson, I don't want to speak for you, and I don't want to get into deliberations because we are not there yet. We have the applicant in front of us to answer the questions.
So I was presuming that we had, that after we finished asking the questions of them, that you were gonna close the public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah. So what I was trying to do was do what, what, what the chair was asking is, is be sure we had an understanding. So, so what we have before us is what the staff put together as the permitted activities. So what I was trying to get at is, are they, what's their response to, over particular kinds of issues so that we understand where they are? Doesn't mean that we would do what they're suggesting that, that we should do, but that we understand where they are with it because we won't have another opportunity to ask them about those things that then will help us understand where we are.
Are you, you understand? All right. Commissioner Erickson, I think you're still, you still have the floor then.
Okay, so if I go to the next page to daytime events, it's not clear to me why that has to be year-round, why it wouldn't be particularly for speakers for Hillbrook parents and, so I guess I had assumed that daytime events would be during the school year.
Well, so for example, board of trustees meetings, you know, we meet in July sometimes because we're working on an issue, and so that, that's why the year-round is added to that, to your point?
Understand that, then, I don't know what the size of your board is, but the, but I imagine the traffic impact of having a board meeting and the traffic impact of having a speaker where you had all the parents and all the faculty would be significantly different, would feel different to the neighborhood. So if there are ways that we could, I mean, if, if, if in that list, it's just board of trustee meetings and, and school parent council meetings that need to be in the summer, then, and those other things don't happen in the summer, then we want to be sure that, again, we preclude those things. So we, so we are clear about minimize, you understand what I'm getting at? I'm trying to minimize, figure out ways to minimize the impact.
So, for example, if you take speakers for Hillbrook faculty, you know, our faculty during the summer are sometimes meeting to work on curriculum and program and doing fellowships. And so, again, you know, that's probably not a lot of people coming on campus, but, you know, there may be situations in which a consultant's coming on and working with a half dozen, you know, lower school teachers or the whole lower school faculty, and that might be happening during the summer. You know, we're there year-round. I mean, as, you know, I'm, I'm there. I might take vacation, but, you know, but, you know, but we're operating year-round, even though, of course, our traffic impact is very different in the summer than it is during the regular school year.
Okay, if you, okay.
So, in our neighbor meetings, it, it really came down to this all-day count. And the, the reason was, we were ending up nitpicking a lot of things and figuring out use. And what everybody really cares about is how many cars pass in front of them. So we're gonna be here another 79 years. We need something that fits us so that we don't have to come back when the next robotics is invented. There was no robotics 10 years ago. But what we do know is that schools change. And it, if, if we try to box in too many things, we're gonna end up back here when it really matters is the traffic count. So I'm, I get nervous because you don't know what you don't know. And in 10 years, there's gonna be something different. So...
Trust me, I will have lots of suggestions about how to reflect in the language that would be in the CUP to more generalize it. It's, 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 from my perspective, if in fact we were gonna change it, it is too much, it's too, it's in some cases too specific and in other cases not specific enough.
And it is a fine line, and that's what makes us nervous, too.
Yeah, so, so I'm trying to just...
Can I just raise a point of, I really order, you know, Commissioner Erickson is asking good questions and brings real insight to it, but I kind of wonder if we're not negotiating at the moment. And I wonder if we're gaining anything by this kind of conversation as opposed to closing the public hearing and going on eventually to what we're going to do. If in fact somebody's sitting here and saying, "But I need to know these three or four things before we do that," that's fine, but I'm a little concerned that we could spend hours parsing this, and I don't know that that would gain much. So I'm concerned about that, particularly since it is now five minutes at 12, and we have said we're gonna adjourn at 12:30. I realize we can change our mind again. But so I, I direct that to the chair, but I also directed to Commissioner Erickson.
I don't have any more questions. Chair Smith.
Well, Commissioner O'Donnell. All right. Okay, however, we do, Commissioner Birch, I think at some point you were also concerned about the programs. So were your questions answered?
No, and I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I just have one. I would, summer came up. I would like you to walk me through what your plan is for summer activities, just so that we can understand. We understand school, I understand after-school, my kids do all those things, but I know that your campus gets used for various things in the summer, so if you can give us a brief description.
I'll keep it brief. So, you know, over the last few summers, you know, what we've had is a series of what we call summer at Hillbrook, small camps, mostly actually younger students, a lot of them kind of incoming kindergartners, they come for a week or two. It's a great way to kind of transition into the community. That's kind of one. And most of these camps are kind of one-week camps. They vary week to week. The other piece is, has been Breakthrough Silicon Valley, which is an organization that we work with, which works with low-income middle school students, mostly first-generation college students. It has, it's a, both a mission-serving children, then it also high school and college students are teaching. And it's a incredible, incredible old group, and so we, we host them as well. And then there's an occasional sports camp, or, but, so essentially, you're looking at kind of week-long camps of various flavors. I mean, one of the reasons that we are offering half the traffic in the summer is because, you know, we expect that to be a lighter period of the year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Talisfor.
Follow-up to your summer activity. I might understand that you would also expect the 414 number to be, to apply to your summer school activities.
So, so that number is in there in part because of what Chuck just said, which is you don't know what you don't know. And so, right now, we're, right now, we're nowhere near that number. And I, I don't have any, we have no plans to grow a program to 414 students. We also don't know what it looks like in 10 years.
I'm talking about in the summer. Is that, and you mean...
So, so again, going back to, you know, the comment around traffic. So again, so our, you know, our, by creating a very strict traffic expectation in the summer, our expectation is that we would manage to that traffic expectation?
Thank you, that was my second question. Thank you.
So, just a follow-up question to that. So, given the Hillbrook modified traffic plan that was submitted this evening, and I know it's here, I'm just not reading from it, the maximum traffic count that you proposed was going to be a year-round traffic count or just a academic school year traffic count?
Can you repeat that?
Yes. You submitted a modified maximum...
Of 1,200.
Right. So is that applicable for 12 months out of the year, or is it the academic year? There you go, thank you, it's right in front of me.
So, I don't know that we specified. It, it really applies to the academic year. It, it doesn't make any sense in the summer with a, an average of, of, of 480. You know, I believe that cap could come way down in the summer, because we're talking about completely different numbers.
Well, this is, this is a point that would have to be clarified, just so that you understand that, just as a follow-up to both Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Talisfor. The traffic count in the summer, we would expect that...
So I think what's reasonable is to half that number also and be at 600.
And that's what you're offering? So I just, I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Badami?
It may be in here somewhere, we have so much material, but what were your summer enrollment numbers for 2013 and 2014?
Do you have that? Hi again. My name's Nicole Kbarlock. I live in Los Gatos. We had 174 students registered for this year, about 30 students canceled at the last minute, so we dropped down. And the year before that, we had 147, and I would say the same thing about 20 kids unregistered just because they did vacations, traveling over the summer. Thank you. You're welcome.
So I just want to make, don't, don't go away. So I want to make sure I've written this down properly. So last summer, there were 86 students, given the attrition for people who didn't show. Or summer before last. I'm sorry, 116 minus 30?
I had 174, and I got 144 for this summer.
144 this summer.
Yep. And then last summer, we had 147, and I usually get about 30 to 20 families that change plans over the summer, and we had 117, I'm estimating at.
All right. Okay, so I had the numbers wrong.
Yeah, and it only is spread out over a six-week period. So, I mean, the camps are two camps, one week, maybe three camps, and there's approximately eight students registered for each camp. I mean, it's a small number, and those families are also carpooling as well.
Okay, what I just want to know is, anticipated numbers during the summer trip count will be different than during the academic year? And when we discuss this with staff and the kind of language we may or may not put into the CUP, thank you.
And we're also considering the Breakthrough Program as well.
I'm not sure if that means that the trip count is, I'm only, I'm only discussing trip count. Okay, cars coming over that little thing in the road.
Yep, they're busting.
Okay, all right. All right. Commissioner Talisfor.
To follow up, so is the, what is it, Breakthrough Silicon Valley, is that a Hillbrook-run program or is that a third-party program?
It's an organization we partner with. And so the, the students are enrolled at Hillbrook over the summer, and they are, you know, they participate like our other summer programs, they're on campus in the summer, and then during the remainder of the year, they're, they're actually, they have a part of the program that happens at Hoover Middle School throughout the rest of the school year, like after-school.
So do you have other students besides Hillbrook students in the summer enrolled in that program?
Yes. They are, they are, they are, they are enrolled as Hillbrook students, like, in the summer. There are, there are students who are not, some of those students are not attending Hillbrook during the school year. I think that's your question.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then Commissioner Seok.
You mentioned you were part of the Safe Routes to School program, and that's the town-wide program, correct? Do you guys discuss where you place your shuttles? And the reason why I ask was today, we heard testimony that there was an issue with the Shannon bus stop. And so could you discuss that communication? And is there a possibility to work within that group to find an appropriate place if, if there's, if the concerns are still there?
Yes, so what I've, I've just recently been the Safe Routes to School. I know that Matt is over there, so he comes with me. And we do discuss stops and locations if there's a problem, and we all share round-robin of what we, traffic concerns that we have in the neighborhood. That particular that you're talking, Shannon Park, or you, you know, the one on Shannon Road, Blossom Hill Park, as soon as I was notified there was a problem from our families, I called the town and asked how long would the project be? Because it changed what we had been doing for two years, and it was seamless. And then he told me, you notified me that it would be three weeks. And as soon as I knew that, we moved one of our shuttle stops to the Sherrados location to alleviate some of the traffic in the afternoon. So yes, we do. It's also reviewed for safety and traffic by the bus company, as well as our Los Gatos safety officers that visit our stops.
Can I just ask a question about the buses and the large buses? Is there a, is there a requirement that you have those large buses, which aren't full, but maybe are almost full? And I, I understand the smaller shuttle bus that I saw, but the two large buses, I was thinking about them lumbering up that hill and coming up and down, and rather not there, you've investigated a more efficient bus. I'm not saying, "Don't use a bus, please use a bus." But, but is there a different kind of vehicle that perhaps doesn't look and sound like those buses?
This is something that we've looked at for the past three years. And in fact, it, it's an ongoing look because you have to have enough seats for kids that are possible to be signed up. So even though you may only average 42, if there's a possible 50 that could be on that bus, you can't leave a kid behind. So we have to have a bus larger than the possibility of what's gonna pick up at a certain spot. But we have been reacting, we heard this from the neighbors, and we, we have added the one smaller bus now. And I think you had one very small, and you had to upsize it this year because more are going on it. But it, it is, we are saying that we will right-size the buses according to the kids so that you're not running an 80-person bus with 10 kids in it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Can you walk me through that Breakthrough Silicon Valley summer program again? Because you said they're enrolled as Hillbrook students during the summer, but at the end of the summer, they're not. So it almost sounds like third-party use to me, but because we're saying they're Hillbrook students in the summertime only, it's not third-party use.
So this came before the town council in March of 2013?
Uh-huh.
And that was the conversation that we had with the town council, and that was the recommendation of the town council to, you know, work with Breakthrough, to work with the program.
Okay, thank you. I need some clarification on that. What was the recommendation? That, that they be enrolled as Hillbrook students during the summer?
They be enrolled as Hillbrook students during the summer.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right. So I am now going to close the public portion of the public hearing. And what that means, Mr. Hammer, is that you will have no more to say to us, other than we're going to say thank you to you, and you may be seated.
May I ask a couple of things?
You may not. Okay, your time is up. Now, so here's where we are. We're at, besides the fact that we're at 5 after 12. So closing the public portion of the public hearing means if this were three hours ago, we would, then the commissioners would begin deliberations. And usually what happens or the process is, we make our comments, we ask questions of staff, we, there are times when we're asking staff to immediately respond, sometimes to, to come to the next meeting with more information. So we are not going to have our deliberations this evening because I can assure you that we, with seven of us up here, we're going to take longer than 25 minutes, and we're not going to go any later. In anticipation of this issue, I did ask Ms. Prevetti to poll the commissioners to see the next avail- the next available date for this chamber. And, again, with the intent being that I do not want a long period of time to go between when we hear from you, when we've asked questions, and the next available date. So Ms. Pravetti, can you tell us when the chamber is available for us to meet again for a special meeting?
Monday, October 6th at 7:00 p.m.
So we are going to reconvene in this chamber next Monday, October 6th at 7:00 p.m. We will not be taking any further public testimony. We will, however, be hearing from staff, and we will probably have many questions. So with that in mind, I do want to say something that one of the last speakers talked about Los Gatos being a very thoughtful and kind community. And I think that, over the last meetings that we've had over this issue, that 99.9999% of the time, we've shown that we are a thoughtful and kind community. And for that, I actually want to acknowledge all of you. Every speaker has been articulate. Every speaker has spoken from their mind and heart, and I can tell you that it really impacts the commissioners to look out and see the level of commitment and participation, no matter which side you were on. Everyone spoke very thoughtfully and was considerate of their neighbor this evening, so I really appreciated that. So before we... Yes, we're not going to go away. Commissioner Talisfor. Okay. Sure.
I would like to compliment the residents that are here tonight, that were here last week, the ones that left. In the 13 years that I've served on the Planning Commission, I have never, ever experienced such an outpouring of Los Gatos pride. Thank you very much. Of intelligence, of somewhat empathy for each side. You have to look through it, but it's there. And I think beneath that, the willingness to still work together as you move forward. We probably won't make everybody happy, but, you know, that's how it goes. But I've been very impressed. Thank you so much. It means a lot to us to hear your testimony.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. Now, before we leave this evening, we have some things... I know I do have some direction for staff that I would like to give before the meeting on Monday. And other commissioners, if you do as well, I'd like you to step forward, but I'll begin. And we need to have a motion to... Oh, I see. Okay. So we need the motion to continue. Commissioner Erickson has been very cooperative with me this evening, so I'm wondering if perhaps I could call upon Commissioner O'Donnell to make a motion to continue.
All right. We continue this matter until Monday, October 6th at 7:00 p.m.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. Commissioner Erickson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So it passes unanimously. Now, we'll get to the questions of staff. Ms. Pravetti, I ask that the traffic safety officer be on hand for the next meeting, and I want to make certain that that happens. And go on.
Yes. We did consult with the chief of police, and we will make sure that you have the right staff person here. It's really from the conversation, we understand that the issue is really more around traffic enforcement, as opposed to our school resource officer that works on campus to deal with violence or other issues that might happen.
That's correct. This is definitely about traffic. While I'm on traffic, I want to make sure that our traffic engineer is here and prepared to answer any and all questions...
Yes.
About the traffic report. Commissioners, are there... Is there some other resource that we want to have here? Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is really a question of staff more than anything else. Whatever motion is ultimately adopted, hopefully on Monday, will be somewhat complex, and we have a number of things that we can and probably should address. But since we don't know exactly what we're going to do at the moment, I'm wondering if the staff could at least help by outlining matters that ought to be considered or in not putting them in the motion ought to be considered as not going in the motion. In other words, if we sat here tonight and said, "I'll bet you there are at least 10 things that we have to consider, and if you think you could be helpful to us by at least outlining what you think we ought to cover and/or simply discuss," and if you could get that to us, today's Tuesday, by Friday, that would be very helpful, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Any other instructions? I'm sorry, Ms. Pravetti.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we can serve you the best way possible, so I just want to ask a clarifying question. And to the extent we've heard your questions of the applicant and of the other speakers, would it be appropriate for us to anticipate potential alternatives to the conditions so you have some choice before you, or would you prefer to create those yourselves?
Personally, I would encourage you to do that. We may, in fact, disagree with you on some of those, but, again, just speaking personally, I would find that helpful.
I hear... I see some agreement. However, I would like to request that any list that's made up is made up as a result of the questions that we asked tonight. So it's based on an indication of what we have already discussed and not what the staff thinks might be a solution, because we're going to come up with our own solutions.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Seac?
So I just want to make sure I understand procedurally how we're going to continue. So Friday, we should anticipate a staff report that will help guide us in our deliberations on Monday. Is that correct? Will that... And I assume that will be made public? And so even though public comment has closed, we may get written testimony on what staff has provided?
Okay.
Just want to clarify.
And, in fact, we are continuing to be open to additional written correspondence, either by email or regular mail or drop-off here at Town Hall, and anything that we receive before 11:00 o'clock on Friday, we will include in the report.
Could I ask counsel a question on that? If we close the public hearing, and yet we receive public testimony through writing, is that consistent or inconsistent?
You've only closed the oral public hearing. You can still submit comments, and even on Monday, if a written comment is received, it'll be put in your package on that date. So it's only the oral public testimony that has been closed.
And are you saying, then, that we can only close oral public testimony as opposed to and writing?
Correct. That's the way the town has always done it. It's always left open the written public comment period up until the time of the hearing.
All right. Have we answered everyone's questions? Yes. We'll see many of you, or maybe you will see us and we won't see you, but in any case, it will be televised on Monday evening. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.